Okay, so we've got Joe on the phone, Bob on the TV, and Austin, are you ready to start?
I'm set up to go.
Okay, I apologize for our delay. I'd like to call the village council work session meeting to order on July 30th, 2020 at 9:11 a.m. First up is the adoption of the agenda. Actually, sorry, not first up. First up, we need to, I need a motion to allow council member Mark Elise and Mayor Polino to participate remotely.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Joe?
I'd like to make a motion to allow Mayor Proton Vannever to run the meeting today.
I don't vote.
Oh yeah, that's right, sorry. I forgot, sorry. I was ready at nine and I'm all thrown out now. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. So first up, adoption of the agenda. Under presentations, we're going to move number two to be number one, number one to be number two, number three to be number four, and number four to be number three. All right. Under items of discussion, number two, we're also going to add the swearing in of the clerk. If I go too fast, let me know. Number three, under items of discussion, we're going to also add our board of adjustments applicant for consideration of appointment.
Under what did you say?
Items of discussion, number three, we're just going to add board of adjustments as well. Under open topics, I'd like to add cell phones. That's all I have.
Um, Kim, if I, and I don't know if we have it on here or not, but is there an open topics? Is there? Given that we had this petition, are we going to be able to discuss to get it on the ballot?
Yes, it's, it's under administrator's report number E, or letter E. It's, it's on there.
Okay.
Anything else from you, Mr. Mayor?
No.
Andy? Jamie? Bob?
I'm good.
Okay, all right, so I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
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 So motion passes. First up, or next up, presentations. Number one, presentation of off-duty traffic enforcement. Jay?
Welcome, guys. Thanks for coming in today. We appreciate it. Sorry for the delay. And Mayor Proton, if I might introduce Jay real fast. He had, we had contacted him a little while back in reference to beginning the off-duty.
Joe, can you mute yourself unless we're talking, please? Thanks, sorry.
To begin the off-duty traffic control at the corner, and we've had some traffic, or we've had some issues getting those positions filled, and I wanted him to kind of come and speak to you guys about the issues and kind of where we're going with that, so.
Great.
First and foremost, this will be my sixth year dealing with traffic issues in the village of Marvin. They have become a lot better with the opening, of course, the two roundabouts. The third one here, unfortunately, is the furthest point west at off-duty works. And over the last couple of years, I've had difficulty filling anything this far west, including football at the high school. And the reason for this is, my workforce doesn't really live from the west than probably Weddington High School. So we have people coming here that travel 45-plus minutes to work a three-hour traffic assignment and 45 minutes back. High school football, for example, if I have a football game, a varsity game at Marvin Ridge High School, and either Weddington or Cutterson has a home game, guess which is field works, and they all have one thing in common, those deputies walk away with a check on sight. Now, regarding traffic issues, this is one of the most difficult traffic jobs that I have off-duty. Off-duty is discretionary. There is no forced off-duty in my agency. And off-duty is comprised of deputies off of their regular shift, and the agency allows them to take their training and earn additional money. Yes, we use county equipment. Yes, we use county resources. The reason that this program operates is because it offsets the salary of a Union County deputy, which saves you tax money. We're not in a county commissioner's meeting, several times a year pounding a roster, asking for salary money. This program offsets those salaries and saves the county money. That's why it exists. And it matches that deputy willing to make a little extra money with someone that perhaps needs the service. Now regarding the traffic, there's been so many changes in the six years since I've been here. We've experienced shifts of traffic and thereby several things. One of the major shifts that affected the traffic count on Marvin Road was the installation of speed tables on Grove's Edge and Wheatfield Drive. People don't like them. So therefore, this traffic shifted to Marvin School Road, Crane Road, and Marvin Road. I have stood in this intersection over the last six years a couple hundred times down here with my folks. I've even pulled up a yard chair and sat with Mr. Lett. And I've counted traffic. And a fourth of your traffic coming through this intersection has South Carolina plates. Probably a fourth to a half of what's left is going onwards to Waxall. So your, your traffic flow is basically affecting the fourth, the fourth of it is basically your residents. Understand, because I do Skype meetings and up till March was doing face-to-face meetings with Division 10 and Albemarle on traffic problems, because yes, we do work traffic control for construction. Matter of fact, we actually worked more of that last year than we did in county schools. This is second year in a row that that number has exceeded. So I'm familiar with various things that go on in the county. My problem here is I have an off-duty rate of $30 per hour with a three-hour minimum. I can't get people to come down here for that. I can't ask you for any more money, but I would be open to anything you would like to submit and take it to my boss for review. All my work is approved by the sheriff. Each one has a final say. March, we were kicked to the curb by the world with COVID-19. I had to scramble and start finding things. I went from 1,500 hours off-duty to about 75 hours for the month of March. April became better. It was replaced by patrols of property, commercial property that was deemed nonessential, which were suffering break-ins. Then I had some construction issues, power substations, and now I have been offered work for three contractors using federal stimulus money from the Obama era to put fiber optic cable in this state. And the further east that you go, the less internet connectivity we have. And with the potential of virtual learning, that has now got a full port press. So these contractors are offering more than the $30 an hour rate. I have 46 miles of highway resurfacing. Yes, it's an election year. And North Carolina is notorious for usually flooding the world with asphalt. However, they don't have the money. The money that's been appropriated was pre-COVID-19 money. This will be done very similar hours to what you have plus a little longer. So there are things that are competing with the time also. So that's my dilemma. I would love to cover it. I have no problems, but I can't get the bodies here. So that's my issue. And that's basically all I can say. Traffic enforcement. In the past, we've done this under other council members here. Sometimes it goes well, sometimes it doesn't. Unfortunately, we're not able to do what's called selective law enforcement. It's not constitutionally allowed, and it's against our policy. When a deputy pulls a driver over, it's at the discretion of that deputy whether to charge that person. If that person receives a ticket, they then have a court process. And if they're not sure how that's going, they're going to have to refer themselves to a lawyer. We work traffic enforcement as part of off-duty. My phone rings off the hook. Why did so-and-so get a ticket? Sorry, if they live in Marvin, sorry. I don't have any control over that. That happens. Also, when we're directing traffic down here, my phone also rings off the hook. And guess what, folks? I've become guilty of association with the problem, just for being there. Can't, can't help that, but that's part of it also. So what I'm asking is for you to consider possibly an option to the $30 per hour. I can't ask for it, but will entertain the suggestions. Now, is there any questions I can answer for you or any enforcement questions? I have Captain Thomas here who's qualified to answer those questions.
If we can't get, if we can't get off-duty people to come and sit, can we have our deputies do it?
That would be an on-duty issue. I would refer it. If Captain Thomas is more patrol. If it's a problem area, then we could obviously have them doing that. I don't know what benefit you're going to be benefiting the town if their city works in traffic and they're not patrolling the homes and the general safety of the neighborhood. Yeah, that's, it's going to take a hit because they're working traffic. So I mean, that's something we can definitely do, but I think at the same time, for us to go out and do enforcement, we have to show that there's a concern and an issue going on in that particular area. Just like when we set up license checkpoints, we have to justify where we do those at, that there is an ongoing issue there that justifies a deputy being there. So like I said, if you're just going to give up one thing, you know, by putting them there, it's going to be a give and take.
I'm just, because, I mean, it is an issue. It is, it's a safety issue. It's, it's a, I mean, the traffic backs up all the way down Marvin Road past my house. And so, I mean, I know it's, and I've come this, that way here, and I know that it is a safety issue. So if we can't get, you know, the off-duty force to come out because it's too far, and I understand that, that's not enough money, I understand that. And it may not be every day that we have our officers doing it, but maybe certain days.
And I would still need to run that by the sheriff and make sure he's good with that. But my concern would be if we put the, the one officer that's on duty out there, the general safety for that officer trying to work that intersection.
No, I understand.
It's, it's a two-person intersection at minimum, but one's going to be dangerous to his safety doing that. So that'd be something that had to be approved through the sheriff. I mean, we could definitely put it out there and have them at least be more visible in that area.
Maybe it would, would help with the, with the off-duty. If it takes one person off the off-duty that they've got to accommodate. And the other thing is too, right now, we have about an hour concentration of traffic because of the COVID thing, which is helping the, the traffic. But, you know, it's, it's not as, as much as it was.
It's not the three hours, but it's still, it's getting more now that people are going back to work and entering out.
So they would only maybe take away our deputy for about an hour, and then whoever, maybe the off-duty can do some traffic enforcement when the, you know, when they don't have to be down there.
And I'd be glad to push that up with the sheriff and see what his response on.
I mean, if we can ask that question, and, and if it's a no, then it's a no. And if it's a, well, you know, that might work for as short amount of time as we're trying to figure out the off-duty situation. Because, I mean, it, I mean, you, like you said, you pulled up a chair and you sat Mr. Lett's chair. It's, I mean, it's scary, like, when you're trying to negotiate that corner, so.
Like I said, that would be my only concern is that you are losing that.
No, I know.
See, I'm very grateful. The last six years, when I took this over, we were working three intersections, two in the morning and one in the afternoon with one person in the dark. And we were able to get a second person. Before both of the roundabouts were constructed, we were able to put a deputy at each intersection and sync the traffic control with Radiance. It made a tremendous difference. Also helped the school buses flow back, which was another thing we had to consider. And then we ended up with a light tower. Very grateful for that. That tremendously increased the safety at this intersection. So I'm grateful for the changes that we have received from the village.
But in addition to possibly more money, is there any other, are there any other suggestions that might incentivize off-duty to come?
I have something, and if you want to fuss at it, I'm the person. I'll take the heat. When we were directing traffic last year down here, if you were coming from South Carolina and desired to make a left turn on Marvin Road, we shooed you on and we let the roundabout do the work. That puts you to making a right turn and not interfering with our traffic direction.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'll do that too.
Now, what I would like, if you have charm and influence with the Board of Transportation or somebody locally, and this could possibly be done as municipal out, putting a no-left-turn sign, 4:30, 7:30, coming from South Carolina at that intersection. That gives us an actual ability to enforce that.
To really enforce it.
Because right now, I've been on the leg and I've caught a little flack from it, but after people do it two or three days, they realize it's actually quicker.
Yeah.
So these are one of the things that I've came up with on my own to try to increase the safety and increase the traffic flow. But there's only so much to do. And unfortunately, traffic coming out of Charlotte is like rain coming off a mountain. It finds the road of least resistance, and Marvin Road, unfortunately, going into South Carolina is it.
Yeah. Okay. Can we, can we ask DOT about putting up a sign?
Right, right on. We've talked about that.
No, no left turn.
No left.
No left turn coming from South Carolina.
Monday through Friday, 4:30, 7:30.
And that's a fairly expensive option to be.
That's really, yeah. Well, then it also gives, like you said, the off-duty officers, hey, no left turn, sorry, keep on moving.
Another thing we had to adjust to very quickly after the second roundabout opened at Waxall, Marvin, was with the second roundabout opening, the traffic going west, speed quadrupled. So if you're standing there with your back turned, cars are right on top of you. So we had to address that issue. And that's extremely important that we do have the, the two positions for that, that issue right there.
Yeah, I would not recommend just, I say, if it comes down to work, only one of the positions getting filled, then I'll have the second one. I wouldn't want to put just the one up.
I have worked this morning. It's very, very dangerous.
So, so we're, let's just assume the roundabout goes in at, in two years, right?
We're at 2022, is that right? Okay.
And that's.
The west should get stronger.
I, I know, but so right now, it's a, it's a resource and a money issue. And there's some other tricks that we could put in. Why, why do we not? Why do we not allow or put money back for, for two years?
We can. For off-duty?
For, for off-duty, because I, I'm, I'm all with what you're doing, and I don't want to be in his, I don't want to be in his shoes. But is it, I mean, you're talking about if you added, I guess I would give you homework of saying, what would it take? Is it $30 an hour now? Does it take $45 an hour? Does that, does that give them incentive to do?
You make an offer and we look at it. I'm not going to set a, I'm not going to set a dollar around.
I know, I, I know, but maybe it's just, maybe it's a question with, with your group of saying, what would it take to go, you know what? And, and here's another, here's another throwing out. Is there a private, can we use private company to?
That would just have to be approved through DOT, is my understanding. They would have to approve a private.
They would have to have private such as Flaggers. That would be the closest thing you would have. Don't know if that would be feasible or not with DOT. One thing that hurts us with NC DOT dealing is we do not have a board member on the Board of Transportation from this county. The two that control this area live in Lakeview and Valentine. And they have had in the past discretionary funds, which of course would be moved to perhaps projects in North Carolina. So.
That's happened forever.
That's happened forever.
And when we had board members, we done a lot of projects that didn't they do in any county?
You're absolutely right. I can, I can agree. But actually, Calhoun, my finger's on.
Yeah, it's funny too, you're there.
So my next question was going to be, because you can't do a roundabout, because I'm, I'm responsible for the village of Marvin. If my problem is, if my problem is, three-fourths of that problem is South Carolina and Waxall, why am I charging my folks money?
Because Waxall won't pony up. We've asked them.
I, I know, I know. And we can't sit there and go, all right, are you from Waxall or South Carolina?
South Carolina, nope, no, turn around. You can't come this way.
But is there, but. But is there a way that, is there a way that we could go back to the state and say the offset? So charge them six, you know, pay them $60 an hour, but the state offsets it for two years. We're talking about a two-year offset. So if you're not going to put the roundabout in, then we're okay with that, but that is a, I mean, that's a bad intersection. It's not, it's not close. It's not like, well, it's a, I mean, sometimes it gets backed up to five foot.
Correct.
And then you just got people sitting there. You got people turning around in the road. See that?
That's when I got phone calls when they're backed up.
Yeah, and when they're backed up, they're taking chances.
Yes.
Is there a way to go back to DOT and say, listen, you're holding up our problem. You're keeping our problem in place. If we go and say $60 an hour, and, and listen, you can sit right here and work it out. It's not hard numbers. You, you offset the 30, our 30, that we're already paying with your 30, and then that incentivizes your deputy, you know what? That's $60 an hour. I can, I think I could do that and have, you know, have an offset. At least it's worth a discussion. And, and our, our, you know, pitch back to them is, it's not the Marvin people. We're paying for the 30. We're paying our 30 for the Marvin people.
Right.
But we've got your issue with South Carolina. North Carolina, you deal with South Carolina.
The only problem you're going to get from DOT is with the 300 and something odd million dollars was overspent this past year, you're going to get a quick no.
No, completely understandable. Right now, they're, but right now, they're saving. They're, they're not putting the roundabout in. You're hurting us because of that.
They're going to push that money being spent two years down the road.
Right. And I could calculate today, it would take me a while because I can't add, you know, without my shoes on. But you could add the money up and go, you know what? It's a, it's a $150,000 fix. That's the only way we can get our deputies there to do it. So there is kind of that offset. Where, where do we do it? So it would be A, and, and you know what? Go pitch to them, we want a private company to do it. And they're going to say, oh no. Okay, well, there was only two options, and one was you just threw that one out the door. So the next one is, give us for two years, not for eternity, but for two years until you put that in, give us $30 an hour for the, for the deputies. Because it is not a Marvin problem. It's a Waxall to South Carolina problem.
It's $90 a day, five days a week. I mean, it's not a lot of money. It's, it's
Right.
like, what, $3,000, $4,000, not $150. I mean, it's just, it's so cheap. But to your point, why should we pick up the extra when they're the ones that are causing the problem? They're, they pushed this back, and it's not really their fault either. The hurricanes are why they're, you know, behind. But we're all trying to figure out a way to make it work.
We can't push everything in the state budget to our, you know, you can't push and go, well, can't do it because, because of hurricanes.
Right.
At some point in time, there's, there's got to be, there's got to be a fix. Our fix, our issue, the problem was one deputy. And then we went to the city, the village of Marvin and did a one sit. We fixed that. Now we have, now we have two. So there are fixes.
Jamie, Christina said we've asked DOT.
We've asked DOT very early on when they pushed it back the first time, if they would help with the additional traffic control that was required because of the, the pushback, and there was a strong no. We can ask again and see what they say.
But I think the, what, I think if you, I think if we, and that's great, that.
The differential.
Well, tell them, can we use a private company to do it?
Yeah, I think we should absolutely ask that question and find.
Ask the private company first. And when the answer's no, go, all right, I've, I've got, I'm walking in with, I'm walking in with two, two options.
In fact, we can do that.
And then I know one thing that you had said was that when they work the high school games, they walk away with a check right then, is us, are we like not paying them time? Like, is that like an issue? Is that something we could fix? Like, that might help?
I can't complain about that.
Okay, okay.
I made the payment here for this job roughly seven days from then I cut a bill. Can't complain. That's key also, the filling in off-duty job.
Okay, just check it.
So no, that's, that's not.
That's not one thing that we need.
That's not an issue.
Okay. I just wanted to check. I want to make sure that, if that was something that we could work on too, but that's good. It's the time.
Conditions and then that.
And then the pay.
What ties them to drive here.
And then where your geography is located from where my work source is. That's, that's, that's the issue.
Yeah.
If we're paying for their travel, then, you know, they're, they're making an extra hour and a half worth of, of money. I mean, I get it. They're, they're, that's 45 minutes of their time here and 45 minutes home on top of the work. I get it, because they're not getting paid to drive back and forth. They're getting paid to feed you.
I'm half a mile from Mazzie County, just for example, so it's going to take 45 minutes to an hour to get here, so.
Well, you know, I'm about to slow internet and all.
Do I?
You know, I'm about to slow internet.
Absolutely. That was, that's, and you can't run two Netflix or two TVs at my house.
If I can interject something there, DOT, their comment right now, they're not going to enter any agreement.
And I can give you a good example.
I mean, they're not going to, they're not, even if you try to put it off two years for a lump sum payment later down the road, they're not entering into agreements right now.
Only monetarily, or do you think that they'd let us entertain private contractors if we can't get the off-duty?
If they were certified.
Okay, well.
Certified by traffic directions.
Right, if they were certified. These guys, she's out here with these fellow traffickers.
Well, they're just going to pay the insurance, see if something happens or something like that.
Okay, all right. Well, that, that gives us, that gives us some research to do, and we'll definitely talk about pricing and see what else our, our options are.
I'll speak to the sheriff to him. Can we just email you back or let you know, hey, yeah, this is kind of what he's looking at as far as whether it's got to be two officers, can the on-duty Marvin officer.
Listen, I, listen, I, I want to. I don't, I not want to put anybody else.
Marvin officer, I'll check into that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Sir, are we?
One of each out there is kind of.
I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, if we can only get one off-duty and then, and then supplement with our on-duty.
Yeah, I'll get you an answer on that.
Okay, that'd be great.
So the only takeaway from this is we're going to contact DOT and talk about private traffic control and/or offsetting the cost. Did y'all want to talk about increasing?
I would like, yes, I would like for you to run the numbers, what we already have budgeted with the $30 an hour versus, and then you take a look, see what we have and see what number, because I understand that they're not going to give us an idea. We're going to have to come up with something, which is fine.
And, and again, I'm, I'm fine with running those numbers. My, my heartburn is going to be, I'm, I'm using Marvin funds for a Waxall, South Carolina problem. That's where I'm going to have heartburn, and, and, but I do think that no left turn.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
That helps, but that's certainly not.
The off-duty.
You use money you've already spent right down the street here.
Yeah. Yeah, because you go down, I mean, it's, it's just like when they're trying to do a super street. You go down, you do it instead of having a left turn.
What, what?
It's safer, and if you turn some of those people coming from South Carolina using it as a shortcut during those times, it would decrease some of the flow.
Yes.
Even though, and it would make it much safer flow to your point with the traffic circle.
Well, then you're just looking at basically on DOT to agree and the cost of signing just exists.
Which is negligible.
Generally with that, though, they're going to want some type of traffic, channels those.
Oh yeah, they'll do a traffic study and all.
Well, they're going to want concrete islands and something to channel the traffic.
Well, it's only during peak hours. It would just be a temporary 8:40 to 7:30 no-left turn. Rest of the time, it would be allowable, so it's simple.
Do y'all have a crash study on that?
We've done traffic studies there, and then most of it is, they keep saying, well, it's, it's, it's human error. It's not.
It can't possibly be that terrible intersection.
But it's, it's the high volume of traffic that causes the issue, and the people who, there is a somewhat a limited sight line to the right if you're coming up Marvin Road.
It's a medical, so it's not.
Well, actually, both sides.
I mean, they, they can say operator error, but I mean, you can't, you can't put everything on that now. You can't say.
Well, that's what they put it all on. It passes, but it's not, it's operator error. It's not the intersection. That's why they, oh, they keep standing firm on it.
Yeah.
And it's, it is a, if, if people are actually doing a speed limit, the sight lines are adequate to turn out of there. Problem is, they're never doing a speed limit, so when they come around those corners, they're on top of you before you can get out. So it's, and that and the high volume.
So we make the speed limit from the North Carolina, South Carolina line to there like
25.
6 miles an hour. And enforce it with a radar gun. They're like, I ain't doing that.
We can't get DOT to drop the speed limit over here.
All right.
Another issue I'd like to bring up regarding traffic enforcement here. On-duty service takes precedent over anything I do. With a stroke of a pen, my off-duty workload's gone. And it's happened four times since I've been here, mainly due to disasters, extreme flooding and other. With a stroke of a pen, my off-duty workload's gone, and it's happened four times since I've been here, mainly due to disasters, extreme flooding and other issues. When you incorporate a request for a LiDAR or radar-equipped vehicle off-duty, that cuts my resources tremendously, because these tools are used primarily on-duty. It's rare that I have an off-duty car with a radar, no, but I'm just getting to know it before we go there.
Oh, no, no, I just want them to direct the traffic, I don't even want anybody to like, pull anybody over, I just wanna direct the traffic.
We had talked about the excess in hours working, traffic enforcement because of the, the limited amount of hours, but if we already have our deputy here that is working traffic, I don't see the need for that at this point.
If I had nine off-duty deputies a day with radars, I could work nine communities a week that would pay for it, I don't have it.
Right, okay, alright, Mr. Mayor, did you wanna say something? Sorry.
Um, I just had a question, and just to be clear, and my apologies, because this is not the best technology, so it's, it's, I mean, I hear you and Christina very well for some reason, but, but I'm, I'm ba- basically catching everything, but it's, the, the only thing that I am concerned about, is the left, no left-hand turn at certain times during the day, coming from South Carolina. Is there any concern about the, the cut-through through Firethorn neighborhood? Because people are gonna understand that, okay, I can't make a left there, so I'm just gonna go through Firethorn to get to that left, and then it's a left turn out of Firethorn on the front entrance.
Yeah, but that left turn's almost as bad, with the dip in the road.
I agree, I'm just saying, we're creating, we're, we're exchanging one problem for the other, if, if people know they can't make a left turn, they're gonna eventually figure out that the cut-through, to make the left turn, so I don't have to go all the way around or take a different path.
It's easier to go around the traffic circle than cut through Firethorn.
Yeah, I, I, I think Andy's right, I think if they, instead of cutting through Firethorn with the speed humps and just going through the neighborhood and then trying to make that left turn, if they just go straight and come up to the roundabout and, and go around the roundabout and come back and turn right, it'll be quicker than going through the neighborhood.
Maybe we make signage to that effect, you know, from four thirty to seven thirty, no left turn, use roundabout.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, just, but you make it very clear that that's what we want traffic to do, and then that will...
Right, we said make sure some horse bowl on, are you...
Hey Joe, I like, I like your thinking.
Right.
Well, I, I just know that that's, you know, anytime we try and do stuff like this, and we're, we're, we're doing it for the right reason, but then people figure it out, and it's just, you know, then, then, then we're gonna get complaints, and, and it could be any neighborhood, whether it was Marvin Creek or whatever, you're gonna, you're gonna get complaints and all of a sudden an uptick in traffic, and especially in the mornings, when kids are, don't walk into their school buses, if that ever happens again, but...
It's just in the afternoon.
Afternoon only, okay, somehow I heard seven thirty in the morning.
No, four, four thirty to seven thirty in the afternoon.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, I know, we gotta move on. Yes, you can say something.
So I just wanted to mention to the public that's listening, we had some technical issues early on, the only thing that they discussed in the meeting was moving around a couple of presentations, everything remained the same in terms of what was to be presented, the order just got moved around, and then we also added a board of adjustment, a potential appointment to item number three. And then we're swearing in for our village clerk, and then in open topics, so, um, we had a technical issue, had to send out a new code, so we apologize, but nothing else was discussed. We do have the full meeting and a recording, so that will be posted to our website after the meeting, you can listen to anything that you missed.
Okay, alright, anything else for these two gentlemen? We got our homework, okay, thank you guys so much for coming in, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, appreciate all your, appreciate everything you do.
Yep, thank you. Okay, next up, number two, presentation discussion of road repair planning, regular ongoing road resurfacing plan, Mike.
Uh, more than, yeah, today, I mean, just what we just went through DOT, generally, we would, this is when we would put a resurfacing package together and get with DOT and negotiate a participation in it, and enter into their contract for resurfacing, which would be larger quantities and cheaper unit costs. Unfortunately, probably the next two years, could be longer, that's not gonna be an option for us, because they're not big, they're not letting resurfacing down. The ones they are letting are just minor, just the worst things they've got, they're banned down. So, what we had talked about was moving away from the resurfacing, you know, we're doing it every other year now anyway. So pulling back and doing some fog seal treatments on some of the higher-rated roads, which is a preventive maintenance, which was in the program to start with. But doing it, instead of doing resurfacing, plus we're gonna do the curb and gutter repairs and the, the stuff that we had found in the survey that needed to be done. And when I say fog seal, I'm not talking about typical fog seal, that's like a six to twelve month life expectancy, this is a two to five years, so, the code GSB eighty-eight modified. It's, it's what everybody's going to for pavement preservation. And it's a bring, but it's a true bring, certified environmentally friendly product, and you place it in the file. Best times when you made this level, is it gives you a quicker clearing time.
And so when you said our higher-rated, you mean the higher meaning that aren't as bad?
Right, once, once a road gets down into the, the low eighties, if you're familiar with the rating curve, once it gets down there, this is not an option.
Okay, okay.
Because the failures are to the point, this, this can't reconcile any problems. Uh, that's why you go in there and do this, and it extends a lot, most of these roads, you're gonna get that five years, none of it, because of the low ADT.
And what's the cost on that, like, the...
Uh, the, it's two seventy-six a gallon, it's twelve cent, um, or, uh, four twelve gallons per yard squared, so you're looking at like a fifth of the cost to go in there and do a resurfacing.
Is that something that you guys can do, or that we need to contract out for somebody to do?
Yeah, we'll let it contract.
Oh, you'll do it, okay. Sorry, Chris, I'm sorry, Mike, Christina wants to...
Yeah, I just wanted to kinda, kinda summarize what you're saying in layman's terms. Um, there is a pavement condition index that AMT did a few years back, or actually, a few months back, for those looking at home, it looks something like this, where it basically indexes the road conditions based on an assessment that he did. We have had a meeting here recently to discuss some of the numbers, the terms, as far as when we think we're gonna do these roads. He's putting together a package, we're gonna talk about it again in August, at the August work session, and you guys at, as a council, will sit down and basically look at these and decide which way we're gonna do the road resurfacing over the next couple of years. Because we know DOT's not gonna be participating the next two years, so we're putting together a plan based on the assessment, y'all can look at it in August and determine if that's how you wanna move forward.
So we're not doing that plan today?
No, for the next couple of years, we'll have more detailed information at the next meeting, the next work session.
The August meeting or the work session?
Yes, the next work session, just wanted to kinda give you high-level information as to road resurfacing, where we're at in terms of DOT, kinda where we're going, what we're putting together. Knowing that we're not gonna have resurfacing done for the next two years, more than likely, we've, we've had a discussion about doing some more preventative maintenance, i.e. fog seal, as you're mentioning, doing some crack seal. We do have the curb and gutter, hundred percent of the curb and gutter assessment in the budget for this year for all Marvin roads, so that is something that we would try to do together in one contract. We're also looking at potentially working with Waxaw to get higher cost savings with more quantities of work, so that's something that we're gonna be working on the next couple of months to determine if we can get that done. But at the next work session, we will hopefully have this assessment with all the cost and projected out year one, two, three, four, and how we're gonna do that. Then y'all will discuss it in more detail at that meeting.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
And, going back to that, the Greenway, we'd also include that this year.
Oh, good.
To get it...
Crack seal.
Crack seal.
Good.
And probably put a fog seal on it afterwards. The Marvin Creek Roundabout, the Tom Short Road.
Yep.
Uh, got a contract, uh, quote, and patched that out, I think I sent it to you, didn't I, Christina?
You did, I think it was ten thousand-ish.
Ten, ten-five, somewhere in there.
So that's something that, th- this is a request, if y'all recall, we had a citizen request to repair the roundabout. I've actually spoken with DOT about paying for their portion of it, and, you know, we're still talking about that, but that's something that we would try to do at the same time we're doing some of this other work, so we won't come back with the numbers on that until we get what we're planning to do on the whole project.
Yeah, it's, it's really bad on that, it's getting, it's just tearing up more and more on that roundabout.
Like I said, we're ready to go with a fix on that, anytime y'all approve it.
And, and if y'all want to take action at the next regular meeting to do an emergency repair on that, it was around ten thousand dollars, we can definitely do it.
Is it gonna change the cost if we wait and do it with something else, or that's just gonna be the cost whether we do it tomorrow, or whether we do it when we do some more projects?
Well, ideally, I mean, you, we, we can crack seal too, I mean, we're gonna patch the, the worst areas, and we can go in there and crack seal, but if you don't cover when you crack seal, you know what that looks like, and I'm not sure that we wouldn't be going back in there covering it or something, so...
So, but the price isn't gonna change whether we do it tomorrow, or whether we wait and do it when we're doing the other fog seal and...
You mean the patching?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll change, because the longer you wait, the more water that gets in the...
So it'll go up, so we should go ahead and get that fixed.
But you're, you're talking about just crack sealing it, not doing any kind of fog seal on it right now?
Uh, yeah, right, if we didn't do any kind of, any kind of seal, I'm not sure that the, the, your complaints are not gonna come in to the point that we'd have to go out there and cover, just because of this, so...
So he's basically saying, we could go in and crack seal it right now, which is a quick temporary fix to prevent the water from going in. Aesthetically, it doesn't look right, or doesn't look good, it's probably not gonna be to our standards, and so we're probably gonna get more complaints until we come in and fog seal it.
Right.
Yeah, but at least we're saving it and fixing it so that it's not getting worse.
Yeah.
So why don't we fix it, and I don't care what it looks like right now, as long as we're getting it fixed, preventing more damage from happening, and then when we're fog sealing, we can go and fog seal a portion of it.
Okay, I think we're talking about two different things. We're, we're talking about areas that have to be patched.
Yeah.
That can't be repaired, I mean, can't be covered, they have to be patched.
Right.
Okay, and then we're talking about areas that need crack seal, they're not the same areas.
Right, no, but the one on the Tom Short Roundabout, that one has to be fixed.
Okay, if, that's right, we've got areas located that we're gonna patch.
Right.
That's under that ten...
So after, yeah, that ten thousand, so after we patch it, it's not gonna look pretty, so then whenever we're, so is that, I mean, so the only way to make it look pretty then is to repave it?
To go ahead and mill it.
Okay, well, I mean, we just need to fix it so it doesn't continue to degrade the, the road, right?
At this point, I mean, I think the whole deal is, is that at, at the point of repaving, we wanna coincide with DOT and do the whole roundabout at one time. In the end term, we have to fix it enough to keep it from going completely cracked. So, I feel like that if we patch and crack seal it, and then when you're fog sealing whatever else, we go back and fog seal that spot, our portion, then when we can get DOT to do their side of it, we mill and pave the entire thing, but we have to...
We have to fix it now, and, and stop the...
Stop the degradation, degradation of the service.
That's what our recommendation is, is to do the patching and then crack seal the rest of it.
Okay, so, and that's the ten thousand?
No, the patching is the ten thousand, but the crack sealing won't be...
It's gonna be more than that.
It's not gonna be more than that.
So let me ask this question real fast, Mike, so you and I have talked this week about, you know, the plan moving forward, and talking about this in August, and going ahead and having a, a plan, do you think that it's gonna cause any issues to just wait until August and do it all, and, you know, once we decide what we're gonna recommend in August, let them decide at that time?
Yeah, we can do it all then, patch it, crack seal it, and be done.
In conjunction with the rest of the projects.
Right.
Okay, alright, okay, so wait, so wait till the August, so then we're not, okay, but then we're not gonna vote on it until, until September?
We would discuss it in the August work session, we could take action in the work session if y'all are desiring to do so.
And you wait until September, you're...
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, time is running out on this, I mean, it's got, we gotta move on it somewhat quickly.
It's bad, that's bad, I'd rather go ahead and put that one on the, I'd rather go ahead and put the roundabout fix, fix on the August regular meeting, and then we can do the rest of the plan at the work session. Because that, I mean, it's getting worse, and if we continue to wait, it's gonna continue to get worse, and it's gonna cost more money, and I'd rather just fix it.
We can do that, he's already got the proposal ready, I've, okay, Mr. Mayor, did you have something?
Um, a couple of things, and I don't know if this was addressed yet or not, in regards to, has there been any thought, or have we put any thought into, as we move forward, do we need to have some sort of ordinance in, in place that if a private individual is starting to affect our roads with work that they do, a process that we, basically, it's in the ordinance, if you do something and it's affecting our roads, that we have the right to, you know, be compensated for any repairs that need to be done? I don't know if that requires an ordinance or what, but that's, that's one question, and, and then I had one more thing, I had some questions on, I know years ago, we had purchased, or the village basically were, in my view, trying to be a little sneaky by purchasing cul-de-sacs, if you will. And I know there's a number of cul-de-sacs that we currently own before we got into the road business. One of the cul-de-sacs, I, when my wife runs, I ride a bike alongside of her, is, I, I just wanted to point it out, Painted Turtle and Grove's Edge, if we could look into that, if we own that cul-de-sac, and if we do, just a, a flag on that one, that I noticed a lot of repairs that are gonna be needed, or patchwork that may be needed on that as well. So just, those were two things that sort of related to this, that I, I thought I would just mention.
Okay, I think Rohit just said we do own that cul-de-sac, so we'll look into that, and then in terms of the ordinance, we'll...
Ordinance.
They can look into that, we'll talk about that in the work session.
Those, those two cul-de-sacs you mentioned are on the list.
There, Mike said, Mike said they're already on the list.
One thing that I did notice, and I don't know, it may have been just me, but I think that the list did not include the short stretch of Stacy Howey from the state line to Waxon Marvin Road. I know that we have Henry Nesbit on that list, but that Stacy Howey road is a disaster, and that's one of them, and that is in Marvin. It's Marvin on both sides of that road, and I don't think that, that that made the list, but I may be wrong.
That's, that's DOT.
Yeah, well, but that, so is...
So here's the problem.
Oh, cause it's not a neighborhood road.
That's where we, that's where we ran into this with DOT this year. What I wanted to do was to put the program, the worst roads in Marvin right now are DOT roads.
Right.
Marvin's roads are still up in the, the preventive maintenance of state. So what I wanted to do was put together the program for the worst DOT roads, and if DOT, I know they're not gonna do them, I wanted to go in and do them, and we're under an agreement that when, you know, they went back and do this, we got that money back, or they went ahead and put that much resurfacing back in our program. That's when I found out that they're not, not only are they not gonna fund anything, they're not going in there to any agreements, that's gonna cost them, you know, offsets cost down the road. They're just, they're not willing to enter those agreements. So that puts, those are DOT roads, I don't want to spend Marvin's funds and not knowing that we'll get them back, get compensated some kind of way, now, there are gonna be complaints, but they'll be the DOT complaints. I mean, we don't have any means of going in there and doing anything if they won't enter an agreement with us.
Yeah, I get that, I, well, and I, you know, the Stacy Howey and Henry Nesbit are probably roads that we're gonna have to look at, taking over, I think, because DOT's never gonna work on those roads. They're, they're short, insignificant, DOT doesn't give a crap about them, but they are, you know... But they are in our village and they are directly impacted by our residents. So I think we need to look at, at least seeing what it's gonna take to get those to standard and obtain that. Because it's just not gonna happen otherwise.
We can put it, we can see if we can put them on the list of, like, the repaving schedule. Again, that's not gonna have to start again until, what, two more years at least?
At least.
Yeah, so, okay. But you guys are gonna come back next work session with that schedule?
Right.
Okay. All right, anybody, anybody got anything else for Mike right now?
Nope. No, I'm gonna ask Mike to stay because he...
Because he's gonna do number one.
Number one.
Yeah.
I do, to add something, I do highly recommend we try to work with Wax on. I think they've got like a twenty-five mile program. So the more volume we can get in our contract, the cheaper our unit costs are gonna be.
So is that, Mike, is that something you can do?
Yeah, and the logistics, I mean, I guess Chris Lemon will need to get involved because Marvin will need to be represented by them.
Okay, but you guys can work on that.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's smart. If we can get more of a discount, get more stuff done, then that sounds great to me.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, anybody got anything else for Mike? Nope? Okay, moving on. Number three, presentation of Construction Professionals Network Institute or CPNI workshop report. Rohit, you're gonna introduce whoever's gonna be presenting for us.
Yep, that's right. So they've been here, so let's give them a moment to come online. So we had the Village Center Design Workshop hosted by CPNI and NC Growth. And so, you know, that was a two-day event. Lots of people came. Planning board members, council members, PRG members, members of the community. It was very well attended, very productive. And they've created a report and presentation. This is the presentation I'm passing out right now. Here, I'll just give it to you and just pass it around the table. So this is the presentation, but there's also a report. And they're gonna be giving you the presentation here in just a moment. So I'll transfer it over to you and you guys can introduce yourselves and whoever's gonna be presenting.
All right. Rohit, I'd like to share the PowerPoint.
Sure, I'll make it out.
Okay. Okay, can you guys see my screen?
Yeah.
So Michael, so we're kinda doing a interactive presentation. So Michael, do you wanna introduce CPNI? Can I get us started off here?
I do. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. My name is Michael Cole and I am the chairperson for CPNI Institute, which is a group of folks under another organization called CPN. And we do workshops with NC Growth, and I'll let them introduce themselves in a minute. This was our first virtual workshop. Essentially, our mission is to go in and help small communities, most of the time they're rural communities, with economic development opportunities. Generally, we're dealing with issues of a need for growth. The Village of Marvin had the opposite issue, and that is, growth is not a problem as far as needing it, but as you've already been discussing about the traffic, it's primarily an issue of how you control growth and direct it in a small way.
Okay, yes.
So we're going, we're going to get through our presentation as quickly as we can. We had a workshop on June eleven and twelve, generally two-day workshops. We have a number of folks that were on the team on the call, both from CPNI and NC Growth. So in a minute, I'll give you an overview of our agenda. And then right now, let Jess or Rachel introduce their team and talk about NC Growth.
Hi, everybody. Nice to know that everyone's good. Good morning. Again, I'm Jessica Hopkinson, one of the Economic Development Ministers at NC Growth. And I met Rohit at the Big Street Conference. That's how we all got connected. I'll just talk a little bit about who we are and how we work and then pass it on to other folks. So NC Growth, we are an economic development, big take institute out of the Keenan Institute of Private Enterprise, affiliate with the Keenan Flagler Business School at UNC. We work with small communities across North Carolina and we also work with business clients in North Carolina and South Carolina to provide technical assistance and applied research. We've been doing this since 2012 and we've helped create hundreds of jobs and worked with more than a hundred clients. And the way we do this is we hire graduate students from across, we work with more than twenty universities. Rachel Taylor and Austin, Amanda Leah are two of our awesome analysts who led the research for this project and did the bulk of the writing for the report. So I'll pass it on to two other folks now to kick it off.
So what we're gonna do is we are going to, the first section, we'll talk about our project goals and remember folks are in this meeting, we're involved, the mayor participated, for example. Then we're gonna do sort of a workshop recap. We're gonna talk about some case studies that we thought would be helpful as far as preserving and enhancing your town center. And then we're going to talk about a list of potential recommendations.
Hi, my name is Rachel Taylor and I'm Senior Analyst with NC Growth. And I'm gonna walk us through some of the project goals. For these workshops, we sort of have two different goals. And the first is to conduct a two-day workshop and then conduct a follow-up presentation to highlight the report recommendations. We also provide a preliminary research memo, which we presented during the workshop, as well as a detailed recommendation report based on initial workshop discussions and the research we conducted. So the process for these workshops and all of their reports is to first, after the workshop, we have follow-up discussions with the design teams, so NC Growth and CPNI, just to kind of discuss the recommendations. For this project, we conducted a case study analysis as well as background research and together we wrote the report. I'll also give a brief workshop recap. So this was a two-day workshop held over Zoom. This is the first virtual workshop we had, so we're really excited to test it out and I think it went really well. And we also usually go on a walking town tour of specific buildings and sites. And then during this workshop, we had a virtual one, which I think again was really successful. A couple of the themes that were brought up during the workshop were, of course, the goal of creating a village center, the desire for public gathering space, the potential for mixed-use commercial space, and really the, the even the desire to enhance the character of it instead of changing or retract from it. We also touched on the potential to provide services to residents and then also to attract maybe voluntary annexation from surrounding communities. And then, of course, as y'all have been talking about today, we touched on traffic as well along New Town Road. So now we're gonna transition into some case studies. And Austin will first walk us through some design appearance-based case studies and then I'll touch on a couple of, some more technical case studies. These will all be included in the report and we've just selected a few. And then we're gonna briefly touch on them, so you can find more details in the report. Austin?
Now, let me, before Austin starts, let me just say that we're obviously, as far as the case studies are concerned, the idea is not to emulate any of these communities that we're gonna show, but to look for some patterns and some takeaways from each of these that might be applicable, you know, to Marvin. So to be clear, obviously, some of these are more intensely developed than what you all are looking at doing. But we think there are some aspects in each of the ones that Austin's gonna talk about that, that could have some influence or inspiration for what you all might wanna do with your town center, village center.
Yeah, so I'm Austin Mendoia. I'm the Economic Development Analyst at NC Growth. And I agree with you, I'll just have to give over some of the appearance case studies. The first one's from Pinehurst, NC. I mean, they really integrated church buildings with residential buildings. They have a really compact center, so you can see how they kind of clustered buildings together really tightly. Next is Valley Crusis in, it's also in North Carolina. And they have a little smaller scale development based around the original Mass General store. So it provides this unique shopping experience around kind of historic general store in the area. In North Carolina, they really capture this idea of having a building that looks one way on the outside but has multiple uses on the inside. So, you know, this might not be the style of building that Marvin is interested in, but it gives the idea of having both a town hall and a community center within one building. Then for Batesville, Virginia, they turned a historic rural market into a farm table restaurant, a venue, a, you know, country shop, and just demonstrating some ways that Marvin can leverage existing historic buildings. Then for Bath, North Carolina, this is a continued example of like low density specialty development. Instead, they have these stuff with these shops that are in low density, so it's like just a couple buildings. And this, and the last example comes from Corolla, North Carolina, which mostly emphasizes like the walkability, emphasis on walkability. It's like small cluster of buildings, but then there's also a familiar sidewalk that has really good capacity for pedestrians and also for any of the bikers. And now Rachel will cut off, come up more of the subsequent cases.
All right, thanks, Austin. I'm just gonna highlight a few of them. The first one is Davidson, North Carolina. And we chose this case, this case study because like Marvin, they were facing considerable pressure to develop from Charlotte's FA growth. But they combined smart growth and new urbanist principles to preserve its small-town character and revitalize existing buildings. They also incorporated a variety of housing types in new neighborhoods to include affordable housing as well as parks within walking distance. The next case study is Hillsborough, North Carolina. And they approached economic development by really leveraging annexation. So they relied on the annexation and permit route process to facilitate development that was aligned with the community values and really worked for them. But one kind of trouble that they found was that residential development often results in a net loss for municipalities. So they came up with a strategic plan to focus on maintaining a diverse tax base within the town as well. And finally, Amber Bard, North Carolina. The local Economic Development Commission suggested that the town create a network of retirees to help businesses thrive and expand. So the Retiree Resource Network includes nearly seventy retired business people who provide free consulting and advising services to local business owners in Brevard and in Transylvania County. And this case study really highlights how a broad array of citizens can come together and help contribute to the social and economic fabric of the community. So now we're gonna touch on some of the technical recommendations that are highlighted in the report. So first, we'll kind of cover some, three general considerations for meeting village center goals. And then we'll go into some of the more detailed and technical recommendations for the built assets. So the first one is planning for the future, strategic planning. It's really important to include, create a long-term vision. And this helps to engage stakeholders. It helps to create cohesive design and plan moving forward. So having that document that really brings together all the other existing plans is really helpful. And it also can incorporate things like, in economic development, that Austin...
So some of the community and economic development considerations of the village will involve things like job creation, population growth, school system impact, limited traffic impact, and the potential for commercial sales tax. Based on our experience in similar projects, we suspect that the impact on these issues in Marvin via the village center will be fairly low. And I think it's, just like, the village can't control each of these aspects based on how they choose to develop or not. But it is also worth considering that more research and doing the proper impact assessments will give more precise numbers of what Marvin could expect for each of these categories. And I go a point detail about that in the, in the report. And then community development, it's just worth noting that it could be sort of have some kind of advisory committee or organization whose focus is on ensuring there's context-sensitive development within the village center. This could be the planning board. It could be another body working with a planning board. But that's one way to ensure that there is good stakeholder engagement that Rachel will talk more about.
Right, so fostering stakeholder engagement is really important by, through the, through the planning process, having a, an overarching vision can really help to create buy-in and excitement and enthusiasm and really create a sense of community around the village center. And the report can detail different ways to foster stakeholder engagement that I will take that for the report. So now I'm gonna move into some of the more village center and detailed recommendations.
So, you know, obviously Marvin is a very neat place. And one of the main recommendations is to leverage the existing churches, of course, and especially the space between the churches. You know, there's the Methodist Church and the Presbyterian Church. And so one thing we talked about was the importance of having something fairly significant in the, in the Methodist Church, for example, which is not necessarily functioning as a church, as banks, Presbyterianists, for example. So we think it's important to maybe begin talking to the Methodist Church of James Dean as a sort of an arm of the Weddington Methodist Church about how that church could be used for, for other things, including potential renovation and expansion as a town hall. The other recommendation is to leverage new development on either side of the churches. So, for example, the churches kind of form the center area. You've got the one end of New Town Road where the cul-de-sacs are and the old store. And then you've got the other end going towards South Carolina. The churches are sort of in the middle of that. But there's a good amount of green space between the Presbyterian and the Methodist Church. And we think that the situating office space, new churches, and when I say office space, I'm talking about very low, low density sort of residential scale buildings that would again contribute to the rural character. And then our recommendation suggests that going east of the two churches, that there'd be more of the retail, excuse me, restaurants. And when we say restaurants, we mean ice cream, coffee, small cafes, sandwich shops, that kind of thing. And then there was a lot of discussion in our team about leveraging the historic buildings, especially the general store. And Austin was talking about Valley Crusis. And it's really, to me, of all the case studies, Valley Crusis is probably nearer to what Marvin was and maybe like in the future, save the, the traffic challenge, because you've got, you know, a lot of traffic going there. And the store could be something that would be an opportunity for adaptive reuse, almost like a miniature Mass General store, which is a hanker in Valley Crusis. Next slide. We think it's important to set the village center boundaries. We had a considerable discussion about a special zoning district for the, for the village center that would really tightly control commercial activity and prevent any sort of spillover and actually make sure that there's a clear distinction between... and actually make sure that there's a clear distinction between residential and small-scale commercial. The other thought was, and this fits with what they've done in Cook and Rowland, is instead of having the development, this came up in one of the stakeholder conversations during the workshop, instead of having the retail or specialty shops up on Newtown Road, the idea is to pull it back, so it really is much more of a village feel, and do pods that would cluster colleagues together surrounded by open spaces, which would help also create destinations for people that were walking to the village from nearby residential. Walkability, green space, and connectivity, when we looked at the community survey, these were all things that were sort of, there was a lot of unanimity in the survey. There was split, almost 50/50 on commercial development. But walkability, greenways were in the 85% to 90% approval and support from the community. So we think that figuring out a plan, going back to coming up with a strategic master plan for connecting the walkways to the village center, I said walkways, greenways, pathways, those things. And then the other thing that there seemed to be a lot of support for, literally, in the workshop participants, is creating a really, a central green space that's identifiable for, you know, that continues the sort of rural character of Marvin, but creates a place where the community can sort of come together for activities and leisure events, whether they're programmed or not. I think the team felt like this was very important. Next slide.
All right, so now I'm going to talk about a couple of the built assets in this proposed village center area. And so first, we kind of wanted to touch on the traffic on Newtown Road. As we're just considering this village center and going through the design and planning process, it will, of course, be really important to include traffic in the strategic planning process. Engaging and communicating with NCDOT right now will be helpful to avoid any kind of design issues that may come up with the road and then build in the village center in the future, especially if down the road, if the village department is thinking about any bold or drastic changes to Newtown Road traffic patterns or the road. It'll be important to incorporate that from the beginning with the village center design. Some short and middle-term options that can be brought into this planning process are the streetscaping, of course, pedestrian circulation, and traffic calming measures. Things like raised crosswalks can really help bring all three of those issues together. And we kind of touched on a couple of different stories in the report, but I just want to highlight those three really quickly.
Yeah, and then when it comes to Marvin effort part, there are options with what to do with it in the full group. For just for context, it's approximately 1.7 miles from the proposed village center. And because of that, that kind of creates a situation where you need to sell or you preserve the park. Selling the park could create a dedicated fund for the green space in the village center. And selling the park could be a natural fit, because the park is connected with the village and a commissioned fund, green space or the fund of land lease. And just for reference, an adjacent 5.43 acre parcel is currently priced at 475K. So that kind of gives you an idea of what price line is going at in this area. The other option would be to preserve the park, which would be beneficial, because it secures existing land, which is already scarce in the area. And it could, you could eventually use the park to net the surrounding neighborhoods. And this can kind of leverage the marketing of voluntary annexation. So some of those surrounding neighborhoods, you say, hey, you know, you're annexing to Marvin, we can create sidewalks so it's easier to access the park.
Go ahead, Rachel.
That's okay, I can't remember visiting this slide, but. So the next consideration for the village center would be to dedicate a public gathering space. So as Michael mentioned before, green spaces and walkability ranked really highly on the community survey. So green space serving as community space would be really important. And then as Austin mentioned, the park is disconnected from the town, so having a central location that can access easily will be important. This space can provide a location for music, food trucks, or even a farmer's market. And this will continue to help add to that sense of community and bring folks together.
Right, but I think the overall idea was, and again, these are just recommendations, was if, and I know it's a touchy subject, which is why we kind of walked a fine line on whether you preserve the park, there may be some sentiments for that, or whether you dispose of the park, take the revenue, and really do something that enhances without disrupting the character of Marvin. I think that was the idea, is that selling the park might be a way to reasonably redirect and focus the open space to the village. And then the next slide really talks about creating historic designation. We have a number of folks on the CPNI team, and I'm sure North Carolina Growth has experienced too, with the importance of creating some sort of historic district that would have plans for adaptive reuse, and this can have tax benefits. And it also can work in concert with a special zoning district to control, very carefully and tightly control the character of the village center. And we have some ideas that are in the report in more detail about how that might work. We wanted to, go ahead, Rachel.
Okay, fine. So we've already touched on working with the churches, but it will be really important to continue to engage, especially with the Methodist Church and Presbyterian Church as well, to potentially acquire or lease those properties. So potential uses for those properties were, as Michael said, to locate the village hall and to maybe the Methodist Church, putting a farm-to-table restaurant in there. And then, of course, laying on those open spaces that exist between the two churches for public gathering space.
Just to add, going back to the example of St. James. St. James is a new community on a large scale, it's a coastal community near Southport. What they did, they were sort of working in a temporary condition like you all are in the house. They built a Newtown Hall, but it wasn't just a town hall by itself. It was a, had a community center component. And so one thing that we talked about as a team was that if the church, the Methodist Church were willing to do a long-term lease, and you were able to expand the church, it could really suit a town hall. But also, depending on how architecturally it was expanded, it could also be a community center and a town hall, not just a town hall, but a place where people could gather for different community events. We also talked about a plan for compatible building uses and determining potential uses for the existing buildings there. We have some, a few large-scale homes. And then we also talked about things that would be low-traffic generators, maybe off-peak. We talked about, you know, again, ice cream shop, cafe, coffee, something that wouldn't be a high-traffic generator. And also some maybe low-intensity office spaces, like an accounting office or a small engineer surveying, a lawyer, just, you know, not large businesses, but things that would support the town center, support the character, and essentially have the offices located on the west end and any kind of retail and specialty shops on the east end. What are your general thoughts?
All right, and then do you all have any questions for us?
I have a quick question. In going through this, and of the towns that you looked at, were any of these, were any of those started from scratch? And I'll just go back to the Davidson one. I'm familiar with Davidson, I've just recently walked that downtown area. Those buildings were already in place. Did any of, did any of the examples that you cited, did they start from scratch? Because right now, we don't have any of those buildings in place. Can you kind of touch on that?
Yeah.
Let me address that a little bit. Obviously, the, you know, we had some mixed signals about, and this has to be really sort of, we had some mixed signals about creating a sort of traditional downtown like a Davidson or even a Huntersville or Wake Forest, North Carolina, et cetera, et cetera. And so we were, you know, the only thing Newtown that I'm familiar with from the precedents that we created, and we can certainly send you the plans, would have been St. James. St. James is a new community that the idea was that they were going to have a post office, small post office, a, you know, some other small retail stuff, a town green. And of course, they built this community center. But none of the examples that we gave focused on creating the intensity of a Davidson. You know, we were really thinking more like Valley Crucis as far as, because that was the sense we were getting from the stakeholders that were participating. And I know there's some differences of opinion in Marvin, but we're not really aiming to create a new downtown, so to speak. And if that's something that, over time, the community wants to do, then that's a different mission than we focused on. We were focused more on preserving the rural character, and any new development would not be like a Davidson where you have these nine, turn-of-the-century kind of buildings together, zero-lot line, pretty urban, street decade. It was really thought that we would have more commercial development, but it would be more, it would be much sparser to be in keeping. So there needs to be some discussion about that, because if there is some sentiment that, because when I originally talked to Rogan, I thought frankly that that's where you all wanted to eventually get, that you wanted to create more of a very small, almost like a Mayberry kind of a downtown where you had, you know, the barber shop, the dry cleaner, the, you know, that sort of thing. And then as we got into it, a lot of what we were hearing from the workshop was, that's not what we want. We really want something that sort of has an east end and a west end, and everything in between is really more organic. It's more, you know, here's a shop, there's a shop over here. They're all walkable, but they're not together like your typical North Carolina town turn-of-the-century town. Does that answer your question?
No.
Not really, because if I look, you know, if I look at the Valley Crucis, I guess if I'm pronouncing that, I'm sorry if I, but when I look at, when I look at all of these, so St. James, they, I'm assuming based on what you were saying, is they kind of started from scratch. They had a plot of land, and then they had, they created St. James, and then they came in and put this, you know, designed a building for a town hall. And somewhere between that and the Valley Crucis, the Valley Crucis looks like the mass store, there was a building already there, and they kind of built around it. As opposed to where we're at, there are no, really, there are no buildings for, we're starting from scratch. And even starting from scratch, the first question would be, who builds the buildings? Who does the frontage? And, you know, who pays for that? Is it the, you know, do we pay for that? Do we allow someone, private development to come in and put it in, but they have to follow our recommendations? And because.
Right, let me, just to, what we were hearing was that there would be new buildings.
Okay.
But that the character of Marvin, I mean, again, I'm getting, this is what I've been, Rogan can chime in, that we did not want to have, that we did not want to necessarily fill in in any kind of intense way between, say, the Coliseum and just beyond the Presbyterian Church. That the idea was that when you drove through Marvin, you would not, there wouldn't be a substantive change in the feel of that community.
Right.
It was fairly sparse. But if there is the idea that you want a development that is, that fills in some of those areas that have a rural character, then that's a different mission than what we were hearing. And, you know, so that's really the issue, is I think there are development opportunities in Marvin, even for a sparser temple. But if you are trying to make it more like a small town, like using Davidson example, then it's a different approach. And I would say also, you know, what we've seen in other communities where there are, there is land available, then what the town would do would be to issue, once they had a master plan of what they wanted to accomplish, which is the first step, then there would be a series of RFPs issued for, to fit the master plan. So for example, if you wanted to build a small retail scale building, then you would issue an RFP to developers and have them submit proposals to the village for them to work. So that's a, you know, that's the process. But I mean, Rogan, you can comment on the densities.
Yeah, sure, I would like to chime in here. So, well, first of all, I wanted to, let's see, if I could share my screen here somehow. Give me a second, I'm gonna switch over. So what Councilman Lai had said was something like, we're starting from scratch, and I don't really, I don't really think we're starting from scratch, because here is a map of all of the existing buildings in the stretch. And you see, there are quite a few, you know, between Owen's Brick House there, the Crane Store, the White House, Scott Lett's House, the Argry House. There are, there's a historical precedent of the buildings that we would try to emulate when we infill with more buildings. And that said, I think the, we kind of are in a unique situation where I think pretty much every other development like this would be led by the town, but all of the property owners here are on board with this vision. And it might be just our responsibility to create a zoning district, which then those property owners have to build within the regulations of that zoning district. And so we would not be responsible for building the buildings or anything, the parking lots or anything internal, except for the common things like the streetscape, the lighting, what was that?
Village Hall.
Yeah, the village hall, some of the common things. And those could be funded by either that commercial sales tax that they were talking about or the municipal service district tax. or the municipal service district tax, which would be that just a commercial rate property tax applied only to these properties. So I think that that is a unique situation and that should be the direction that we go in. It would be the easiest for us and the property owners would have the flexibility to develop their own properties at their own rate, especially the ones who still live in their house right now.
Okay.
Okay, well, do we have any questions for the team at CPNI?
I had, that was the one, that was the only one I had. I thought they did a great job of putting together information for us and, you know, putting this in a right direction.
I agree. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you so much. I got so much out of the workshop, so much out of this. This has been a really, really great driving direction for us here. So really appreciate all the input.
If I could make a comment, as I was listening, I did like the look and feel of Vallecrusus. The, you started talking about sales tax. And I don't know if it's different from any of these towns or not, but, you know, regardless of what we put in business-wise, sales-wise, and how that's structured, all of it, all of the sales taxes go to Monroe. And then that is then distributed back to us based on our population. So we don't necessarily, I mean, we already get an income from sales tax from Union County from other facilities yet. We don't even have a coffee shop yet. We don't, we don't have a cash register right now. So I think I'd be concerned about banking on any, you know, real funds of what you earned from, that's the increases, I think, all of Union County, but not necessarily an individual benefit as much as one would think for Marvin.
One thing I'd like to say is that the elephant in the room is the traffic. And, you know, we were on the phone just prior to our presentation, so we were listening to some of the challenges that you all have. And I think, you know, there needs to be a way to address the traffic because in order, in one sense, the character of Marvin has been changed and that, a lot of the reason why it's different. If you go out there, and I've spent a lot of time out there, the traffic is very, is a very difficult challenge. And so a lot of the traffic calming things that we talked about are going to, you know, could make things better for the people crossing the street, but if it backs traffic up, you know, and it could have impacts on the community. So, you know, one of the things the team talked about was, is there at some point really thinking way down the road to divert the traffic somehow? Because I know when Providence Road, there's a church on Providence Road just before you get to Charlotte Flatt, and we talked about this in the workshop, where Providence Road literally went between the church and its cemetery, which is very much the way Newtown Road does. And they relocated Providence Road, I know it's a small example, because the traffic over time is going to have such an impact on the church and the cemetery. And so, and then this is really thinking out of the box, but at some point, the traffic is so intense between Providence Road and South Carolina and everybody going in that direction, that it's making the ability to maintain any semblance of Marvin's character very, very difficult. The traffic ends up being sort of the thing that makes some of the other efforts to retain the character almost, you know, insurmountable. So that's something that, traffic is a big challenge for you all.
Yeah, we-
Agreed.
We agree with you there.
Hey, Michael.
The only thing I could say is when we were putting in those roundabouts, I don't know if Jamie, your kids experienced this or not, but we ended up going out the back of Firethorn and going out South Carolina direction. So if you go back out on the backside of Firethorn, and I can't remember the road that goes out. So if you're coming from South Carolina, there's an opportunity right where those steel buildings are.
Yep.
To make a right.
Yep.
And I will tell you, driving it and looking at the mileage was, time-wise, was, and you end up on the other side of, I think Stacy Howley, I believe, where you come out on that road to get to the school, wasn't a big deal. So if there's anything, now that, that's a two-lane road, one direction each way, so. But we had to use that when they shut that roundabout down and that may be something that puts it on more of South Carolina's issue rather than North Carolina. But I mean, they're almost, it'd be directional if you want to go to downtown District of Village of Marvin, go this way, or Business District. And then if you want to go around in that, you would head out that road that I was talking about. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Hey, Michael.
Normally when you bypass the community, it kills the community, you know. So it's like there are 50 examples in North Carolina where, you know, they bypass the town and they go to Walmart and it just sucked the life out of whatever semblance of life there was in the town. You have the opposite challenge. If you had, you know, $100 million and there was a creative way, you could sort of look at a map and figure out a way to convert some of the traffic through Marvin, that's the best way in your case to preserve the character of that very special place. Because the traffic going through there is, it's people that are not going to Marvin. They're just going through Marvin. And so that's what, that's one of the big challenges. And I think if you could, there are ways to mitigate that, then you could do some things in the town, to Rohit's point, that would preserve its character in a realistic way. Not make it like a museum, but make it, give it some uses that will keep it, give it vitality without letting it to death. You don't, we don't want a CVS and a McDonald's. We want things that are more in keeping with what was there 50 years ago. And that's really what our workshop focused on, is what are some things that we can do in the town to, you know, preserve and respect the character of the rural character.
Hey, Michael, this is Christine. I want to, you know, say thanks to you and your team for the work that you've done. Definitely a great report and it's definitely given us a lot to look at and to think about and to plan in the next year as we're looking at moving forward with this project. Would you thank you very much for the efforts here?
You're welcome. We just scratched the surface, but we really appreciate you all inviting us. And it was for a virtual workshop, it was our first one and we really appreciate the opportunity and we'd like to stay connected. We had a lot of folks in the Charlotte area before I moved to a farm in eastern North Carolina, which is where I live now. I live in Valentine, so I know a lot about the growth out that way. And NC Growth has done a fantastic job. They're a great resource. And Rohit has been tremendous and very responsive and I think he really understands what your goals are, so thank you for involving us.
Thank you. And so I guess our next steps for council is Rohit, let's kind of, you figure out next steps.
Yeah.
Let's start talking about that, start really getting the landowners involved and then we'll kind of put together a plan.
Yeah, actually, I think I want to talk about one specific next step that they recommended, which was to create a strategic planning committee, kind of separate from the planning board. If they, you know, the planning board has to develop a design document, it'll take them a long time, I think, and they have other stuff to do too. But kind of a once a month committee that may be facilitated by someone else or may be facilitated by me. If I could request to put that on the next agenda to consider creating that kind of committee?
Yep, do that.
Okay.
Yep, that sounds good.
Excellent.
Very good. All right, thanks you guys very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You did a great job, guys.
Thanks everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Village Hall.
Wait, 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 we have a ordinance rewrite presentation.
Sorry. Ordinance rewrite presentation, Rohit.
I can make this really quick though, because this is kind of going to be like when I gave the Parks and Greenway Master Plan presentation first. I gave it like really, you know, like a 10-minute, here's where we are so far. That has to go to the PRG board and then come back. So I'm going to be doing something really similar here and apologize. I say that as a bookmark on my computer, but I realize I'm on a different computer, so that didn't quite work. Just give me one second. But anyway, so this is just going to be like a 10-minute, you know, here's what happened with the project. And we have to take this to the planning board because they, by statute, they have to see every, let's see, what is it? They have to see every zoning and planning ordinance change before it comes to council. So they'll see it first and then we'll bring it to council at a future meeting.
So if they need to see it first, do we need to see it now?
Well, that's what the thing is, that I wanted to show you that the project was completed and what it looks like. So it will take maybe five minutes.
Okay.
You know, looking at these towns that they focused on, most of them have a big calling card.
Yeah.
Time-hurts, I mean.
Even Vallecrusus is-
Yeah, I mean, that mass scale store is the North Carolina staple, you know.
Okay, Rohit.
I'll also have the screen share. Okay, so this is, I'm going to be showing you two things kind of at the same time. First of all, this is NCodePlus. It's our new code host. And this is kind of the editor page, so this is not what the public is going to see when they look at our ordinances, but this is what we see when we're trying to, you know, revise them. And the really great thing about this platform is that it's a lot like Word where you can, you can just make revisions on the fly and then just kind of save them. Of course, we will only make revisions after putting it through council, but it just makes it really easy as opposed to with American Legal where we have to, we had to ask them every time to change our ordinances. And they charge us per page. But this is, this is not, they don't have a charge per page here. It's just you do whatever you want on your own. And so then that's it really. I just want to just dive into what we're looking at in terms of the code reorganization, which is, which is that they took, they basically kept the same structure of subdivisions and zoning, but within it, they consolidated all of the parts that have to do with development and they just put it just in a row. So if you want to, if you want to know which kind of subdivision you're going to build, you go to subdivision types and you go to conventional and then you read about all the types of subdivisions and what they entail. So I think with that, I'll get a lot less phone calls about, now I want to subdivide this property, you know, what do I qualify for? It's all right here. And then there's a conservation type of subdivision too, where if they conserve some area, then, you know, they can have some more density locally. Again, it's just, it's all right here. I don't want to go into the content right now. I just want to show you that it's all consolidated.
This still has to go through an approval process?
Yes.
Okay, can you speak to that?
The approval process is just, so I'm going to make some revisions to this as well and then I'll put it through planning board. They'll make their recommendations and then they'll put it to council for adoption.
So this is still just conceptual in nature as far as the reorganization?
Right, right. We haven't adopted this yet. Like, they still have our previous ordinance here. And this is just the revision. Let's see, and then so back to that. And then so we have the zoning part. So we have zoning districts. We have it all right here, residential, non-residential. And overlay, let's see. And so this is the section, if you're a developer and you need a checklist of everything, everything that you need for the proper, like, you know, compliance. It's all, it's all just right here.
So Rohit, so let me understand, when, once this, when and if this is approved, would this be added to our website?
Yes.
It would be, yes.
And then, and then it's just an extension, I mean, so-
Yes, there's integration with our website and this site.
So let me kind of say it in layman's terms. This essentially is a text amendment to our existing code, the book that you have laying around.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so the planning board has to approve it and then will have a public hearing?
I don't think we have to. Wait, wait, I think we, yeah, we might.
I think we do. And then it would go before council, they would approve it. So basically our entire code would kind of be reorganized, this book. So on our website, it would kind of reorganize it how- That's good, because there's some redundancies and overlaps and contradictions.
Exactly, exactly. There are a lot of inconsistencies because of how our ordinance was just pieced together over time. And developers had problems, you know, knowing what was proper.
So this should be easier on you and developers because you should be able to go to our website and search it up, right? And it'll be a lot easier once it's approved and implemented.
Right, everything that has to do with one topic is in one place and they've removed all the redundancies and they've added all of the changes that, you know, if you remember, I was talking about 160D, which is the state's new authority for planning. They've incorporated all of the differences between the previous version and-
Into this.
Yes.
Very good. So this will go to planning board next?
Yes. That's where, that's it.
Perfect.
Any questions?
Rohit, can you send that on?
Not, I don't think I can send that to you yet. I could add you as a user.
Okay, because that, I mean, if this gets added to the homepage, that would be an easy way to, of course, run with the vote.
Yeah.
I mean, you could just reference something in there, just let them get it.
Well, you probably don't want to do that until it's approved in case anything changes.
Correct.
I don't want you to get mixed up on something that's not official.
Right, right. But what I can do is I can add Mike as a user to the revisions page, maybe just as a viewer user instead of adding him.
Well, you just have to keep that in mind. It's just, it's not approved yet.
Right. But I mean, it would be good for him, I think, to see in advance, to get familiar with it.
Good?
We're good?
You're good?
All right, I will stop screen sharing and we can move on.
All right, sorry for skipping you, Rohit.
That's okay.
All right, C, Village Hall.
So I don't have much to report other than Councilmember Lyon got with the church. Do you have any deadline? And we're giving them until August? We did, or the end of-
Don't need till August.
It sounds like, it sounds like Councilman Lyon has some information to share with us.
So I got a response back. Says, "Good morning, Jamie. After reviewing the renderings, the elders have unanimously decided we are not interested in this plan or any such plan going forward. A village of Marvin has been a wonderful tenant and a great next-door neighbor, but is not in the best interest of our church to use the land entrusted to us in such a way."
So, okay, all right, so we'll move down to the corner, so.
And I've already signed the agreement that y'all approved at the last meeting for the detail sheet changes and I'll just let them know that we'll go ahead and update the site plans that were for the corner.
And let me, and let me just, let me just ask. So at this point, with that being said, because that's a huge development in this whole discussion, is the corner still the only option we have? And I'm not, I'm not saying I'm for or against, but is that the only other option that we have?
Well, previously you all had assessed a couple of different houses along- Well, previously, you all had assessed a couple of different houses along this corridor to, to kind of retrofit, and that's, you know, I don't know if there's any other property for sale along the corridor, but?
Is there anybody else that might entertain, rather than developing themselves, sell to be able to develop Village Hall more centrally? For instance, the little brick house over here, that would, you know, is there a potential to change that?
Um, he, that owner very, um, very, um, strongly wanted to have a commercial use of the Village Center happen. I don't think he's going to be willing to entertain the Village Hall.
I don't think that property is big enough either.
Yeah, that's, that's also the thing. That house was built in nineteen hundred or nineteen oh two, and it would have to undergo some major renovations.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't consider renovating, I mean?
I don't mean the house, I mean the physical land, I don't think that's, it's not.
Oh, yes, the, the property is only half an acre.
Yeah.
I was just, I wasn't sure, 'cause it wouldn't, wouldn't even be a renovation, it'd be raising the house and starting over again, but utilizing the property. I'm just trying to think about centralizing Village Hall still, and that was something somewhat closer to the center, but?
Instead of the Church.
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same thing, they're not interested.
They're not interested, nobody's interested more than?
It's a, it's a counseling center, like, what, they don't, there's nobody ever there, like?
So, so?
Just did some parking lot renovations.
I think it's our responsibility to, and, and, and this may be just a crazy question, 'cause it is their land, are, if they could sit on that land for perpetuity, if they wanted to, and never, and no one could ever force them, make them do anything, they can sit on it, it's theirs, nothing can ever happen, right?
Mm-hmm.
I just want to be clear.
Right, even with the Village Center District, we're not making any property owner do anything.
I, I, I just wanna be able to go back to them and say, understood, and you're free to do whatever from, from now to eternity. You can, you know, that can just be a field that you, that you mow grass in.
So I don't think we can go, I mean?
What?
I mean, it's not like we can, like, condemn it.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm trying, listen, I'm, I'm doing it for their best interest.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure I'm saying, I'm not saying anything?
I mean, we can't condemn it and take it over, and I mean, eminent domain, right? Isn't that what it would be? Can't do, I mean, not that we would, not that we would, everybody calm down.
So with that being said, I'm just saying, does that, does that place us now in a point where that is one hundred percent where everything's going?
I think so. I mean, because the other options that we've looked at are not?
Right.
They're not viable.
Because again, I, you know, in my, in my vision of, or thought of, is if Village Hall did go there, then that piece of property could be used as a, uh, farmer's market, amphitheater, food truck, and? With that being said, when we do that, can we structure it and position it in a way where we could still have that kind of use in it?
Yeah, and, and we would, I mean, we've always planned, or not always, when the plan started, before my time, there was, the plan was to have Village Hall, but also have a farmer's market area there. So I think that would be what we would do, is just move forward with making sure that the spacing and everything works out that way.
I mean, and I was on the PRG Board when the whole farmer's market idea came about, and we had, um, some, some people from Waxaw Farmer's Market come down, there was several people who were involved that kind of gave us some direction, and we, we weren't, it kind of just floated into being there, but there was no concrete where the farmer's market had to absolutely go. It just seemed like that was a convenient place to put it. If there was another location that we wanted to use for the farmer's market, that wasn't set in stone that it had to go there, there may be some, some other, um, property here that may be usable for it, I don't know, but that was, that was just a convenient place to put it, since we already had it.
Yeah.
We're, we're gonna have to do some of the site plan revisions anyway, because of the new building code, so we can bring that back before council, so we can talk conceptually some, some changes.
So, refresh my memory, Jamie, to your question, is, have we exhausted all, um, the places, and, and this last discussion with CP and I, that group, um, they suggested the Methodist church, do we have a contact there? I don't remember.
Well, I've got a contact there, 'cause I used to go there too. So, no, I can call, I can contact Terry Moore.
I mean, Christina's talked to them, and they've said no.
I've talked to their facilities manager, her name's Joanne Horstman, and she did advise, they did discuss it at the, one of their board meetings, and they weren't interested.
Okay.
So?
Okay, have you reached out to the people that now own the Crane, uh, General Store?
Um, not about, not a?
Not too difficult.
It's not a parcel.
Yeah.
It's three acres.
That's required.
That's all, that's actually what it'd be.
Yeah, it's deep, it's three acres.
Um, but I think they also want to activate it as a commercial use. Um, I did reach out to them, and, and it didn't occur to me that I should talk to them about being the Village Hall, um, but they wanted to, um, they wanted to maximize, um, a commercial value, uh, in a Village Center, uh, future.
Right, and I, I understand that, I'm just looking at the proximity of, to the, how difficult that's gonna be, FYI, unless they have access from the corner because of where they are located from the roundabout?
Right.
Having some sort of commercial right there, but the connectivity being behind all the utilities that are there to the corner may be their access, so I, I mean, I don't know if it's, if it's, how doable that is, when you look at making that commercial, but then the egress, the in and out, if, if that's even possible there, as much, 'cause I know that property goes way in the back, but it also sort of connects to what we own plus on the cor, you know, the whole corner there. The access for that may be, may rely on us being willing to give them the ability to get back there because of what DOT requires, I'm guessing.
Yeah, that's true. Um, their current driveway is less than a hundred feet from the roundabout, which, uh, on its own, I don't think DOT would allow them a driveway permit. Um, maybe, um, they might just use their existing driveway without a permit. But, um, that's why, uh, one of the recommendations in my, um, overall Village Center rendering was that we, uh, construct a fourth leg of the Waxaw Marvin Road Roundabout, and, uh, and have that be like a shared driveway for both our Village Hall site and the Crane Store and the White House, um, so that we don't, we first, first of all, we remove, uh, the number of driveways off of Newtown Road, which will help the traffic a lot, people are not stopping to turn into driveways, but also you eliminate the driveways being too close to the roundabout, and, um, and that's our property, so we don't even have to ask anyone to do that. Um, and that would be funded out of the Municipal Service District, um?
Yeah, but that all should also be funded by the other properties that we?
Yeah, we could, we could split the cost for shit.
But, but we need to talk about, but we need to talk about Village Hall, not the town hall.
Yeah, yeah, well, I guess, I, alright, so, so just to back up to answer, uh, Mr. Mayor's question, um, there are opportunities to put a driveway somewhere else to access the Crane Store if you wanted to consider it.
So I guess, maybe, so what would be the advantage of anything to do with that store? I mean, are we talking about utilizing some of the backside of the property for Village Hall? Was, what was the question with that whole thing?
Well, let me just, let me just ask then, the Crane Store and, I'm sorry, they're wanting to use it for commercial, right?
Right, right.
Um, is, it's three acres?
It's three acres, it's deep, and it is adjacent to what we own in the back, right?
A dollar is a dollar, so if they want it for commercial, why wouldn't they work with us? Because it's still money coming in.
I can imagine that they could sell it to us if we made a good deal.
Why, why would we try to let them have the Crane? Listen, we're, we're not gonna knock that thing down, it's historic, we're not gonna, we can't retrofit the actual store to be Town Hall, it's too small. So why wouldn't we let them leave that commercial and see if we can do, I mean, I don't know, do we wanna have a Town Hall up on the road, or do we wanna have it, like, could we put Town Hall behind it and have some sort of, like, streetscape in the back? Like, I don't know.
I mean, we could relocate with the store, the building itself, I mean, well, it's a small building, so it could be relocated to be, to maintain the historical integrity, to make it more usable. I don't, I'm just throwing an idea.
That I know, I know.
Can, can you, could we, just, I'm just asking, you, let them keep Crane Store there, utilize property behind it?
Yes, yes.
And then tie it back into the corner? So, so?
Problem is going.
Well, why didn't you get there earlier?
Yeah, that's a potential, uh, that's, that's something I can ask them.
So, I mean, that would be, I mean, that would be the most ideal.
What's, what's happening with the parcel beside the Crane Store at the yellow house?
That's, uh, that's Scott White's house, he lives there currently, and he's also interested in a commercial future for his house. That's my point.
They have to understand that a lot of that, that commercial, as much as they want that to be a commercial, they, is, is all about access, and they won't, I believe, have the access that they're gonna need unless, to Jamie's point, and the reason I didn't get there, Kim, 'cause I wanted you all to get there, 'cause I'm just thinking out loud as well.
You just weren't gonna get there.
But, but that's the only thing I'm thinking, is, is how we all kind of work together as a community and have, you know, both hands, you get, you get what they're asking for, we get what we're asking for, and maybe that property back there is a little more easier to work with. Now, I know that's throwing another wrench in this thing, I'm certainly not trying to slow this down, if it ends up we have to move forward with the Town Hall and the, the market on that corner, I'm fine with that, just because of our limited, uh, space that is available here, but it is something to be considered, just 'cause I know they had a good deal of land behind it. Um, but how they make that commercial with where they're located on, from a frontage standpoint, is gonna be a challenge.
Yeah, I think?
No, I mean, it's, it's not a bad idea.
There, there needs to be some discussion about this and see?
I just think that would be the, again, I'm trying to kill, you've got a piece of property that you can utilize.
I know, I know.
How, how do we create, we kill two birds with one stone, and not, and allowing, you know, if we got behind there?
There we go.
And we developed, and we developed that?
Look at all that back there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's?
And like, you should, 'cause don't we own oh six, that one?
Yeah, we own that, that.
Because we could do something cool back there, or something cool on the corner, and have like trails and connectivity, and you could?
I mean, now you, now you kind of?
From the back.
From the front.
Right, and now you, you, I mean, you've just created an entire, a larger piece for Town Hall, the whole center. You can put, you, then, then it's, you know, before we were talking about picnic tables, and we're talking about stuff, then we said we were working on their agenda on that. Now we can use, we can utilize our own agenda, whatever we wanna do with it.
What's that parcel behind the Methodist Church?
That's also a Methodist church, I think, the cemetery is a separate parcel.
Oh, it's, oh, okay, that's the cemetery, I got you.
Well, what about working with?
People are dying to get in that too.
Oh, my God.
One of them.
That was really bad. Could we, could we not work with nine, I can't see, nine nine oh eight and nine nine oh four, and try to do something in the back and cut out some stuff?
That's Scott White, and nine nine oh four is the Crane House.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about. So if, if they could, if we could work something out with them, and use, utilizing the back parts of their parcels, which would still give them their commercial that they wanna develop, 'cause that's, all they want is those buildings.
I mean, I, they don't, they're not, they, Rohit, they haven't talked about doing anything in the back commercial wise, they just wanna use their two existing structures as commercials.
No, they, they do want, they do wanna see if it's possible to have commercial, another commercial building behind it, and then housing in the back of that. That's the last conversation I had.
Yeah, could so.
Put right beside Town Hall.
But again, a dollar's a dollar.
Right, right.
It might be useful that.
Doesn't matter what source it comes from, and quite honestly, if I'm them, I'm going, I'd rather have, I'd rather have my dollars up front, I don't have to worry about, because it's all sounds great until you have to manage it.
Yeah, so I would, I would, if we can, before the next meeting, get with these two property owners, talk to them, kind of lay out what we've talked about here, and see what their thoughts are, and then we can talk about it in the next meeting.
Sure, I mean, you know, there's also the possibility of possibly leveraging some of that property next to the store.
The oh six, two five.
Trading some real estate there, where we would just have the access road to get back there, but maybe trading some real estate that would work for them as well, because you could put another, uh, commercial building or two on that lot, along with the access road hook coming off of traffic circle. That may be something that they may consider as well. That is something that we have to bargain with.
I mean, I could try calling them right now, if you would?
No, no, well, I mean, I, I, I think we just would?
That's a, that's a deeper conversation than?
Yeah.
Sure.
I think we just, I think, I think Andy, that's a great point. Um, I would, I would always, I would keep that in the back of my?
To keep that in your back pocket.
Put that, keep that bullet in your gun, and, and say, you know, if they, if they start throwing up on it, go, you know, there's some other options that we do have here. So you've got that in there, but I just think that'd be, you know?
I mean, I like that, because it's, they're super deep, and if we can do, if we can kind of do that, and then have some, you know, because, listen, if they wanna do commercial, then it's gonna be advantageous for them to have some sort of something on that corner that ties everything in together to bring them there. Um, so I, I mean, I would, that's the route I would travel down. Joe, great idea.
And I, and I can see something like, um, almost like a subdividing, um, of that parcel, the back part, that we could utilize, and maybe, maybe in a trade, give them that frontage road if there was gonna be commercial, but then, you know, just how that all looks and designs and stuff, but their access would be through an easement from the, I would imagine the Marvin's School Roundabout, um, and, and they would have an easement back in it. I mean, you could potentially be, if there was frontage there for a commercial, and you drove by and you realize, I can't get in there, you'd go down and have to get in and realize that your access is gonna, it's gonna have, or maybe if you did a trade, that would allow more frontage road for better access for them, and they see the advantage of, hey, maybe it makes sense to relinquish some of the land behind in exchange for some of the land up front.
Okay, so we're gonna let Rohit talk to them?
Well, the, the land up front is a lot more valuable than the land in the back.
Yep.
So, and, and we would also probably need an easement from, in, on the left side of ninety nine oh four?
Yep.
To get in that way, but I would almost see that you could access Town Hall from two sides.
Yeah, that one, over here, over there, or even adding the other leg.
Right.
Another concern is I'd like to see a topo map of that, because of the concerns that we have, of the, you know, the challenges we have with where we're looking at. Now, what does that now look like?
Well, I can turn that on.
Is it gonna be more conducive to what we're looking at than what we're dealing with over here?
Yeah, one second.
Is that?
Uh, let's see, I can't see it with?
It's over there.
There we go, okay. So there is a stream in the back of the property that we own, um, and you can, if you understand contour map, you can see that these, these curvy areas is where the stream is, but the stream, when you see on, uh, even out of our own site plan, the stream ends on our property. So while there may be wetlands in the Crane Store property, the stream doesn't end at our property, so we don't have as much, uh, issue with it. Um, I think the bigger issue might be that we have some power lines here going across, and, um, maybe we don't put it all the way back there, but we do have to recount.
Well, those, those power lines are outside of those parcels anyway, from what I can see. It looks like it's in that, in that space between.
Uh, yeah, that, that seems to be right, actually. So, the power lines here?
Yeah, and I've, I've walked it back there, it's, I, I kinda have an idea of that, uh, in that corner. I'm just, was curious about the other, because that seems to be higher ground up here, behind?
Yeah, so the stream?
'Cause that cemetery sits way up high behind the Methodist Church, and that's probably similar in grade.
Yeah, so the stream ends, uh, kind of just about where I've drawn it, and then there's like a, there's a buffer of one hundred feet that you couldn't build, um, and so?
So if we were looking at somewhere where the two lots actually come together?
Over here on the left.
To the left, a little bit, Rohit, if you go? Yeah, so somewhere in that vicinity of, um, maybe to put it, because it would be up high, it wouldn't, probably wouldn't be nearly as bad of a?
Yeah.
An issue with, with grade and drainage and all of that?
Well, then you could kind of see it in between the two commercials, I mean, you could do something really cool.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I was kind of looking at. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't anything back there that, that would be a, a challenge to build.
I don't think so.
It looks like it's a pretty good spot, actually, up high, good, good spot for building.
Okay, alright, so Rohit, we'll put you on that, what are you up, what?
So, um, I think your best bet there is to sell them on the fact that, I know they want commercial, I know they want it up front. They're not gonna get those accesses. They're not gonna get three accesses in there.
That, that was.
What you need to do is go in and make a deal, so we'll do a collector going in, and y'all can do the outposts off of it. And you got one access.
Yeah. I agree with that.
That's where I.
I mean, the deal, who, uh, they're gonna.
They already said it was okay, right?
Yeah, the deal would give us a leg. Would be fine if we built it.
And that probably would actually improve the, the operation of that traffic circle, because they're gonna have to redesign that side to give us a leg. To make that more, it won't look like a straight lane through there where I almost got creamed yesterday again.
But I'm getting them commercial access that I don't see them getting any other way.
Right. So.
I, and that's where I was going. I think we have to be careful how we present it. Do not, do not go into it and go and. Careful how I, how I do this.
Yeah.
Do not go into it. We have the, we have the, the higher ground here. So when you go in to have a discussion, I'd like to have a discussion with you about the property behind. Let them talk. And.
Do you wanna do it with them?
I'd love to.
Yeah, we can.
There you go.
You or Joe or Andy, I mean.
You do it with them.
So, so that we're going into a positioning it where, because I don't, I don't want them to put Rohit, you in a position where they think they have the higher ground.
Right. We have the land. We're just asking them if they consider something.
So I will let you two get together and then you guys give them a call, receiving scheduled meeting or whatever.
Yeah, we can. I've been in touch with them recently, so I think we'd be happy to help the conversation.
Good. Okay. So, good? Go to Villa Hall?
Yeah.
Joe, Bob?
I'd be willing to sit in on that, too, Jamie, if you wanna do that.
Sure.
Okay.
Sit in, mute it.
You sure, Jamie?
No, I just, I just, again, I'm just, I'm just careful because, a-again, I just wanna make sure we position ourselves in the right way.
No, no, but you sure you want Joe there?
Yeah. Joe, no, I want Joe there. You want, you wanna start with pennies and walk up to a.
There he is. He got it. He's finally laughing. I was like, he's not listening. Okay. All right. So, we good with that? Okay. Uh, moving on. I know food's here, but I'm gonna do number one till Mike can go. All right. D, number one, discussion of financial contribution in the Joe Carr crosswalks.
That is Christina. It is. So that, I don't know, it seems like about a year ago we had an accident. Maybe it wasn't quite that long. But we have since been entertaining the, um, implementation of a pedestrian refuge or crosswalk at the Wheatfield and Joe Kerr intersection. And that resulted in a estimate that would require a road widening, which was about $90,000. So at that point, we kinda stepped back and looked at different options, which resulted into a $40,000-ish pedestrian crosswalk. When, we had only budgeted $15,000 for a pedestrian crosswalk in this year's budget. So we went to the HOAs within that community to see if they were interested in contributing some financial funds to help pay for it. And that resulted into a conversation about implementing three pedestrian crosswalks, um, within that area. Two at Marvin Creek and then one at Bridle Path. And the result of that was about $90,000 for the three crosswalks. I have since communicated that to the HOAs, and they are interested in knowing the village's contribution amount, so they would know how much they need to fundraise in order to make it happen. Again, we only budgeted $15,000. We can use power bill funds for this project. However, that does take away from future road resurfacing projects that have been planned. So it's really a council decision as to how y'all wanna proceed with this. Um, that's kinda where we're staying.
My position would be fifteen and see what they can come up with for the rest.
You made 45, 15 per inch.
Fifteen each?
We have fifteen, right?
Fifteen, one, one, $115,000, not fifteen each.
That's what I'm saying. So we can see what they can come up with. And if we, if we can't get to that, then we may need to look at other ways of, of coming up with some money. But we, we budgeted fifteen. So I don't wanna go over that to start with, but if we can't.
I mean, we're, we're back in the position, just like North Carolina is.
Right. It's, you know, we only have so much, and so the more we can get from private funds, the, the better for this project. I mean, we're, we're ending up fifteen right out of the gate.
So where are they, they're one of three, right?
Correct.
And where at?
Um, here, uh, and I'm screen sharing this, so if you can see, uh, here at Wheatfield and Joe Carr, um, at, uh, Canterfield Drive, Grove's Edge and Joe Carr, um, and over at, uh, Bridle Path, um, Apo-Apomatics and, uh, Autumn Blossom. So, uh, these, these three intersections here that you can see on the screen that are, uh, on Joe Carr. They want, uh, they wanna have a crosswalk at each of these intersections reasonably, because they are three separate and unconnected neighborhoods. And so, and the trail is on the opposite side of Joe Carr Road from all three of them.
So, and, and I mentioned in the memo that the village receives approximately $140,000 in power bill funding every year. And as you have, um, discussed with Mike earlier, we do budget for pretty much 100% of that for our road resurfacing projects as planned. Now, we do have other projects that come about, like this curb and gutter, emergency repair, that sort of thing, that we try to account for some of those funds, but primarily 100% of power bill is what funds our road resurfacing.
So I think, again, it's all about presentation. My, my, my pitch would be that most of, again, I don't, I don't assume here. I would say we put one, we, we go to them and say, one will be put in this year. And then we'll look at doing it the next year, and then another one the next year. You've got time to come up with what, because we only have, we've got $15,000.
So I will mention the one, from the cost of one of them, it's $40,000. We budgeted fifteen based on what we thought it was gonna cost at the time we were initially planning it. And this ended up being more than double of what we planned.
But again, it's transparency back to them. Because again, it's, it's nice to go, I want. But if you don't have the money to do it, so transparency is, we've budgeted fifteen, it's 45, and we will do one, because I thi- I do think it's needed.
So do you, so from the fifteen, you wanna find money to add to equal forty in this year's budget?
I would go, like Andy said, see what they come up with first.
Okay.
Because it's a want to them. Because again, they're, they have, they have their HOA. Each one of those have an HOA. And they, and I get, I, I promise you that they all have funds available, somewhere sitting. And if it's that important, say, you know what, we've, we've got fifteen. It's transparency.
So our, our offer to them is fifteen this year for one, and see what they come up with.
See what they come, see what they come up with.
Well, I was, I have been, I have gotten information that Marvin Creek only wants to contribute to the Wheatfield Drive one. They do not wanna contribute to the other two.
And I wouldn't expect them to.
Because, why? They've got two other connectors to their own neighborhood.
There's four, four connectors going into that are, are Marvin Creek. The other two are standalone.
But, but each one of them, each one of them have their own, Canterfield has their own HOA.
Right. No, I know. But I'm just saying, but Marvin Creek only wants to do Wheatfield, even though they've got people. And I guess what they're saying is, we've only, our people are on this side. They're not gonna cross over on Canterfield or, or Apomatics.
Right.
Um, but from my understanding is that they are only willing to pony up money for one, Marvin Creek.
If I can make a comment, um, I kinda studied this and actually traveled along after this came out first to review. Actually traveled along there. I, I'm in agreement with Jamie. I thought that this would be a great compromise that to start with Wheatfield and then look at, you know, the next few years, it looks, first off, that we are approaching an issue. That is the busiest intersection right there is Wheatfield. In fact, I gotta tell you, when we were talking about the roundabout, that roundabout is ground down that we're talking about resurfacing. And you should see the stop sign right there at Kindling Wood and Wheatfield. That stop sign, you can tell that cut through, uh, coming from Ray Road, through and around that roundabout, through Kindling Wood and coming over onto that road, um, at Wheatfield and Kindling. You can, you can tell there's just a lot of traffic, and I think that's where. The biggest issue is, I think the other communities know that that's where they can cross over. And then in subsequent years, you know, it'd be nice to do everything. The only thing I was concerned about then was let's just assume for a moment, we did all three, let's just say. Then I asked myself, how would that affect traffic along Joe Carr? In other words, um, would people then realize, oh, I've gotta keep stopping, um, for crosswalks, which is wonderful for traffic. That's what we wanna do, slow down the traffic. But then I thought, well, does that then push everybody off onto Marvin? Will people avoid Joe Carr and go onto Marvin connecting over to Newtown? So it's kinda like a balancing situation, but I'm in agreement with Jamie. I think if we approach and just say, look, we wanna contribute to this, this is two. Can we, you know, let's start with this intersection which seems to be the busiest. There's a lot of cars coming in and out of Wheatfield. I'm just saying, uh, there's, uh, there's a lot.
Okay, so, so we're gonna go back to three neighborhoods, and we're gonna say, okay, we're gonna do Wheatfield first. We've got $15,000. You guys figure out the rest. Well, Canterfield Creek and Bridle Path, Wyndham Hall, they're gonna be like, well, that's Wheatfield. Marvin Creek can figure that out. They are not gonna concern themselves with that, I don't think. They're gonna be like, okay, that's fine. So then, so then Marvin Creek will have to figure out how much they wanna pay. Now, what happens if Canterfield and Bridle Path, Wyndham Hall come back and say, well, we want these done now? And we'll see how much they're willing to pony up, and then we try to find money?
Can, can, now, can they make, make a suggestion? I may be reading this wrong, but, um, I'm showing $94,000 for all three, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
There's four HOAs involved.
Three, but yeah, four, yeah.
So it's.
Is there four or three?
31,000.
Four.
If you do it one at a time, it's 40.
There's four.
Is that, is that what you're saying? If we do it one at a time, it's 40. If, if we do all three at the same time.
Yeah, you get a discount.
Thirty-one per, which is a lot of money.
Fifty-five, there's four. Well, fifty-five or two.
If we all are trying to be on the same page, and where it says all about safety and about accessibility and, and safety for kids to get across the street. If I took the four HOAs and then added the town, which would be five, and I took $94,000 and divided it by five, that would be $18,810 for each HOA and a little bit over budget for us. But it's a happy medium where we can get all three done and have the ability to, um, you know, take advantage of getting three done versus individually. And throw that out to them and see if that's, uh, uh, something that they can chew on and, and maybe decide to go.
I'm fine with doing that.
I totally agree, because again, I guarantee you, they have the funds in their HOA to do it. They're just sitting on it, and they're wanting us to do it. And I don't, I don't blame them. I, I, and I would love to.
They have to allocate $18,000, and if they, you know, need a year to do that or to do an assessment and stuff, I mean, may, maybe the villains can float them and they can notice. But, but either way, I, I agree with you, Jamie. I bet, I've sat on boards. They're usually looking for things to enhance their community.
Right.
We as a village technically are, you know, it's not our road.
Right.
But we're concerned about safety, and we're trying to address this, and we're going over what our budget was of fifteen. By $3,000. I, I just think it's a happy medium, and I think it's something each individual HOA can swallow and say, this is, this is nothing when it comes to a life.
Okay. So we'll have Christina go back to the four HOAs and say, here, here's our proposal. Well, you've got four HOAs involved. You've got the village, that's five. Here's the total cost. We'll divide it by five. This is your portion. This is our portion. You'll get all three done and see what they say.
You said it was $15,000 was the contribution?
No, our. Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good.
I think, yeah, and the important piece is just the transparency. We, we, we only budgeted this, I mean.
And we're willing to go over budget some in order to get all three done right now.
Right.
You know, we're, we're just, we're robbing from one bucket to put it in another, so if we don't have that $3,500 that comes out of the street repaving, I mean, it is what it is, so.
$35,000. Is there a, um.
$3,500.
Is there a consensus to allow the village to float the money for the next year?
What's that?
I wouldn't offer that up.
I, I'm not, I'm. I'm not. I'm mixed on it, because here's, here's the thing. I, I wouldn't present that to them as an option. I would let them, let them chew on it. Let them do, let them do some work in it, because, uh.
Yeah, I wouldn't either. I wouldn't offer it up as an option. Okay.
I, I agree. I'm just throwing it out there. I don't wanna get into the banking world, but I, I mean, in, in some.
Stay to your lane, Joe.
Well, I don't know when the timeframe is on this, but if it's not in their budget for this year, um, they may have to approve it into December timeframe for next year. I don't know when we're talking about getting this done.
Stay to the later.
When, when, let them come back, let them come back and say, we just don't have the funds to do it. Would you have the funds, you know, would you have the funds, you know, allocated for, for next year? Because I'm sure they're, they're in the same budget cycles most, that they're, they're halfway through, they're halfway through their. But again, they, they probably have, they, all these HOAs, they're looking for projects to do, because they've got funds on hand. So I would just hold that option, and if it's something that comes up, we'll, we'll address it from there.
Okay. All right. Cool beans. All right. Um, let's keep going till 12, and then we'll break for lunch. Does that sound good? All right. So next up, the appointment of Austin Yao as village clerk. Mike, you're good. Thank you.
Mike, thanks much. Thank you.
Christina?
Thank you, Mike.
I wanted to add one thing. I know Christina was talking about y'all asking about putting Marvin's, I mean, uh, do you think I'm ready on the other side? I wouldn't do that.
We're gonna talk about that.
Okay. Oh, it's in your administrative organs, all the way down there.
So at the July 14th meeting, council authorized me to offer unemployment, um, to Austin as our village clerk. We then accepted it the next day, and pursuant to general statute 160A, 171, he has to be appointed and assigned the duties established therein, that statute. So I'm asking for council to appoint him to the village clerk position and assign those duties, and he will then take office.
Okay. So I need a motion to appoint Austin Yao as the village clerk and assign duties pursuant to NCGS 160A dash 171.
So moved.
Further discussions? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Welcome, Austin.
Welcome.
Does he have to be sworn in?
Yeah.
That's next.
That's next. I'm gonna do it, Joe.
I know, I'm so excited for you, Kim.
All right.
I put a mayor cap on.
I did. I did. I put my little mayor cap on. Okay. So do we have to stand up and do this?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, let's stand up and do this. All right. So, Austin.
And again, I'm great, I am great.
I'll go, I'll go a little, I'll go a little worse. Okay. Uh, raise your right hand, left hand on the bible. Right, that's right, right?
Yes.
Carry your right hand. Okay. So oath of office, I, Austin Yao.
I, Austin Yao.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm that I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws of North Carolina.
And laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As village clerk.
As village clerk.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I shake your hand. We'll do a.
Questions, Austin. And do you need to tell him what his hazing assignment is?
Here, I got you guys.
See, Kim, the dress was perfect.
I was perfect. I didn't even know I was gonna have to. I didn't even know I was gonna have to take that today.
I have to, I have to say, the oaths are tricky. I now know why people get stumped on, like, oh, God, don't say something.
That's why I like to break it up, so.
Not so easy, is it?
Not so easy. All right, very good. Congratulations. All right, so next up, number three. Consideration of appointment of applicant to planning board for term expiring 3/1/21. Um, so we've got an applicant for the open planning board position.
Kent Renner.
Yep, and I think a number of us have talked to him. So somebody wants to make a motion to, um.
I will say that since he is filling Christopher Smith's seat, that term will expire in 2021. So he'll be reappointed next year.
So I need a, um, motion to appoint Kent Renner to the planning board, uh, for the term that expires on 3/1/2021.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Kent, congratulations. If we can let him know and let John Jones know that he has another member of the planning board, that would be great. And then we also had an application come in that I added to the agenda for planning board or board of adjustments for Prag Patel. Um, so I think board of adjustments would be good as we have an open spot, we need that filled. So if we can get a motion to appoint Prag Patel to the board of adjustments for the term expiring, a three-year term.
You have two options. Uh, by statute, you can appoint for a full three, three-year term. Or if you don't want the entire board to expire at the same time, you can point to a two-year term.
Okay, so we'll do a three-year term.
Okay.
Three-year term.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Congratulations, Prag. If we can let him know that he is now on our board of adjustments.
I will send him a letter.
Fantastic. All right, next up is discussion of pull more phase two update. Derek.
He's not here. Just wanted to let y'all know that we've had, uh, began construction. It should resume this week and it should take about three weeks to complete. So we will have another update at another meeting. So y'all can see photos and just wanna let you know kinda where we were on that.
Okay, very good. So we're just moving, moving right along with that? Fantastic. All right, uh, number five. Discussion of ideas to memorialize community leaders. This is also Derek.
Yeah, Derek's not here, but he put together this nice package of ideas for you all and the PRG board to look at and consider. He is going to present this to PRG board at their next meeting.
Which is Tuesday morning? Do we have that agenda yet?
It's going out today.
Perfect, okay.
So just kinda know why.
All right, so we'll, so we can look at these and then we'll let Pla, uh, PRG come back to us with some, like, their recommendations and then we'll go from there?
Correct.
Okay. Cool. I like these.
Well. I, I, you know, Jamie, do you remember, um, I don't know, they did this for, uh, it was more of a concrete type bench.
Yeah.
Um, I'm concerned about the, the maintenance and wear and tear of something that's wood or something like that, but more of a permanent state, uh, thing. They did it on hole number, I wanna say 15? Five, five, that's right, that's right. And that, that was nice. So we can take a picture of that maybe and, uh, um, put that in the mix of things and, as you just look at it from a maintenance standpoint for it to do. And then within that, you can probably add, uh, memorials down the road or something like that. Or as you made a bench to individuals that would like.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, Joe. If you look at number 10, you've got Bill Early's big stone, um, bench on the golf course as well. And so doing something like that where we can actually add additional plaques may be a good idea. Are you gonna be on the golf course between now and Tuesday? No, you're out of town. I'll go do it. I'll take some pictures and I'll talk to PRG about it, um, on Tuesday and give them that idea and we can come back. Or I'll, I'll do it. Okay. Cuz I like that idea. I like that, of doing like a big permanent, like, maybe a big stone one and then we can add plaques to it. That'd be cool with the park.
Yeah, and I'm with Joe, the wooden one. The maintenance issue and all that. And, and even Derek had the same comment. You can buy benches all day long, but it's, it's that recurring thing.
Well, have Mike take a picture of the one on five. He, he playing golf?
I'll go to five and 10.
And I can't remember the person, I, I.
I know who it is. It's, uh, Nellie's husband, who I can't think of. Yeah, okay. I'll do it cuz I don't know if he's gonna be playing golf. Okay, perfect. Uh, number six. Discussion and consideration of policy 2020 dash 07 dash 01 for FLMA expansion contingent upon attorney review. Christina, this is you and this is what you handed out?
It is. And actually, the attorney has reviewed it. I did revise the draft, what was presented, the agenda to what you had presented here before you.
Okay.
Very, uh, small changes from the attorney review. But basically, this is, um, a requirement from, from FLMA in response to the COVID situation.
Okay.
Where all employees are eligible for, um, the expansion of what this policy outlines.
So, I mean, it's, it's not like it's a thing, we just have to.
Correct. We have, we have to adhere to it.
All right, so we need, I need a motion to accept policy 2020 dash 07 dash 01 for FLMA expansion.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bob?
He said that.
Did he?
Yep.
Sorry, I, yeah, thank you. I did the money.
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear it. Um, all right, great. So motion passes. Uh, number seven. Consideration of Union County Sheriff Agreement Addendum and authorize administrator to execute agreement.
So we've, we've thrown around this agreement, the addendum, for the last several months. There's been several questions that have been asked in relation to, out of jurisdiction calls. I have met with the lieutenant in charge of the contract officers. Uh, we did sit down and look at the call history for this past year. Um, Stephen Eason was our deputy at the time that we looked at these calls. He responded to 754 calls within our corporate limits and less than 106 outside of the corporate limits. And he, they do believe that the number of 106 may be lower than what it is, however, that you can't justify without actually looking at every single individual call. They did advise that, um, since this time of these numbers being taken, they have advised their, um, their command staff for any calls that are initiated outside of the jurisdiction had to have supervisor approval. So Marvin officers cannot be called outside of the jurisdiction unless a supervisor is the one calling for it.
Okay. I'm, I'm good with that.
So at this, this time, um, I'm asking for approval for me to execute the addendum that's attached here that y'all seen last several meetings.
And nothing's changed on it?
Nothing's changed since the last time you saw it, no. And again, the sheriff has not seen this documentation.
So it doesn't mean they haven't agreed to it, but okay.
Correct, yes. He may not agree to it, but I will at least initiate it with him and see where it goes.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve the Union County Sheriff Agreement Addendum and authorize the administrator to execute the agreement.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next up is discussion of extraterrestrial jurisdiction plan. Just kidding, extraterritorial. I was just seeing if anybody was listening to me. Sorry, go ahead.
Davey or Will Robinson, Davey?
Sorry.
I don't think this is funny. I, I was visited last night.
Okay, well, this, this came about, uh, a couple of weeks or so ago, maybe two weeks. And Christina, I just reviewed the most recent email from Rick Becker. Um, they've included me on this, but I haven't really responded yet cuz I wanted to hear from you and make sure we're all on board with this. We all understand, or maybe, well, hey, you can do a quick synopsis of extraterritorial jurisdiction plan.
You can say extraterritorial.
If you would.
Um, yeah, sure. So, um, an extraterritorial jurisdiction is like an area outside of our limits where we exercise some planning authority, but they're not in Marvin. They don't pay taxes, they don't get most of the services. They can sit on the planning board and the board of adjustments and, uh, have some input in our planning processes. And so what happened was we, uh, we, we did talk about this, if you recall. We submitted an application, uh, independently to have an ETJ in some of the areas that the, the county planner told us that the, the commissioners would be approvable to. Um, and then what happened was they, they delayed it to December, January perhaps, uh, because they wanted to complete, uh, their comprehensive plan before seeing the ETJ. Um, so in that time, um, it's come up that, uh, well, we were thinking of in the, in the early stages, applying for a joint ETJ, um, to cover some of the areas that are not completely encapsulated in Marvin, but are encapsulated between two municipalities. Like, there's properties between Marvin and Waxaw and there's some properties between Marvin and Weddington. And perhaps if we were to have some sort of joint ETJ with us, Waxaw, Weddington, Wesley Chapel and Mineral Springs, um, we could cover some of the areas that are in between our municipalities. But we ended up not doing that, um, because, uh, the commissioners at the time, they wanted to see the application, so we just sent them independently. Now that they've delayed it to December, um, this is back on the table, the joint ETJ.
Right.
Did, did I not write this up like two years ago? That it would be a great idea and everybody poo-pooed me?
Um, so at the time, and, and I'm just, I'm just telling you what I heard. The commissioners were completely against any ETJ because they didn't want us encroaching into the county. But since then, all the municipalities got together. You know, we remember, we submitted a resolution, a joint resolution sometime mid last year. And they said, okay, fine. The areas that are within the donut holes, like, completely surrounded by your municipality could be considered for an ETJ because they're not, you know, they're kinda secluded from the county.
So my question is, isn't this what I brought up two years ago that you guys all poo-pooed? Yes?
I don't know.
Yes, yes, yes.
I need to go.
Yes. Everybody else poo-pooed me.
I wasn't here, I'm guilty.
All that old council poo-pooed me.
Anyway, just, just to, just so we know that this is all.
I'm good with this, by the way. I'm good signing this and getting on board with the municipalities.
What would the ETJ encompass? Is it just, I don't know, the things or is it?
Hold on. This is not necessarily for an ETJ. What we're trying to just establish is what they are gonna maybe call, and they're not sure yet, a Western Union County Alliance. And the whole goal of this is to, uh, assign two representatives from each municipality to attend these meetings and actually, um, the, the thought being there is power in numbers. So if you have all these municipalities basically going to Union County commissioners and you have a better voice of getting, they were concerned that we were doing something separate because we were both on the agenda with Waxaw. I told them that was not the case, we were in there separately. But I think if we were to assign, and this is what my goal would be is if you guys are all on board with this, it's the members of our council, any one of us, and it would be a part of this and get on the emails and we help draft the letter. It goes to the county commissioners and then we actually get to do. They have an upcoming meeting. Christina, I think I just sent you the last email. It's, I think their meeting is next week. Um, that they're gonna be discussing some things, it appears in them. But I just got the email at nine o'clock, so I didn't really have a chance to look at it. It was from Rick Becker. But my goal would be, let's see if we, you guys agree with a joint as a Western. They have something similar in North MECC, uh, which is Huntersville, Cornelius and Davidson. They call it the, uh, North MECC Alliance. Uh, we would potentially call this the Western Union County Alliance.
Okay, I'm, again, I'm good with it. I, I mean, I think we need to continue with our ETJ with the county, but I like working with the other municipalities, especially because if we're starting to butt up against each other, then we're at least having some say in what's happening up against our borders. So I'm good, I'm, I'm good signing this.
Maybe the question is then, if we're gonna do this alliance, does this alliance allow us to individually work with the commissioners too? Is that what we're sent here, I'm hearing?
I would say yes.
I would too.
It, it, it should be mutually exclusive of each other.
Yeah, I agree. Cuz we're, cuz we're trying to do an ETJ with the county because we have property over here that doesn't abut any of these people. It's just with the county. But then we also, I'm great working in, you know, with a bigger group cuz I do think that there is, you've got more say with numbers.
So, so two things I would say, I don't know if we need a motion for this to approve some sort of, uh, a, a recruitment to move forward to be a part of this, uh, group that they're trying to get and then also assigning two individuals to be representative.
Yeah.
I think you have to, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so what, what do we get out of this? What is, what, what can we do with this property?
We'll have, we'll have say in what the zoning is. Like, if, like, if, if, say, somebody, like, where the, where the pool and the storage unit went in, we would've had some say in that because it was in, within, what, a mile from it?
Um, yeah.
With, with the county.
How much say? I mean, is it like, do we just get to make a recommendation?
No, I mean, I think they have, they have to follow our ordinance.
Right, and ETJ means that we, we are the ones regulating the development with our zoning ordinance. Right, and ETJ means that we, we are the ones regulating the development with our zoning ordinance.
So we would, so that storage unit, that pool wouldn't have gone in right there?
So we have zoning power, but we have no tax base.
Right.
Correct.
So, but that also means we don't extend our services to them.
Right.
Like, all, all an ETJ pretty much allows is the ability to enforce our zoning regulations on their development, and then we leave it at that.
I, I always take the flip side and say, as opposed to not joining it and not having a hearing, and not even being able to hear what they are, what they are considering. So I'm, I'm all for it.
Yeah, I have to.
Yeah.
Well, can I ask a question?
No.
For the ETJ, I think I refer to, to Christina on this one.
No, Bob, you can't.
No.
No questions.
Okay, there you go. No questions. Um, just though my explanation, the ETJ, for example, where the woodyards in Marvin is on the north side of that entrance to that property, uh, then, you know, being on the planning board, you know, sitting there as layers on it, we've talked about that area there that could be developed under the ETJ. This would allow us to, you know, have a say, correct?
Right, right.
We would say, you know, be able to represent the residents and, and tell them, you know, okay, they, they have issues, or we would actually be able to put the guardrails on whatever they're planning on doing in that particular area, correct?
Right, exactly. We would, we would be required to allow them at least what is in our current business zone regulation because they're currently zoned business in the county. But our business regulation is a lot stricter thing in the county. So they would have to come to us and, you know, say, hey, this is where our building is compliant, and then we would say yes or no.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you for that.
And, and, but, but that's the ETJ with the county. This is what, what this letter is, what Joe wants, is if we're willing to work with the other municipalities and kind of being like a consortium of voices.
Right, right. So, right, it would be similar in the sense that we would, I guess, split the regulation power between whatever municipality is on the other side of that, that hole.
Yeah.
But if you, I mean, if you look, so the question, I finally pulled up the map. If, the, the yellow and blue areas are what we were looking at for, uh, yellow is a commercial ETJ and blue is residential ETJ. Uh, but the, uh, the joint ETJ would allow us to, um, to have some regulation on all of these properties that are in between us and Waxaw, and then these properties, um,
Wesley Chapel.
Yeah, between us and Wesley Chapel, there is some, there are some properties.
And Weddington.
Um, here, this is between us and Wesley Chapel. And then the properties basically, uh, north of Newtown Road at Providence are all between us and Weddington.
Okay, so we need a motion to join, I guess, Weddington, Wesley Chapel, Mineral Springs, and whoever else wants to join, maybe, I don't have, it says Waxaw.
Only Waxaw's included in it, I'm not sure.
They're asking, so anybody else that wants to join, so we're trying to, so we need a motion to join this Western municipalities to work with a potential ETJ amongst ourselves.
And only if it is officially formed, because I think they're still working out the kinks before they send out a letter and how they get this group. They gotta take minutes and all that kind of stuff.
With that part, when it's officially formed.
What, okay, so.
I need, I need a motion to join the Western municipalities, Weddington, Wesley Chapel, and Mineral Springs for their proposed ETJ once it is official.
So moved.
Further discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, now, we need two representatives. Who wants to do it? Andy, cause he's not on anything yet. I vote for Andy. Who else wants to do it?
Get involved.
I know, right?
I'll, I'll volunteer since I know a lot of the players.
Perfect, so Joe and Andy, make a motion for Joe and Andy to join that.
So moved.
All's in favor?
So moved.
Aye.
So moved.
I didn't even give a further discussion.
Aye.
Hey.
Wait, wait, let me do a further discussion.
No, no, the motion's already passed. We're moving on. All right, number, okay, 12 o'clock.
Can we do, can we do these nine and 10? Just, just do them?
Yeah, that's a quick one.
Okay.
Send it out in our letter.
I need a motion to call for a public hearing to be held on August 11th, 2020 at 6:30 for the conditional use permit, application 20-12459. Pool in a rear yard that abuts a side yard as required per 151.054E3.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. I need a motion to, number 10, I need a motion to call for a public hearing to be held on August 11th, 2020 at 6:30 PM for a conditional use permit, application number 20-12469. Pool in a rear yard that abuts a side yard as required per 151.054E3.
So moved.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. All right, so I need a motion for a quick recess to grab food, then we're gonna keep working.
Five minutes?
Sure.
Can we?
Are you shutting the conference after Pennsylvania?
I sure am. Hold on, I need, I.
Can we make that motion 10 minutes so we can get the public hearing stuff in a minute?
Yes, 10 minutes.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 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 okay. I'll send for quarter.
How do you wanna?
We're continuing.
Okay, all right, so I need a motion to come back into open session?
So moved.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes. So we're in open session. So now we're gonna go to number 11, discussion of streetlight plan and policy. Rowbit, this is you.
So in your packet, I have a draft, uh, streetlight plan and policy. Well, it's actually just a policy, but it's based off another town. Um, and I, I kind of made some revisions to better fit us. Um, the idea behind this policy is that we would, we would have a cooperation with Union Power, but do the funding for, uh, streetlights, starting from thoroughfare intersections, which, you know, thoroughfares are Marvin Road, Newtown Road, Waxaw, Marvin Road, and then go into residential intersections that don't have streetlights, and then do thoroughfare quarters. That was my anticipation of the best way to prioritize those streetlights. Um, and then it just also kind of highlights some of the other things that are needed when you start getting into that business, which are, you need to maintain those, uh, lights. You need to get, have residents, uh, request, uh, or submit issues, reports. Uh, and then we have to do tree, uh, tree trimming if the streetlights are built in a place up near a tree, um, et cetera. So, um, if you've got a chance to read that report, um, it's just a draft. And I'd have to also work with our engineer to determine the correct standards, um, for the lights. I did not know what those were, but Mike Wood, I'm sure. And that's about it. These are all the things that I think, uh, based on what I did on several other town research, uh, that all, all that go into a streetlight policy.
So when, so when we're talking about a streetlight policy, we're talking about like, where we've approved the lights down here that still haven't been installed?
Right, and I, yeah, they're, they're struggling with NCDOT on encroachments. But once we figure out how that gets done, we could probably do it a lot faster, cause we know all the steps.
Okay.
Cause every time I talk to them, they say they, they hit a new snag. And it's, it's a little, uh, it's a little disheartening, but once we know all those things, we will take care of them from the beginning.
And incorporate them into our policy.
Right.
Okay, cause I mean, this is ridiculous. It's been, what, a year since we've approved that? And have, had the funding set aside to do it and?
Right, they still don't have the encroachments with DOT. I think they're making progress.
It's in the air. What do they need it for from DOT? DOT is on the street.
But still on their property.
It's in there, right away. The polls are in there right of way, which is a.
I mean, come on.
But they did make progress with, uh, lowering the spectrum and windstream cables, so that is.
Is this a design delay, or is it, you just feel like it's a legitimate delay?
Um, I, I think NCDOT has just been really slow. That could be part of it because of COVID.
We approved this a year ago. COVID is out.
Right, but they started getting the, they started, they started, um, going after those encroachment agreements in like March, or April. So that's when they found out they needed them.
Listen, I, I mean, I know I ask you every time that we go through the action item list, like where are we? And I know they are probably sick and tired of hearing from you. Do you think if you continue to irritate them, then they're just gonna like drag their feet more? Or do you think like, you continuously calling may speed it up so you stop calling?
Well, I, I mean, the last time I called them was like a week or two ago. And that's how I know that they made a little bit of progress on those, um, windstream and spectrum cables. Uh, they got them to lower them. So yeah, I will, I will continue to fester them. Um, and I guess that may be a, may be a growth, growing experience for us to realize, maybe we don't wanna work with Union Power. Maybe we wanna actually get in the business of installing the lights ourselves, and so we have some more accountability, um, for, you know.
So now we got a light department. We got a street department that we weren't prepared for. Now we're gonna have a light department.
We need a bigger building.
I, I don't like the idea of thoroughfare lighting. It takes away from Marvin's rural feel. I don't have a problem with certain areas like traffic circles and, and major intersections, but thoroughfare lighting, I'm.
You mean like, kind of how it is down Marvin Road?
Yeah.
In, in Mecklenburg County. It is lit up like a Christmas tree.
Yeah, don't like it, don't want it, and I know most of my neighbors don't either. That's, that's why we live here, so we don't have.
All that ambient lighting, yeah.
And, and quite frankly, the light pollution. I mean, if you look at the skyline now, in any direction, it never gets dark because of light pollution. And that's, it's a growing problem that, um, you know, on the East Coast, it's just, there is so much light pollution at night now.
Yeah, I mean, I'm good with the, I, I feel like our top priorities should be major intersections, just for safety reasons. And then, you know, the other stuff, I'm with you, and we're still a rural community. We're not in the middle of Charlotte, um.
I also think that the more yellow the light in those areas, the better, and not such white, hot light.
That is something also that we can have control over if we install the lights directly instead of Union Power.
Are you talking about just having a contractor actually physically going out there and doing it for us?
Right.
And then just tapping into their power source?
Right.
So let's look at that two ways. Um, cost, cost, and, cost and control. So from, if you look at it from a cost and control standpoint, would it, should we not consider taking that over and doing it ourselves?
Um, we could. I haven't looked at the cost of doing it ourselves versus the cost of Union Power. We only have one point of, you know, data.
Union Power's charging us to do it.
Oh, yeah, and then, and then we have to pay a power bill on it.
Right, I know it's not, we're not, I know it's not free. I just don't know how it is compared to if we do it ourselves.
Let's just put it this way.
So are you saying throw up a poll and do it ourselves?
So not, we don't have to throw up.
We just contracted that.
So Union Power is going to, is gonna contract it to Union Electric, which is a separate company that does electrical work.
Why are we, yeah, why are we?
So they're gonna be the little man on this deal, and if we could go straight to Union Electric and have them do it.
See, I don't understand all that stuff. So can we do that? Can you look into that?
Uh, yeah, I can look into that.
Or pipe, or any other major, uh, you know, electrical, you know, line corporation. They're gonna, they're gonna do the physical, Union Power isn't gonna do the lights. They're gonna contract it to somebody.
But we're allowed to tap into them? Could we pay a bill?
We, well, so we'll have to have a, a contract with them for the power source, but as far as actually physically putting it in, they're gonna contract it out anyway. So why not us contract it out? And, you know, and it's no different than putting it, a, a power source into your house. You still have to tap into them. They have to give you the source, and then you go from there and have your private contractor do the rest of the work, so.
Why don't we do that since Union Power is diddle, diddle, diddling around?
Yeah.
I mean, if they're that slow, let's find out like what our other options are. I didn't even know that was an option. I don't understand all that. There are some things I get. This was.
No, I just think we take the little man out.
Yeah.
And just do it ourselves.
Well, especially if they're diddle, diddle, diddling around.
Right.
What are they doing?
I was gonna say something else, but it was inappropriate. Okay, so, I think this looks good, but keep working on it and hurt them.
Yeah, I, I, this is a draft, and I just wanted to get your feedback.
I did, I, I liked it so far. There's nothing that I would take out.
I think they got our affairs as you, if you, if that's an official thing that you want me to take out.
Yeah, I, I'm.
I'm with Andy on that, yeah.
Sure.
And plus, we don't need the expense. I mean, that's a. You started looking at thoroughfares, and you're just talking about major expense, and it's a recurring expense. Cause you gotta pay for power to run all that.
Right.
And maintenance, and I, you know, it's just, that's huge, and I don't think it's needed, or I don't even think the community really wants it.
Well, and then if it's in our policy, then people are gonna come to us and be like, you said you were gonna do thoroughfares.
Right, whereas intersections is just two poles.
Uh huh.
Handful of intersections.
Yeah.
Yeah, I bet.
Well, I'm good.
We'll get it on the next work session. We'll get this time to get some more research done.
Awesome.
Looking into the streetlights?
Okay. All right, next, uh, Bob, Jay, you guys good? Thumbs up. I don't need a word, just a thumbs up. Thumbs up, okay, great. Sorry, I'm just teasing you guys.
Joe's as good as being.
He's like, okay. Got it. Oh, he's gonna text me something nasty now. Um, okay, number 12, discussion of annexation. Okay.
Call it in the act, Joe.
Rowbit, you're up.
So, uh, next in your agenda, you'll see, uh, that I, one, I've made the revisions requested uh, in the flyer. And, uh, the next page after that, I've added the neighborhoods that you would consider in phase one, um, as far as their tax, uh, impact that they would add. And there are two neighborhoods that, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, brought up, Sedgefield and Providence Downs. And I'm gonna say, in that tax impact, I made sure to not include the, the houses that are already in Marvin in the, uh, number that, uh, that's in the table of how much we would, uh, gain if we annexed, uh, those neighborhoods. Um, so this is, this is kind of given an idea that we kind of, we have almost the ability to like double our tax base by just the phase one neighborhoods, um, in our annexation area. And, uh, and so, um, Christina, um, has wanted to go, uh, if the next step would be to, uh, like hire a graphic designer to make this really pretty, and, uh, to start disseminating it to maybe just the HOAs, uh, the HOA presidents at first, right?
I lo, I mean, I love this. This is awesome. Um, wait, did you have anything else?
That's it.
Before I start talking about?
No, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I, I lo, I love the letter, but I would rearrange it.
Okay.
Like, what's our, what's our? But like, no, I mean, like, what's our number one thing that we wanna tout? Zoning? Nobody care. I mean, really, like, uh, I did not move to Marvin because of the zoning. I moved to Marvin probably for public safety. So like, I would do like public safety first, low taxes second, community third, representation fourth, village center district fifth.
I have it. I got it. I'm, I'm going. I got it. Keep going.
Traffic mitigation six, village center district five, and then zoning seven. And I would put them in that order, or somewhere around there, but I would just move it. I mean, I, I love the information that's in there, but if I sit here and I look at it, and I'm like, zoning, zoning, traffic mitigation.
That's fair enough. As a zoning administrator, that's the first.
No, I know, I know, but I'm just saying, but like, public safety, I feel like that's, you know, top priority from surveys that we've gotten. So like, what's like number one? And maybe, you know, village center district maybe four instead of representation, maybe that'd be five. But somewhere like that, and I just think that if you kind of re, reorganize the topics, it would be, that would be better.
Looking to that.
Yeah? So the content's good?
Uh huh. All right, good.
So our next steps are gonna be to hire a graphic designer to kind of put some of this stuff together, a nice pretty package, put a bow on it, and we will have that.
You really gonna do a real bow? That'd be pretty.
And then, y'all can kind of see the whole package, and then we can get it out. We can lay out a, a, a plan, an implementation plan for the fall.
I like it. I mean, I think if we're, if we are going to invite people to come into Marvin, I want it a nice glossy packet of information, that they have got something to propose to their citizens, like, you know, not that I think that we were gonna do this, but like sending this out and, and like as a letter, that's not gonna get it done. Like, we need to present like why, like, make them feel like special. We want you.
Why we want you.
Right.
Not, not just for your money, but for, we want you as, as people.
And you want us to.
Right.
Right.
And that's more, more of what it is. They want us, they want our services, our, you know, what we can give to them.
So I was riding around the other day just looking at roads and stuff that I had never been down, and I saw, and it went by the chimneys and that kind of stuff. And we, we talk to these folks sometimes, once every two years. And in, in light of doing this, is there, is there a way to offer up? And I'm, I know I'm willing to do it. Is there a way to offer this up where they follow up and say, we would, we would welcome an opportunity to come speak to your, to your HOA?
Mm-hmm.
That was gonna be the plan, is once we get it in a nice pretty package, we were gonna try to schedule a meeting at one of their HOAs and kind of sell it to them.
Cause I, I too, again, it goes just back to transparency and cutting all this stuff, all this frivolous stuff out, that, you know, the chimneys and some of these other ones, I, you know, anytime y'all want councilmembers to come in and have questions, have a Q and A, do it. Let us know. That's what we're here for. But it's up to the larger population to bring in the, you know, two people to do it. But I, I would say in a, in a, in a overall communication to, and this is just me throwing it out, an overall communication to, especially the larger HOAs, but all HOAs, anytime that you would, you feel the need to have a Q and A with, with your council, please, please let us know. I'd be, I mean, it's a, even if we did three a month in an evening, or like Bob and I did with, um, the chimneys, we go over and we spin, and we, I don't mind doing that. But that cuts all this other, I mean, just that, the, the letter that we got in the mail the other day, that was huge to get that.
What letter did we get in the mail?
The flyer.
What flyer?
The newsletter.
What newsletter?
Didn't you get it?
The newsletter.
Nope.
Here.
Nope, I did not get it. I've never gotten it.
It is right there.
Nope, I don't get it.
Marvin Village.
Was on the residence list first.
God, I hope so.
So, again, I, I, again, I'm speaking for me. I don't mind one bit. Give me something to do, but I don't mind one bit going out to Ladera and saying, hey, you got this, what questions do you have? But you coordinated, not me, but you just tell me when to be there. I'm all, I'm, I'm open for it. Especially doing the annex piece, but I don't wanna lose sight of the people that we already have, whether it's, whether it's, you know, the chimneys or any of the neighborhoods that are, that are in, outside of, outside of, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be that councilman that goes, I see you every, I see you every four years. Don't bother in between there. That's just me.
I didn't get this. Can I, will we find out why I didn't get this?
We have answers in the other room too, so I need to work to know.
I know, but I, I, but I need to have it in my.
Your chairman's not getting her emails or her postage.
No, I found my email. I found my email. It's in my spam box, but I don't have a spam mailbox.
Spam mailbox.
We're, we're gonna loop you up on GIS real fast, cause we, we merge all that stuff from tax records.
Well, that's lovely. Good job, everybody. Glad that went out, even though I didn't get it.
That?
Is it cause, is it cause my taxes are escrowed? Cause that's what, uh, Ron Salameo told me.
A lot of work when.
Oh, no, he asked me.
At that address.
I sure am.
Which is GIS. Should've been on the list.
This one, this one, this one flyer.
Was the same list, so.
Will reduce our work.
Somebody else's mailbox. I'm sorry.
This one flyer will reduce our work 20%. And this goes out how often?
Right now, twice a year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, as I'll talk about in a few minutes, I'm doing a weekly newsletter sort of thing through MailChimp. Not as fancy, smancy as that, but that'll be on.
We'll talk about that in a second.
Yeah.
Well, my, my offer on the table is still, and it's for discussion, but.
I mean, I'd send out an email to the, or, we'll talk about, I got an idea. We'll talk about that in a minute. I got an idea.
When we get the, the presentation prepared with the, the graphic artist, um, we'll actually outline an implementation plan with some, send the dates, and y'all can have some input into that as to.
Pardon?
What we're looking at.
Before we move on from this topic, though, there's a pretty big issue that I want to get you guys talking about, which is that most of these neighbors have, have gates. And, uh.
Even better.
We can't get palable money for neighborhoods that have gates.
That's fine. They have to take care of their own roads. I'm fine with that.
I just keep going back to one word, transparency. As long as you present it to them, you're transparent about it.
But if they want their streets maintained, then they have to.
They're private.
But they knew that, they knew that going into it, so that's not, that's not something worth throwing at them and going, oh my God, I didn't know that.
Nope.
But no, but you have like the chimneys over here that's not a gated community, and that's a benefit to them to be in the village and have their streets maintained for them, because there's, they've got state maintained roads, which will never get touched, ever. They can't even do the main thoroughfares, much less the subdivisions.
Does Rose Cliff have?
And the traffic on that, on those roads is 10 times more than any other subdivision because of school. It's a huge consideration for them.
Yeah, it would be huge for chimneys.
Yeah, it would be a.
I'm not, I'm not necessarily pulling in neighborhoods for Palvel funds, especially if they have gates, because we're, they're private roads, they maintain them.
Well, NC DOT maintains roads in gated communities. Like, there, there's, I think they're just the roads.
No, they don't.
They don't?
No. They had, you had, they had to take them over, cause when, when we were looking to put gates in, in Edesbrook, we had, we have to take them over. Providence Downs had to take them over. Providence Downs South owns their roads.
Yeah, what is the deal with Providence Downs now that they're gated?
They took over their roads.
They took over even our roads? Cause we have.
And we, because we gave them permission to do so.
Okay.
We, they had to come to us for their three streets in Marvin, and then Union County for the rest.
Okay.
That's a conversation we'll have with those individual homeowners associations.
Yep. All right, anything else, Rohit?
Um, that's all I have. That was a good, uh, recommendation. Thanks.
All right, uh, next up, discussion of contribution of 5,000 to 10,000 to Jean Stowe's documentary, "Inherit the Land." I know this was on our last, I know this is not me, but, I know it's Rohit, but this was on our last, on our regular meeting, and we pushed it to this. We still don't have a outside funding policy, so I still don't know that we can have a conversation about this.
And we, um, we're still in the process of creating that. Um, I think we've got it to the very end of it. We didn't budget any money this year for outside funding, so, you know, it's not been a huge priority for us to, to push that through right now with everything else that's going on. But, you know, if y'all are willing to, I guess, move some money out of contingency, that's really council's decision, but we did, did not budget for outside funding at all this year.
I mean, you know, Monroe's giving them $5,000 so that they can have like their, you know, increased tourism. Well, we don't want people necessarily touring Marvin, so, I, I mean, not to say that I don't want to help him out, and because I do think it's an important message, but, I don't know.
I mean, I think that the, it would help our downtown district to promote it as part of history and to funnel it to here. I mean, it wouldn't necessarily be touring Marvin, but it would, would draw some people to this area for interest.
So you think we already have enough people driving through there every day?
I don't know, well, yeah. Through traffic is one thing, it's destination traffic, it's another, and that's, you know, you wanna, you wanna have some destination traffic.
I think when we get the village hall in the, in the corner done, I think we'll have destination traffic. But I think there's, there's two, I think one is there's enough time involved, two, we look at, we put a policy in place for outside funding, and then we work, work from that policy, but that gives us another year to look at what, what do we designate, what do we budget for outside policy? And, and by this time next year, we've got, we're, we're already moving down there. We know what we can, maybe that we have a monument marker, our marker, we're looking for markers to go up about this group, that's placed down.
Yeah.
And there's money budgeted for that as well.
Yeah, I just, he's asking money to help with this documentary, and I just, we don't have a policy to do it. I don't feel, I don't feel comfortable doing it until we have that policy in place, but I'm one.
Rohit, did, Rohit, did you ever get a chance to find out about a 501(c)(3) regarding his organization that's looking for funding? Cause I know he asked in the letter to reach out, talk to everybody, and sometimes incentives are through. 501(c)(3). Yeah, he didn't, sorry.
That's for personal contributions.
Right.
We'll find out, and then if y'all decide y'all want to do it personally, you can.
I mean, he does have an Indiegogo, so if, uh, it's a crowd, sort of crowdfunding, uh, platform, so, I mean, anyone's free to donate personally. But on that note, if, if so, the money's not there to donate from Marvin, the next, uh, ask from him was if we could, um, advertise that documentary and that campaign, cause that's like a newsletter item.
Sure, I'm fine doing that.
Absolutely fine with that.
Through our, our advertising channels, that would be.
I'm good with that, and again, it's not.
To also promote the Indiegogo, please.
Yeah, yes, I'm fine doing that. And again, it's not that I don't want to, it's not that I don't want to do something, but I feel like if we start doing one offs and without policies in place, we're gonna get ourselves in trouble.
Yeah, I agree. I, I just, doing it at the right chance.
Right.
So.
So can, can Rohit, clear clarity on the what platforms y'all wish to send out that message?
Resident, MailChimp, resident list, Nextdoor, Facebook.
All our channels.
All our, all of them.
Yeah, all our channels.
And it's basically to ask for financial contributions to.
Yeah. I give them a little blurb.
It's just a blurb, but we're not promoting them to go to it. It's just, we're just stating that there's ways to, if you choose to.
Amassing information, we're not. Yeah, so pretty much you.
What, Bob?
The fact that we have this newsletter now, and, you know, the great job we're doing communicating, you know, we, we could tell them about the book. I'm sure, you know, Jean Stowe would love us to, to ex- explain, here's a book, you know, the history of Marvin, that sort of thing. I'm still valuable to be the pastor of the church.
I told him. I told him. He appreciates that.
I think we gotta be careful to your point about what we donate, Kim, uh, what we can as far as policy is what we're putting out there as far as content for individuals, and, you know, obviously, um, there's a great story here, it's a story about us, but, but we, we don't currently have, I don't think, any policy on, other than us agreeing as a group of council members of what we're gonna put on as content. Um, you know, we just gotta be careful that, you know, we're not overstepping our, our, our boundaries as a municipality promoting something. But again, it's more informational. I look at it as, uh, facts about Marvin, hey, this is about to happen. We presented in the sense that this is, you know, we're not, you know, basically asking them to go do this, but it's just more informational. It's where we go.
Would you be more comfortable if I ran the wording by Chaplin before, uh, sending it out?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Just to make sure we're not doing anything illegal by accident.
Yep. I think that's always a good thing.
Yeah, before we send it out, just run it back.
Okay, good. Everybody good? All right, perfect. Next up, discussion of update to the August communications plan. Austin, this is you.
Okay.
I wanted to kind of open this up real fast, if you don't mind, Austin.
Well.
Y'all, we have discussed a communications policy last couple of meetings, and we have tentatively got something together, but I don't really know if we need to have a policy. I think what we're doing right now is, is working out great. I don't know if the, the consensus of the board that we just keep doing what we're doing and not worry about the policy.
I think having a policy, at some point, we will not be on this board, and if we have a policy, then other people will have to follow it.
Okay.
We're changing policy.
We will continue with it.
That too.
But, I, I, to you, to your point, I don't want to get buried in it, where it's a, where it's a cumbersome thing, I'm like, oh my God, why, why did we even talk about it? But just, just make it high-end, 30,000, no less than 20,000, and let's put it in place, because to Kim's point, totally agree.
We, um.
At some point, you're gonna, you're gonna have a board that says, I don't want to be transparent. I'm ready.
I don't want to say anything. I don't want to put any information out there.
But if we set the precedent now, and we put the little things in place, it will, they'll have to abide by it.
We, uh, we've had so much going on, it's kind of been low priority, so we'll get to it at some point. We'll just keep adding it to the list.
Yeah, that's fine. And that's fine, as long as we're moving forward with it, and we're, and we're moving forward with our physical communications that we're putting out. I think that's fine if we don't have a policy in place yet, but I do think that we need one. Okay.
Go ahead, sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
Christine was like, awesome, another policy.
Sorry. It's only gonna help staff in the long run, I promise.
So we are still posting on social media, as we've been doing multiple blurbs a week, been trying to find a good pattern for that. I've transitioned our MailChimp communications to a weekly newsletter, which I've given you a mock-up of. One of these went out last week. The next one's gonna go out tomorrow. It's even, it looks even, uh, neater and more fine-tuned. It's, I think it's a good way to reach out without inundating residents with 15 emails a week on things. We.
It's really y'all's decision. Do you like the newsletter, or would you write?
I love the information that is in the newsletter, but I want to inundate them with information. I want them looking at every email. I want them knowing that this is coming from the Village of Marvin. I want them to have stuff every other day from us.
I will say this, uh, I've been in communication with Jared, who's our consultant with Granite Sky, the website. He has warned us against sending too many emails, because he's worked with past, he's worked with other municipalities where it's just not an effective way to get communication out. People start unsubscribing from your residence list. We.
Let me ask one question, Austin.
You bug them too much.
There, isn't there mechanisms in MailChimp where you can assess, like, how many people it's reaching and like?
Yes, um, I had to, I'll have to come up and see if I can make a report for that, but we did. I, I'd have to, I'm guessing, but we did, we did lose probably a dozen subscribers in the past, in the past month, but we gained a few new residents as well.
Well, I'm just wondering if we can look at the trends that we've had over the last month since we've been in, see how many are being opened, how many are looking at it, how many are not.
There's not gonna be too much data, because we really only rammed it for this month, rammed it for one month. There's not gonna be a lot of data on that, but I, I can look into that. Other news about communications, I have got us a verified page on Nextdoor, so we're, we're a trusted source on that.
That's great.
We've condensed our Facebook down, uh, I have, um, I'm in the process of archiving old Facebook pages, cause apparently the village has had at least two, if not three. So we're on one single public page now. I have been re, I have been sharing posts to redirect people to follow the new page, and the old page will be archived.
Good.
We, one statistic that I saw the past week, looking on, looking through the Facebook, looking through the Facebook, uh, statistics is our outreach has reached 1,000% higher.
Good.
Because, uh, well, we're, since we're using a public page, more posts are reaching more people.
Good.
Additionally, um, like I said, we're archiving the pages according to the record retention schedule. And one quick update on the website and the .gov, uh, the website committee didn't meet for its first meeting. Jared led, led a good discussion about what needs to change, what we want to improve. We're meeting next week. Uh, we, we have a meeting scheduled for the first Thursday of every month at 3:00 PM. We're looking at probably an October launch right now.
Great.
We, based on what Jared has said, that, uh, next week, he's gonna come to us with a, with a website schematic that the committee will review and give feedback on. His, his team will go back, create the website, bring it back to the committee for review, feedback, make changes, come back, come back for a third meeting, probably October 1st, if, uh, if the timeline holds, and that'll be the, the committee's sneak preview of the website before it launches.
That's great. I mean, we need, we need it, cause Bob was trying to show me on the website yesterday, something there, and I couldn't find it, and he kept saying words, and I'm like, I, that doesn't help me. I was like, I have no idea what you're talking about. I mean, I finally found it, but it was not easy to find, so.
As far as the .gov goes.
Yeah.
That has went through, um, we, I'm not sure if it's active yet, but we're, once we launch the new website, we'll be, it'll be ready to go. It's paid for.
So kind of do it all at the same time?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that'll be really good, because then.
We'll switch all publications over to say .gov when the website launches.
Perfect. And then that will be, will they have to resubscribe to the .gov?
I think we're gonna be able to migrate it all, but I can, I can check with Jared on that.
Okay, good. So then that'll really just be official. And then, will all of our email addresses change?
They will, yes. Clarity.
Good. Okay.
Well, I, I, I can, I can say that, um, I'm ecstatic that we're taking, cause you gotta remember, think back to where we were at.
Three months ago.
Three months ago, but think back, six months ago. Think back to October of last year. Where were we at? We had no communication. We had, we had people that were making up communications for us, and now we're to a point where for all intents and purposes, we, we've, we have not seen any kind of communications come out via propaganda.
Not yet.
And, uh, not yet. It, it's gonna happen, but it'll be harder for it to happen as long as this stuff, as long as this stuff comes out.
Correct.
So, great job.
Yep. If I may ask for clarity, we're, the newsletter format, for what you want me to do with emails going forward? You want me to try this format for a little while, see what kind of data I'm seeing through MailChimp analytics? I just want, I just want, I just want direction.
So the proposal right now, from, from your side, is to do this once a week?
That, yeah, mail, emails purely once a week. That way, we're not inundating people, but, but social media is still three blurbs, three or four blurbs a week, depending on what we have. And I have.
Listen, I, I'm, I'm open to, because again, I don't want to inundate people where they start just ignoring it.
Me too.
So let's, let's see where this, let's track this for two to three months. I think, I think that's just a reasonable thing. Let's just track this for two to three months.
Yeah, people read emails weekly, but if people are trying to follow stuff, they're gonna go to social media to follow the, the, the gas.
We've got enough information going out.
And this includes links to our social media pages on, on the newsletter too.
Does, I know this is, this is inappropriate, probably, but where, where are we at with finding out about the, the, the town hall meeting?
Uh, we're gonna talk about that.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Um, I'm trying to think if there's anything else I was gonna cover in this.
Not too much inappropriate, just not the right. I was like, geez, David, where are we going with this?
I'm sorry, I was trying to stay on task.
Yeah. You have, um, a list of communication topics that we currently have for all August?
Yes, does, does anybody have any additional ones?
And you can either discuss this now or when we get to.
No, no, we're gonna discuss it now. This is what we discuss in the work session. What's everybody got for blurbs for the next month?
Joe, you got any blurbs?
I'm just gonna make one comment, um, just in regards to, you know, one of the things I learned in how to become a mayor when I went off to Raleigh, when it involves the media, is timing is everything. And one of the things we don't have on our side is, cause we only meet like this twice a month, but if something were to come up, and we wanted to address through social media, there is still, I don't believe, a process in place that's we've approved, that we could just, you know, or, or maybe I'm mistaken, but do we need a process for that? That something comes up, timing is of the essence, to get something out quickly, and that instead of a straw poll or whatever, I mean, I don't know what the recommendation would be, but.
Like, like what, Joe? Like, uh, like, give me an example.
Well, if, 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 um.
Well, I can do, um, I can do one, um, when COVID-19 popped up the scene.
That's a Christina thing. That's a Christina thing. But Christina, Chris, that's a Christina thing. She can make that decision. She does not need us to tell her. Like, that's why I'm wondering, like, are you talking like natural disasters, weather emergencies, um, this emergency declaration? I feel like that is administrator. She does not need us to put that kind of information out. I feel like if it's council policy decision stuff, then she's gonna need stuff. So that's why I was asking for an example.
We also have authority to do emergency meetings as well.
Right. But that's what I'm saying, but you can put that kind of stuff out.
Well, most.
So, so is that what you're asking, Joe?
Well, I just, I, you know, I, I don't know if I necessarily can, I, I just being in this position for so long and being, feeling like I can't respond in an appropriate way, where I could reach out to each individual council member and say, hey, are you on board with this? Boom, boom, boom. Can we say this?
So.
Christina to say it. I mean, if that could happen, I don't know if there's a specific scenario.
Okay, here's, here's a scenario. The, what happened that went out on Nextdoor a couple of months ago with the map that was incorrect and all the propaganda that went out. That's, that's the kind of situation that we cannot sit and wait until we have another meeting. So, that's a very good question. Christina, how do we handle that? Because I do not want to do a straw poll. I do not want you to send an email and ask how each of us feel, because that's what we got in trouble for, even though it wasn't an illegal meeting, but that's. because that's what we got in trouble for, even though it wasn't an illegal meeting, but that's what we got dinged on. So we need to know how to respond to that, because that kind of situation, we absolutely cannot sit on for the amount of time that we sat on it before.
Situation where we call an emergency meeting, which is in the procedures?
No, this actually happens quite frequently. If you recall, yesterday, perhaps in Markleese, we had an individual that had some questions regarding a potential rezoning or alleged rezoning that was thought to have taken, taken place today. And maybe based some of those decisions off of either misinformation, inaccurate information, or just not being informed enough. And that's a situation where we can come in and cite factual information. We can put out some type of response that's a factual.
So you do not need us to come and say, hey, you guys need to respond. So you don't need me to come and say, Christina, you guys have got to respond to this. This is absolutely crazy.
Well, to be honest with you, when the Nextdoor stuff went out, I didn't even know about it until someone around, I don't remember who it was, but someone told me.
So you do need somebody to call and be like, look into this and address it.
But most people have, most large towns has a, has a spokesperson that comes out and says, but their statement is confined to and boxed into, this is not an official, this is not an official, did not come from the council, the, the, whatever the case may be. Right. It's a, it's a blanket disclaimer, but that can go out, and we can authorize, whether it be, whether it be Joe or, you know, be Christina.
Probably better for Christina.
Have Christina say, you know...
I mean, I don't mean that bad. I didn't mean that bad, Joe. I meant, just because she's in the office. I did not mean it like that. Andy starts giggling, I didn't mean it like that.
I do believe that there should be some kind of communication policy put in place that if, if propaganda goes out, or some, in, in, in...
Misinformation.
Misinformation that goes out, that there is, there can be and should be a response from the Village of Marvin that says, this is, this information, and there's a crafty way to put it, without saying it's incorrect.
Chad, let's...
We can get something prepared, but I would like, I mean, obviously, I'm not gonna know when to respond to every single thing, so if y'all could maybe appoint someone from the board that kind of speaks in terms of when to use that and when not, like, when, when it's to be used.
All good.
To direct me, and then that way y'all can...
There you go. When we hear, when we hear misinformation that goes out, because if it's, if it's in a form of a question, then we, then someone can address it, because that'd be no different than me going to the HOA and ask a question. But if it's in the form of propaganda that goes out and says that I voted on a strip club to go next to the church, then there, absolutely, this, this information is incorrect, invalid, and has not been addressed by the form, by, by a formal council.
So what, what I'll do is I'll get a generic kind of disclaimer statement. We'll look at it at the next meeting, either work session or regular, and then y'all can authorize Mayor Proton to direct me or any other staff member when to put it out. Does that sound like the plan?
Joe, is that what you wanted?
So...
Just, just something in place that, that I think addresses that, to Jamie's point, if it, or other council members, if it needs to be addressed quickly, that it's maybe a little bit controversial, but if something is a mechanism in place that simply is a phone call where I have the majority of council agrees with how we want to address it, and, and you put out a statement that everyone agrees with, that, that we don't have to have a special meeting or wait till something happens to address, you know, just a mechanism in place to, to, to address that.
Okay.
So I just wanted to ask one simple question while we're on this subject. Do we have anybody specifically designated to pay attention to this stuff going on on social media that is...
I'm on Nextdoor all the time, so I've seen it.
I generally look for the middle of the screen.
But I don't see stuff on Facebook.
There should be, there should be something that...
Austin.
If it's posted on our Facebook, I see it.
We, we don't have a designated person that periodically checks it, no. We're all doing different things throughout the day.
Because that's where, because you made, you mentioned that you didn't even know about that, that was sent out on, on Nextdoor. And, and while I get alerts on my phone, I don't see everything that, because there's so much crap.
But I feel like amongst the five of us, we're gonna see it or hear about it.
Well, I just wanna make sure that there's...
Because I have lots of people who tell me stuff that they see.
Somebody talking some of this crap, because there is so much crap that gets thrown around out here.
Well, I think we've done, I think staff and, and council combined have done a tremendous job in squelching that. Because we are totally committed to transparency. And, and I think, I think the constituents now understand that it's a high, extremely high priority for us to make sure that accurate information goes out as opposed to letting people run amok with information.
The more we do on the right side, the less people are gonna believe the propaganda.
I can't, I'm telling you, I can't wait to, I can't wait to this town hall, because I'm gonna tell you, the referendum or whatever, the, the petition that was going on, I guarantee you, seven, 60 to 70% of the people that signed up on that signed up on false information.
Absolutely.
I guarantee it. And I, and I want that to be, I want that, that to be a part of that town hall discussion.
Oh, it will be. Okay, blurbs. Let's go back to blurbs. Who's got blurbs?
Isn't that like a future? Isn't that on the...
It is.
Traditionally, what we're gonna do... Well, traditionally, how we're gonna do it is put the blurbs into...
The, the, the word subheading, but we'll do that next.
I thought blurbs was right here.
We skipped around a little bit.
No, we're talking about communication plan. This, this table.
Oh, this, oh, it did. Okay, sorry.
No, yeah.
Oh. Okay, we'll do blurbs in a little bit then. Everybody get ready. You've got a five-minute reprieve. Okay, next up, coffee with council dates. Okay, so wait, can we go, can we do August real quick? Because I feel like I'm, I'm in August.
I'm gonna pull it up.
I've got Bob and I doing August the 6th.
And I've got...
And that was in the morning?
Yes, 10 to 11. For me, to 9 to 11. For you, it's 10 to 11.
And I'm doing the 25th from 6 to 7, but I don't know who I'm doing it with.
Joe.
That's with me.
Is it with you?
Yeah.
I'd like to change, I make a motion to change that cocktails with council. Continue meeting.
I, I totally agree. I think it's the lax of, I, I, I'm not, I'm being serious.
Yeah.
Do we have, Rohit, you were talking about the sign?
It's been ordered.
It's been ordered, okay, yeah.
Do they know if that's gonna be in by the 6?
Uh, I will text and find out.
Does it include no appointment necessary?
I don't think so, but...
It could slide that on.
Includes residents only.
It includes residents only in the time. We've got two, two different signs.
Yeah, I, I like the idea that you're drawing by Jamie. If there's a, if residents only, you know, it's not really for developers, obviously, but in no form necessary, residents only. It's like, boom, hey, I'm gonna stop in, and I got something to talk to Jamie about, you know?
So should we now call it coffee slash cocktails with council?
Coffee in the morning, cocktails in the evening.
Well, if you have a sign...
We've already ordered it.
No, I'm just saying, like, when we put out, like, our emails.
I totally agree.
Okay, so just do coffee slash cocktails.
It can't be serving alcohol, I don't think, though.
Well, that's fine. I can bring one in a sip.
Church property, you said?
Church serves wine all the time.
Are we actually talking serving, serving alcohol?
No, we're not gonna serve alcohol.
Okay. Let's just keep it coffee with council. You can have eaten coffee and...
All right. So, okay, so Joe, you and I are on the 25th.
Yes.
Don't sound so enthused.
Believe that conversation. We had a big group show up that I was five minutes late to, Jamie.
I heard. I heard you guys had a bunch of people coming in.
Yeah.
That's good.
Great.
Okay, so September 3rd, Thursday, 10 to 11. Who wants to do it? Andy, can you do it? Andy hasn't done one yet.
I'll cancel myself in unless I'm traveling again, like every other stinking date.
Would you wanna try at night instead?
It's just, if I'm out of town, I'm out of town, you know, that's, that's the only thing.
All right, well, I'll do it with you that day.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Can they not hear you?
No, I have it on mute.
No, Claudie, we can hear him just fine. Okay, who wants to do it on the 22nd?
I'll do it on the 22nd.
September 22nd.
Yes, well, let's hope it's not August, because we're already, oh, no, yeah.
I'll do it.
January morning.
It's Bob and Jamie?
No, that's...
Last evening.
Hey, 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 Bob, you and I are gonna do it on the next Thursday, so...
Yes.
I haven't done one with Kim.
Okay.
Would you mind?
On the 22nd?
Would you mind, would you mind switching? I'll do, I'll do it with you.
On the 3rd?
Yes.
Okay.
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 And who has the 22nd?
And that's the morning one, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
10 to 11.
So the 22nd will be me and who?
Andy and Bob.
Okay.
Andy and Bob on the 22nd.
But we're good through September, we're good. I don't wanna go too much further.
No, we gotta do October. We have two dates.
Just kidding.
Okay. All right, October 1st, who wants to do that? Joe and... I'll do it with you, Joe. We haven't done one together yet.
We haven't. I just, I maybe, maybe try.
And Jason goes to school on Thursday, so that'll be perfect.
My, my phone ends day, and then I, but I maybe, I'm trying to plan a weekend. But I'll, I'll put it in for now, and then I'll just, if it's not gonna work that, you know...
You, you can get a replacement, Joe.
10 o'clock?
Huh?
10 o'clock?
Yeah.
Or is that in the evening?
No, it's 10 o'clock in the morning.
Okay.
Okay, then who wants to do the 27th of October?
27?
Yeah.
I'm out.
I can do it.
How about Andy and Jamie?
That's fine. That'll work. Yeah, fine.
Okay, perfect. Good?
All right, so it gets us through October.
Through October. And then, once we get into the fall, we'll be able to look at the end of the year. Is that good?
We got August planned, but we're just doing August one.
Yeah, I'm doing one. I'm doing the last one in August. With Joe, with Joey, Andy, Joe.
Yeah, I don't have the August calendar.
Uh, Joe and I are doing it on the 25th, and then on the, I think Bob and, okay, Bobby, you know, Jamie, you and Bob are doing it on the 6th, right?
What, what month is that?
August.
Yeah, Bob and I got the 6th.
Bob and Jamie have the 6th. Just to clarify, uh, so it's Bob and Jamie on the 6th, the 25th is Joe and Kim, September 3rd is Jamie and Kim, September 22nd is Bob and Andy, October 1st is Joe and Kim, and the 27th is Andy and Jamie.
Yep.
Now we got November and December.
Yep, we're, we're gonna, we'll do those later.
Do those later, start that?
We'll push those back, yeah.
Do there ever start a meeting you wanna do those at?
Uh, let's do those at the September work session.
Okay.
Because then we'll get into the fall and see how the holidays or this, like, stuff works.
So...
And we'll hopefully have our town hall scheduled in there.
Yeah, hopefully it will be...
You said September work session?
Yeah.
So, all, yes.
Do you have the schedule, do you have the schedule for the regular meeting and the work meeting for September?
Uh, so, so you said, for September?
September.
It's the...
So it'll be September 8th for the regular meeting, and the 24th for the work session.
And I will keep, I will keep a calendar scheduled.
Jamie was just asking the dates for the meetings in September. The 24th is the work session in the morning. All right, Jamie, you good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, moving on. Next up is review of council minutes from 5/12/20 budget, 5/12/20 regular, 5/28/20 work session, 6/1 special, 6/4 special, reconvene from 6/1, 6/16 special.
Give us a second to set this up.
Get a situation here.
All right, so I'm gonna screen share the minutes, and let's see, so, so awesome, what we got here is, I pulled up all of the minutes here, and so whichever one we're working on first, I guess we're gonna do budget first, and we'll just pull that up, and...
So it's the own screen, right?
Yeah, yeah, share this screen, and then, and then what you have to do is take this and drag it over to, and pop it up.
So don't tell you what you're gonna change, you gotta do it and then save it.
All right, and I can, I can even just set each of them up for you if you want.
Maybe let's just say we're cutting into the backlog here.
We're fine. We're good.
This is his first time doing it, so he's...
We're fine. Okay, so my first change is, um, under number one, the first present absent. Councilman Epps was, had been removed, so he needs to, he needs to be taken off there. And then also, if you go down to the last present absent before number two, keep going down, keep going. There, he need, Epps. He needs to be off there.
Where is that?
Uh, right before number two, the present absent, you can, you, if you look at the computer screen, Joe, you should see where the cursor is. You ought to be able to see where he's changing.
Oh, man.
Those are my only changes. Anybody got anything else for that one? Nope. Okay, so I need a motion to put this on the consent agenda at the August regular meeting.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have, go ahead and save it, and you can put that on the consent agenda.
It might be on this screen. It is, it's so, so.
There it is, it's up top now.
Okay, okay.
You got it?
Yeah. I'm not always technologically literate.
You're fine.
Do I need to vote on these? Because I wasn't here at any of this.
Doesn't matter. You still have to vote on them. If you don't vote, it's a yes vote, so. I voted on a whole bunch of minutes when I started, and I voted on any of them.
Yep, and then push it to the top, drag it and push it to the top to make it full screen, like, all the way to the top. Push it against the top.
Okay, there we go.
Yep, all right. I have no changes for page one, no changes for page two, no changes for page three, no changes for page four, no changes for page five, six, or seven, or eight. I'm good with these.
Well, that's good. This is my first full minutes I've had.
Good, well, you did good. That doesn't mean other people don't have changes, I just... Bob, Joe, Jamie?
Good chance that Kim didn't catch it.
Everybody lets me do the heavy lifting, it's fine. I don't think, do you guys have any changes, Bob and Mr. Mayor?
No, I haven't. Nope, not this time.
All right, so I need a motion to put the, the 5/12 regular meeting minutes on the consent agenda for the regular August meeting.
Wait, I see a typo.
So where's the typo?
Where?
Right here, it's factual.
Oh, factual, okay.
I guess that's a word, because it didn't run line up.
Okay.
I can prove that. One word, one word.
There we go, okay. As amended.
So moved.
Joe, real quick, there is a typo on the one, on comments for me, but it's not a big deal. It's instead of the T...
Where?
On my comments, on that last, uh, minute that you guys were approving.
Where?
On the previous one we just had?
At the end, said he gave a shout-out?
Yeah, that says the, the thanks staff, I think it's meant to be he thanks staff for concern, but, you know, we wanna get specific, which I've always been, you know, there's, it's like, second, second sentence on the last page, do you hear me?
Second is in its last word.
Oh, he thanks staff, instead of he.
There we go.
He's like, it's in the, okay. As amended.
As amended.
So moved.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes. Okay, uh, we are to the work session May 28th.
My mouse still left.
I'm wanting to switch one.
Yep, you got it.
Okay, there we go, okay.
Okay, uh, 1A absent, yep. That's all I had. That's all I had.
Any other changes?
Anybody got anything, Bob, Jamie, Joe? Sorry, you have one.
I'm good.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the minutes as amended for the five twenty-eight work session to be placed on the August regular meeting agenda, consent agenda. Further discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. All right, next up is the June first, uh, special meeting. I did not have any changes to this. Nope, anybody got any changes?
Nope.
No.
Okay, uh, need a motion to place the six one twenty special meeting minutes on the consent agenda in the August regular meeting.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, next up is the June fir, June, the June first special meeting, which was recessed until June fourth, uh, meeting minutes, I have no changes there. Anybody got any changes?
Nope.
Bob?
No.
Joe?
No.
No.
Andy?
Nope.
Okay, I need a motion to, uh, put this, uh, six four special meeting that was reconvened from six one on the consent agenda in the August regular meeting.
So moved.
All's in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so, did you tell him?
I did, but we did, I...
Do we make any changes?
No, we haven't made any changes.
Okay, so the top portion is all wonky. Um, Mr. Mayor was out of town, so I presided over it, but I wasn't here. I was actually out of town. So the, after the call to order, the present, I was also participating remotely. Right there, right where you are, that needs to be that I was participating remotely. And then, also under the call to order, I, I needed to attend remotely too.
So where'd you say for the, number one call?
Yeah, right there. So do it under COVID-19, and Mayor Polino was out of town, or requested to attend remotely. You can say Mayor Polino and Mayor Proton Vandenberg were out of town.
Were. Instead of was, were.
And then, if you go to the next motion, um, you need to say Mayor Polino, yep, there you go. Okay. That was it. I was just reading it, I was like, I wasn't there for that meeting. All right, anybody got any other changes? Nope, all right, so I need a motion to approve the six six...
On the call to order there, it's requested the attend remotely?
Two.
To attend, yeah.
Good catch.
Um, all right, so I need a motion to approve the six six special meeting minutes as amended to be placed on the consent agenda in the August regular meeting.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, six sixteen, right? The six sixteen special meeting, if I said six six.
Let me clarify for the record.
Yeah, okay, all right, very good. That's it, okay, moving on, next, Austin, good job.
Okay, play music for the parents here.
Yep, uh, open topic, cell phones. Do we need our, do we need our work cell phones? I never use mine.
I haven't used mine since I got it.
Listen, I, I haven't, I haven't used mine, mine sits in my drawer and it opens up.
I know you don't use yours.
I, I don't use, I don't use mine, you know, I use mine to communicate with the public. I mean, the, the, the whole thing yesterday and the past weeks and stuff, and I'm also able to retrieve my, you know, I don't know how it all works, but I'm able to retrieve my email off of this, so I find it quite convenient.
Okay.
What other places have done, um, is they allow the participant to have an option, whether they get a stipend for their cellphone or to have an issued cellphone.
I don't need a stipend, but I don't need my cellphone. It's one more thing for me to keep up with, I'll stick my email back on my cellphone.
Again, again, I'm going to go back to, we, we've changed something because of one bad issue and, and again, I, I'd rather just turn mine in, if somebody wants to call me, I don't give them, give them my personal...
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't care.
I don't care, but I, I don't carry it, and I, I feel bad about it because we provided a phone that, that I can't, I've, got so many pockets and trying to keep up with something, I just can't.
Keep up with all the emails, phone calls and everything else, I get it.
So just certainly, you know, one device.
Pursue getting rid of them? Yep. Get rid of the plan?
It's a cost.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's mine.
We don't need.
Probably should hand it over to Ed.
Get mine because it's still sitting on the coffee table.
Well, you guys all okay with just leaving your, um, personal phone? I, I've always been fine with it and...
I'm fine with it.
It was really, um, established, uh, because of, if, if something, you know, we're technically supposed to be doing our text or any business, phone calls to each other and that, because if we were to get, uh, uh, by court order or something to surrender your, any and all information, we're trying to make it easy where you didn't have to go through your personal emails or text messages or phone calls and disclose that, but it's been, it's been a hard transition. So technically, it, it's supposed to make it easier from a standpoint if there was a request from the public for public documents, or in a course, a court matter or anything like that, you could simply surrender your phone over and they can access all that stuff. Um, it, it got a little tricky when we were using our personal phone, they were like asking us, so we had to go through all our personal texts in the, the, the court case that was, uh, a while ago when they were asking all for that information, so we were trying to separate, it, it's hard to, you know, get in the habit of doing something different, and that's why those were, and they did it for the county commissioners too. I think a lot of municipalities are going that way, um, to protect the privacy.
Well, Joe, in, in light of, and there's good precedent right now, in light of that request, I'm going to take the Hillary Clinton approach and have my attorney look at my phone and deem that I've conducted no business on that, and it's up to me, because precedents have been set, but my attorney can look at my phone and determine what's personal and what's public. And at that point in time, he can determine what it is and, and my outcome would be that I have, I have not conducted any business on my thing. I would love to have that argument, because I swear to, as my life is here, I would take the Hillary print, Hillary Clinton precedent and do the same with my computers as well, that's my, oh, and, and oh, by the way, I also know that I can smash my devices and they can't do, they cannot do anything about it.
Yeah, I'm good turning mine in, so if you guys can look into that.
We'll get rid of whoever turns theirs in, we'll get rid of the policy.
Perfect. And then, and then, and I mean, that way it's going to save us what?
And honestly, and honestly, Joe, I, I would, I would side on the fact that I don't receive a stipen, because in the event that I do receive a stipen, there's a return for that.
Yeah. No, I don't want any money for it.
I'm glad this was brought up because I could bring up the Hillary Clinton precedent.
Want to say it again?
I'll give you time, go ahead.
All right, you guys good?
I missed the comment about the stipen, I'm not sure what that, what?
I just said, I just said, I would be on the side of not receiving a stipen because with a stipen is the increase...
But you got to give your phone.
That there's a return for that stipen. And if I don't have a stipen, then...
It's my phone.
Right.
Yeah, I'm good with that, I don't need the money. Okay.
Well, like, for the record, I would like to keep mine. I keep it as a good reminder.
Then you can, Bob, you keep your phone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And by the way, this, this, this phone was next, so I keep it.
Oh, that's good. Okay, well, I'm going to give you, I'm going to get, get rid of mine, so. All right, good, that's all I had for cell phones. Okay, next up, communications.
Just do it up to the councilmen, if they want to surrender, surrender?
Yeah.
Okay, because then there may be a contract, do, do we have a contract with them?
We do, I think it was for two years, so we should be coming up close. I'll have to look into it, I, I'm not sure of the end date.
We're supposed to get it on my...
I don't see anybody anything in the sense that, so, but if, I think you're right, if, if councilmen want to keep it, uh, should be up to them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, communication topics and email blurbs. Here we are, blurbs! Blurbs, who's got a blurb?
Speaking now or forever, hold your blurbs.
I have blurbs, but I'm going to let everybody else blurb away.
I bet you got a list.
I do. We can see my list either.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait, I'm gonna wait and see what Kim has. Mine, this probably looks a lot like hers.
I wouldn't just like to go on record and enhance Kim's recommendation.
You guys all stink, by the way, all right, so we still need a welcome Andy blurb that has not gone out.
I can do that.
That needs to be separate. Um, I think we should welcome and introduce our new planning board members. I think that we should introduce our planning board members as a board and our Park, Truck and Greenway members as a board. Board of adjustments, they don't really meet, I don't think you really have to do that.
I can get a group, I can get group pictures at the next meetings and just do something like that.
That'd be great.
Welcome on.
Welcome, Austin, introduce Austin.
There's a lot of people that have been through Austin, you know, it's...
Okay, so we need to introduce Austin, so there you go, see, you guys are, you guys are contributing, not much, but you're contributing.
We're here.
One, one issue is that boards are not meeting physically right now, so.
It's okay.
Can you get individual pictures and then like, photo shop them together to make them all look like?
I can, I can make it look, I can make it look like the opening to the Brady Bunch.
There you go, well, yeah, they're all up here, take a picture of the screen.
Just like planning board in the middle square.
That'd be fun, so I think, you know, just introduce who, who's on the board, who's volunteering, like, do something like that. Um, I think, I think we should kind of with that do something that says what each board is doing and trying to accomplish, like what does the planning board do, what does the Park, Truck and Greenway do, what are they trying to accomplish? Like what's Park, Truck and Greenway trying to accomplish? Um, and then again...
Stop doing that, Joe, you're making me do it.
And then again, join us, volunteer, we'd love to have more people. Um, we still need the village hall FAQ. Christina always said that in the May twelfth meeting.
Okay, uh, village hall FAQ.
Uh, and then what Jamie was talking about, send out a, send out one that says, hey, if you want two council members to come to your next annual HOA board meeting, contact us, we would love to send two people.
And/or, it doesn't have to be an annual meeting.
Or, or if you just want them to talk to you.
Ad hoc, an ad hoc, um, HOA gathering, if they have a picnic, if they have any kind of HOA gathering, we would welcome an invite for a couple of our council members to, to attend. Or mayor.
Yes, um, welcome to you, and then also, have we entered, have we sent something out and introduced our new deputies? I, I know it was on the...
Mason's getting introduced tomorrow in that newsletter format and on social media, I've got timing for next week.
Perfect, okay, good. All right, that was all my blurbs.
Awesome.
Have any other blurbs?
It got me thinking of, uh, uh, the recent letter that we received, I think we all received, can you found yours in your spam?
Sure did.
But, but the comment that they made, uh, that the individual made about how things should be done, maybe, um, uh, in this, in a sense, maybe a process of how things, you know, like, hey, um, you know, so people don't automatically get excited if they hear something, it's like, you know, there's going to, or some sort of assurance to the community that there is a process when we are looking at things that affect the village, whether it's a village center, which is a lot of public input. It may be, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud right now, but it's just something that sure residents that, because his process was not in line with what we do, um, you know, I mean, and to Jamie's point about or re, or reaching out to the HOAs, it's not only, um, you know, we're going to make sure we're involved with it, but it's just, to, to, sure remember that, hey, if, if you heard something's going to happen, there's really a process involved, but I, I don't know, maybe he's...
So we can do like a zoning rezoning FAQ. What happens, what's the process if, if and when something gets rezoned?
There is a perfect example.
There you go, good job, Joe, nice contribution. Nice contribution.
Thanks for clarifying.
You got it. All right, any other blurbs, communication topics? No? Bob, nothing from you?
Can we put a blurb out about, uh...
No, you're covering it.
We continuously are working to, um, find more streamlined ways of dealing with traffic.
Yeah, sure.
Especially with, especially with the roundabout, you know, in absence of the roundabout going out, not going in until potentially twenty twenty-two, council is continuously working with DOT to find...
Diligently.
Diligently, better wording.
More efficient, more efficient alternatives to address these traffic issues. Please bear with us, as, you know, we, we know that this is a issue of, issue of concern and, and, and trouble for the community, but we're, we're continuously working with DOT to get this...
Good.
Make it better, until a roundabout is put in place.
Yep, good. Okay, blur, blur, blur.
Anything about school coming up? Nothing.
Are we really going to have school?
Yeah, virtually, well, there's kids going one day a week, so.
Maybe, maybe, yeah, if you haven't seen the news article that came out today.
Maybe, uh, just, uh, put in there, you know, um, pay attention to, uh, tra, school traffic and, uh...
School starts August seventeenth, beware.
Yep, just, you know, in general.
That's a good one.
Be aware.
Andy, nice contribution.
The one day a week, the kids go to school.
No, but they're going four days, like in Monday, Tuesday, it's just letters.
Different day, so they're all going, I mean, the bus is running every day, there's traffic every day, it's just alternating.
Every day is now a weekend.
Seriously, okay, all right, uh, next up, reports and updates, administrator's report, Christina.
So the first thing on the list is the NC DOT Newtown Road, um, we had requested an abduction and speed limit along this corridor here, and they declined, and so the next step was for us to take over ownership, and I've since spoken with their interim, um, division director, and they have basically said that they will only entertain it if we're willing to accept it from roundabout to the state line, which is about one mile.
Oh, I'd take that. I'd take it and jerk it down to fifteen miles an hour.
It's a, it's approximately one mile, we're going to bring in roughly less than five thousand dollars a year.
Around twenty-one hundred extra from Powell Bill.
From Powell Bill funds, um, I know Mike doesn't want us to take it in, but I'm not concerned about the paving of it. I mean, if we can own it and slow it down through here...
That's going to be the big thing, is if you do slow it down and you do make traffic concessions for Village Center District, that far outweighs the cost of maintenance, and plus, with slower traffic, you have less maintenance.
I agree.
You are going to find that people will find an alternate way.
Exactly.
Yep.
Which, which is fine, because if you're coming through to the downtown area, you're coming down to the downtown area, I don't want the, I don't want the dang eighteen-wheeler that ran all up over the roundabout the other day because they couldn't get through it.
That actually happened?
Oh, yeah, there were, yeah.
So, if there's a consensus, the next step is to petition DOT, it has to get to their state board, they have to approve it, so it's a pretty lengthy process.
And I bet that that lengthy process becomes quick, will get real short because they want to, they want to get rid of it.
Yeah, they don't want this maintenance on this road.
And, and honestly, don't go, don't, don't get caught that Marvin Speed trap. I want that to hurt.
Is there any way we want, is, is there any way we can tie it that, because there's nothing more that DOT wants to do is get rid of, uh, road responsibility? Is there any way we can tie it to, uh, um, once the roundabout is completed?
We can always make that contingency.
Well, I don't understand that, I, I don't... Well, I don't understand that. I, I don't.
He wants.
Oh, that's maybe that those the, the roundabout up to being done earlier, because we don't wanna take over the roads in between it that we don't even have a roundabout there. Keep in mind, the corner on Auburn and Newtown gets all beat up on that, that, just that corner, as people are trying to make a, go to the right, um.
That's fine, that we can actually fix that corner.
I understand, I understand that. What I'm trying to do is tie in, uh, moving us up the agenda, because you gotta remember, they are, they're kinda, they, they have money, not much, but they have money.
They're broke.
Well, to Joe's point, if we, if we say, okay, we're gonna take over your road, you don't have to spend another dime on this road, can you move our timeline up a little bit on the traffic circle because it's, 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 it's taking that maintenance money out of the equation?
Okay, but here's the next question. If we take it over and it's now our road, do then we have to put the roundabout in?
That, and that's a good question, uh, somewhat, you know.
We might have to have a contract that they still pay.
That's what I'm saying. The roundabout is gonna be put in by.
That is not what you were saying.
No, it is. The roundabout, the roundabout is gonna be put in by DOT. And Jamie, you know this, when you go back to, um, how we got the roads done in South Carolina, and we went, basically negotiated with South Carolina to move us to the top of the list. There is a list, I promise you, with DOT. They do have money they are spending to work on projects. What we're saying is, you put us on the top of the list and we'll take over that road, including the extra additional mile. We gotta get something for in exchange for us just turn, get, take a dump of roads.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm good with going to DOT and asking them that question, but if they say, no, we're not gonna move you up, we still need to ask, well, if we take over the roads, will, will you still pony up your portion of the roundabout?
Yeah.
I, 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 no, I am not saying we take over that roundabout at all. That is not.
No, I know. I know you're not, but I wanna make sure that we're not getting stuck with it too.
We have to have a agreement.
Own something and then expect the state to take it up, or that's how it's done.
And we'll have to maintain that once it's built, if we take over the road.
That's fine.
But.
We have, well, that's fine.
Just like we will these down here. They're all new, so they should be easy to take care of.
That's fine, especially if we slow down. Okay, so you're gonna keep doing research and keep working on it. Okay.
I'm 100% good with that, though. Can we own, would it, from town limit, town limit? I'm fine with that.
Pretty much.
Well, it is. I'm near town, it's town limit, because the end of that roundabout is town limit.
That's true.
And state line's town limit.
Do you ready to welcome the bond?
Yeah, we can do all kinds of good stuff.
Yes, Christina.
Whatever you want, because it's not DOT's road.
Oh, I can say something. So the, um, the next issue is the finance officer update. We actually, uh, conducted interviews last week. Our former finance officer, Chris Robinson, um, helped with those interviews, and we're gonna go into closed session a little bit and talk about that, but just wanna let you know that we did interview, um, applicants last week.
Okay, great.
The next thing is the HOA signage update. At the last meeting, we had presented a phased approach to a couple of, um, years of implementing the new signs with the logo in the middle, the street blades, and thus far, we have heard a no from Tullamore, a yes from Canterfield and Heritage, and that's all we've gotten.
We have a no from Providence Road Estates as well. That came in, that came in this morning.
They don't wanna participate?
They don't have the money. That's what, that's what John, John Bericich said.
So we had, we had basically told them what was decided at the meeting is that 100% would be phase one, and so, um, Canterfield and Heritage were the only ones at 100% for this year.
Okay, and Tullamore just said no, we're not gonna bring up any money?
Correct.
Yeah.
Did we hear a fire thorn?
They said.
They had questions.
I thought they were pretty, they were skeptical. They said they didn't want to because, because they thought it would anger their South Carolina residents, and they feel like they're already paying enough in taxes. That was the response I got.
Who's your HOA president? Okay.
Just say that data back to your guy.
Yeah, Joe.
Yeah, so Chris, Christina lives, Christina Highfield lives in South Carolina.
Right.
Correct, is that good?
But the amount of money that, the amount of money that, 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 that's an HOA. That's a, that's a fire thorn issue.
You guys will get on with that.
Because what was their cost?
Firethorn?
Yeah, $300?
I think it was six, six and, maybe six sixty or something like that.
Do y'all want us to do anything else with this after, we'll go ahead and implement phase one, and then we'll talk about it again next year unless?
Yeah, I mean, I keep, I keep letting people come back to you and then let them see their pretty street signs that they are not getting and make them feel bad.
How much are fire thorns?
I'm shocked.
All of the, of all of the subdivisions, how much their, their image is so important. All those.
Yeah, why, why did Tullamore say no?
They just said, we're not interested, thank you. I told them how much it was, that's all they left to that. We're not interested, thank you.
And they got what, four signs in their old neighborhood?
Is it Tanya?
I'll call her. I'll, I'll see her Friday. She called a call earlier.
What's their cost?
I'm sorry, they have feeding and we're able to decide that.
So fire thorns' cost was 667.65, Tullamore's was $400.59.
And those are, those are fluff estimates. We think they're gonna be less than that. We just didn't wanna give.
$400.
Alright, I'll talk to, I'll, I'll follow up with Tullamore.
I'll follow Christina.
And, and we're gonna be paying, we're gonna have to pay for the labor to get them installed, so we'll have to figure that out on, on the backend and see if Darius or one of the staff members can do it, but we're paying for that portion at least.
Okay.
I'll, I'll assist in that. I'll, I'll put some volunteer time and assist with that.
Oh, that's a great Boy Scout project.
Hey, yeah, that's a good idea. It's good.
Okay, so that's all that we have thus far. We'll, we'll talk about it again next year unless.
No, can you keep bringing it up and let us know when HOAs respond?
Sure.
Sorry. Sorry, Christina. You're so irritated with me today.
Alright, town hall day.
See, she didn't say no.
That's why there's a chair between two of you.
So Christina, so the, the communities that had committed, do they get signs, or would you have to wait till you have more mass involvement? I missed that.
They'll be getting, the ones that have.
You're gonna get your sign, Bob. You're gonna get your sign.
Thank you. I'm gonna keep my phone. Put the sign on the phone.
Alright, so the next thing is town hall day, and we have heard back from the schools, and they're not allowing us to, they're not allowing anyone.
No one in the school district.
To reserve.
I'm not surprised.
So we're gonna have to have an alternative, alternative location. I don't know if y'all have any suggestions, if, we're gonna look at fire thorn.
Well, in the light of the COVID crisis, do we do one virtually? I, because I feel like that that's the only way that we're really gonna get a decent return on our.
I, I do. I, um, I, can we reach out to?
Hold on to people on the face.
Can we reach out to one of the churches? Um, um, it, what's the one in Blakeney?
Elevation?
Elevation. Do they have a pretty big church over there?
There's one right here in South Carolina. They don't have to go to Blakeney. Right here across from the old.
Well, I can't, I can't speak for that location. They have, they have very large locations generally.
That's elevation right there too, and that's right here.
There's another, um, really good, uh, church.
At the 0521 split. There's an elevation church there. It's gigantic. Yeah.
There's a, there's another, um, church or where is it?
Yep.
You guys hearing?
I already called.
We can hear you, we're just ignoring you.
There's another church or, uh, uh, building that's just north of the Harris Teeter in Waxaw. It's a, it's a, we use it for the high school band, beautiful, um, uh, can accommodate, certainly as many as tend to show up for sure, or that will show up, and then it has a nice stage area and stuff. That's an oppor, uh, option maybe as far as churches go. I don't know the name of the church, but it is just north.
Oh, yeah, 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 it's right across on the, yeah. Yeah, it's on, uh.
It's on the road of where Harris Teeter is.
Cuthbertson from the, right across from the Moes, right there, yeah.
I would, I would, I would reach out to the elevation church, to that church. I would reach out to fire thorn and find out how many people they are allowing in their building at this time.
I like, I like the, I like the Blakeney one, and I kind of don't wanna go to Waxaw. I just wanna make it as convenient as possible to everyone.
And I can tell you this, well, and these are all North Carolina locations, but if we had a South Carolina location, their, their, um, COVID laws are more relaxed than ours. Opiates and all that.
So that Blakeney, elevation and north of Harris Teeter and Waxaw. And I, do you say fire thorn?
I just don't, because it.
It's too controversial?
No, I mean, it's just not, you don't have a good present, you don't have a good, there's not a stage for you. When you talk about these churches, you've got a stage that we're, we're at, and I'm sure over there, all of these have PA systems that you, we can utilize, but I, I would say let's get on.
That we could possibly access, just because of the, the, the better, um, COVID laws?
COVID laws.
Is there something over there that's convenient?
We need like a, like a banquet hall.
Elevation is probably too, too large.
Collins Road. There's a banquet hall on Collins.
You're gonna have separation.
Right here.
I don't know where Collins Road is.
Okay, Collins Road is the one that Publix is on. That comes back to.
Okay.
There's a, there's a barn. It's called The Barn, and it's a, it's a, uh, banquet hall, basically. It's, it's a, it's a venue right there. It's in South Carolina, in, in Indianapolis.
FYI, FYI, the trip's short. I just looked it up on Google Maps. It's Ford Hill Church Waxaw Campus.
Yeah.
Ford Hill?
Ford Hill.
Ford Hill?
Yeah.
Forest Hill.
Forest Hill. Yeah, it's across from Moes, right there.
Church Waxaw Campus. That's, it, it, that, it's not built yet when you look at Google Maps, but it's, it's, uh, it looks like it's under development, so that looks like that's the place it is. But that's the place that I'm suggesting though.
Well, here, here's, here's the thing with that. Our, our, our next meeting, August the, August the 11th is our next meeting, and we need to be able to have, get communication out starting then, so whatever we decide.
You guys pick a place. Out of those places, find a place and pick one.
That, that's fine. We need to get a date, and then we'll, we can work around that.
I'd say the middle of September.
Yep, um, a Monday or Tuesday night, 'cause everybody's in town. Everybody's doing something.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Well, so what's the North Carolina governor's outline right now? Is it 25, 50 people that are gathering, can be assembled right now, or what, what's the law?
It's still 10 until, I think, August 7th, I think.
Yeah, he's gonna, he's reevaluating in the week.
See, that's why.
Whatever it is.
I mean, you might be a better.
Whatever it is, that's, you know, if it's 50 people, the first, I mean, and it's between staff and council, there's say 10 people that won't be attending or planning board or whatever, first 40 get a ticket to get in, the rest go Zoom.
I like, I like, um, Andy's recommendation. I would put the, the South Carolina, is that the elevation?
No.
There's a, The Barn, it's, it's a, it's a recreational, a guy rents it out. It's on Collins Road here. It's, uh, pulled up here. I can, uh, see screen share that too, but yeah, Collins Road is just, uh, kinda south of us. On, yeah, it's like 12 miles from us right now. Uh-huh, one second. I'll, I'll, also, uh.
I'm finding a van as well.
I don't know if it's big enough, but it sits, uh, where am I looking at?
Yeah, we need to go to the right of that a little bit. Yeah, there you go. There it is.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, I, I'm getting there. I'm getting there. Oh, too far, too far. Uh, one more should do. There it is.
There you go. Looks big enough.
Sure, it's called.
It's actually for sale, but they're still doing events there. It's just.
I called them, Christina.
Place for free events.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's just, yeah, let's just call them, and I, I would, I would say.
It is right there.
You're not gonna, can't do it on Tuesday the 8th because we have a, we have a meeting there, but certainly the 14th, 15th, 21st, 20.
We have to move a coffee with council, that's fine.
Google is saying.
Can you submit on that, uh, Rohit? I just wanna see where that location is.
Okay, uh, I mean, I just wanna show you what here. It says Google's, uh, COVID hours for The Barn are Saturday 6 to 11 a.m. and Tuesday 6 to 11 p.m. You guys see that?
Yeah, but it, but that, but if it's a private event, it may open different hours.
Yeah, you, you never hurt to call them. That's what I think they can do.
Anyway, this, this is a big event.
And if, and if not, isn't there, aren't, isn't there some giant church down 521 in South Carolina on the left?
Here's where we are.
Oh, yeah. Trans, isn't that a, a transformation?
Transformation, yep.
Try that one.
Yeah, and I just want a place that everybody knows, are familiar with. So Transformation would be a great one.
It's a giant church.
It's a giant church. I mean, the auditorium is huge. Been in there.
So does anybody have any issues with the 14th, or the 15th, or the 21st, or the 22nd? No.
Nope.
Because if not, we'll go ahead and schedule it on one of those days, if everybody has availability, and then we'll just let you know when that, when it's gonna be.
Preferably on.
About September?
Preferably, maybe on a Tuesday night, for those, for those, I'm gonna think completely, this is great. For those, for those of you who might still consider watching the NFL, um, would wanna have Monday Night Football, so I would say, I would sign on Tuesday. Because my base of watch, NFL, NBA.
Let's see, what were the dates?
Perfect.
There you go.
There you go.
Could be, I could be out of town.
15th and whatever dates.
14th, 15th, 21st, 22th.
So go to Iowa for a launch, so, and I could be gone for two weeks. I don't know, just yet. Trying to work those details out.
I prefer, I prefer not the 21st. That's my favorite.
Okay, we'll shoot for the 15th or the 22nd.
Look at all the parking spots, too.
Yep.
I don't think we're.
Thanks for helping me with that.
6:30 to.
8:30.
To 12.
That's gonna probably get you to most capacity because you can spread out.
Yep.
Okay.
So.
We will make it happen. And.
So that's two options.
So what dates did they, did you pick again?
The 14th, 15th, the 21st, 22nd. We'll talk about it many more.
Then we're 15.
Preferably 15.
Preferably 15. Google's saying that both elevation churches are closed.
Okay, we'll, we'll call and find out. So, does anybody have any other questions, comments on that topic? Second topic, just wanna pass around. This is the, um, petition that we recently went through, and ordinance that, um, changed our charter to allow mayoral votes and to change the form of government, and as you're aware, we had a citizen, uh, petition, and the results are just passed out that were certified by the Board of Elections. So it does have to go to a, to a referendum, which I've passed out the language that's already been given to the Board of Elections for, submitted for this November election, so that we'll see, you'll see that exact wording on the ballot for this year that's coming up in November. And that's really all I have to report unless anyone has any questions.
Um, we absolutely need to get educational information out to, just FAQs to the citizens about why it's important to have those things. What did you, what, what, what did you, why did, why do I have all these? Am I supposed to take one?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I, I, I passed out, I, I didn't do it right. Can we, I need one of those. I need one of those.
Not get one of those summaries?
No, that one.
That forwards or backwards?
I need one of those, Austin, in your hands.
Are these all the same?
Yeah.
It's backwards, Austin. I mean, uh, Rohit, it's backwards.
I'm at, well, I wonder if it's backwards for us but not backwards for them, so.
Joe, can you read that right? Is it, or is it backwards?
I cannot read it.
Is it backwards?
It, it does look pa, it looks to me, it says total pages is on the far left.
Okay, so it is not backwards. So total, okay, so it's.
Total pages is on the far right.
Yeah, yeah, so that means it's not backwards for them. Um, so signatures required, there's 468, um.
In the referendum?
Yeah, and, uh, valid signatures was 728, so that's what this is saying.
Okay.
Oh, I see it. I'm, I'm gonna have to change. Second chance. Alright, so y'all want educational material to go out for, um, FAQs, apply, it's important?
Yes.
Just like one presentation, anything else?
No, I think you need to have a couple to go out, okay?
Yeah, because so many, because people are not.
Yeah, and I think it should start in September, have one in September, one in October, and then one right before the election.
So a monthly, a monthly informational on the charter changes?
Okay. Or do you think just October, November, what do you guys think? September, October, November, or do you think October, November, when people are starting to think really about the election?
Well, the elections in the first part of November, so I would say September, October.
And then right before the election.
And again, we really need to focus on the, the aspect of if, if, you know, cause you never know what scenario. One is out sick, and one is just deciding, one council member is deciding not to show up. You cannot, cannot, even though that another individual from the community said that it would just be, the two councilmen voting and, and, and the mayor voting, the mayor can't vote unless it's a split, and you need a majority, at least three, that somehow has to be clear to the community that you can, you know, you cannot get things done in our town if you do not allow, um, i- if that scenario were to happen, and you only had two council members, when it involves a financial matter other than the budget.
Let's let Christina work up something, and we'll look at it in the August work session and approve it, and then it can go out September, October, November.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have. Rohit, planner's report.
Cool, um, so there's a planner's report in your packet, but the first one is already outdated by a lot. Um, the bank's tree removal, the DOT did, uh, find that it was in there right of way, and they agreed to, as they said, remove the tree themselves when they find the money to do it. So, don't know when that will be, uh, that's what it says.
So what happens when the tree falls over the road, or onto a wall?
A lot of those needed immediately.
Or not to sign there right away.
But, uh, what they said in their email, and, uh, trying to pull it up.
I've been worried about whole email chain.
Oh, you, you, yeah, you, you're CC'd on that email, so.
Yeah, so here, here's the thing, is at this point, for once they said they would do it, because they were responsible for it, and they will take care of it, from, from now until that tree falls over and hurts someone, they're liable for it.
Oh, that's good. Well, then the church isn't liable for it, that's what they were worried about, right?
Right, the tree's in the DOT right away, so.
So can we go over there and start pushing it, and see if we can?
Well, it ain't gonna take a whole lot of pushing.
Cause all this could have been headed off, had they just agreed to letting us close both lanes for an hour.
I'll, I'll take that, so when it gets done.
When the tree falls along the road, they'll come clean it up.
Right.
And meanwhile, there's 15,000 cars to drive through here in harm's way every day.
I drive by there without, no, don't sound bad, nope, not to say it, nevermind.
You go, you go fast enough, it won't hit you.
No, it was worse than that, sorry, you're going over it, sorry, oh my god.
Um, that's, that's all I have for that. Um, we were trying to push them to see if barman could help, there's not really much we can do, other than facilitate whatever lane closure, so we'll, uh, I'll just keep you, um, updated. Um, all right, so next is the Villa Center renderings, um, as, uh, Christina asked, uh, they recommended to get, uh, destination by design, uh, to get a quote, um, they.
Thank car. Sorry.
It's okay. They, uh, they quoted $5,000 for two renderings, and $40,000 to $50,000 for all of them.
That's a lot.
Um, so that's kind of way outside the budget that I can pull from just like, you know, raggedy, you know, just planning, right, random.
Our, our raggedy budget we gave you last night?
I mean, no, no, I mean, just like, for a non-budgeted thing, to pull money from here or there, it's way more than I can pull. I'm not, I, 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 I'm, I'm very sad.
Your, your raggedy budget that we gave you, it's fine, Rohit.
No, I, I'm happy with my budget, I'm, I'm happy with my budget, I just, uh, I just need to say that this is not budgeted, so.
No, that's a lot.
To pull it from somewhere, that would be a lot.
So we're gonna keep looking?
Yeah, and, and the, the last thing I said in that, uh, line is, um, if we can find an artist, see, the, the estimate was so high for a destination by design, because they are a planning company, and they would provide their planning input during the process of drawing these renderings, but when I got it done by an artist, it was a lot cheaper, cause I was just telling them exactly what to draw, and then they just drew it. So, um, I think that.
I mean, can we look at like UNCC?
I wonder if you can get with Urban, cause they do landscape architect.
Oh, maybe.
But we might run into the same problem, that they'll charge a lot more, cause of their experience and the cost.
Any, any thoughts of tapping into our own community through a blur, saying, hey, do you, are you in this business, do you do renditions or?
Graphic artist, that's a good idea.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
What about the, the blur outfit that just did our workshop, don't they?
I did actually ask, uh, them to find, if they, they have a lot of people that they, I sent them what our request is, they haven't got back to me yet.
Ask them again.
So what blur was that?
Well, it was just like last week.
Uh, uh, Joe said, reach out to the community, see if anybody has like a graphic artist background designed, that they can help us with some renderings. Good job, Joe.
Just here to support you.
Appreciate it.
Just need you thinking a long time, bro.
I know, I tried, it was those presentations.
And we're, we're gonna finish by lunchtime.
I know.
We're almost done.
I think dinner time.
They're in the office, I can drive in a second.
All right, Rohit.
Okay, so, um, 721, uh, planning board meeting, uh, they, uh, let's see, they reviewed the land use plan comments, they made a few comments, um, I will, um, bring those comments to the next, um, the, uh, the regular session meeting, next, uh, next, next week or so, um, and then, uh, no, 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 not next week, the, the, the month after that, because, uh, what was, they decided that we'll, they'll, uh, review chapters 6, 7, and 8, and then submit the whole thing as one package for you to consider and adopt.
So did I understand correctly that planning board didn't understand why we gave them back the comments that we made?
Some of them, they had questions on, um, I, I don't really wanna go too much into it right now, um, but they, uh, they were wondering about the vision statement, um, like why it changed, how it changed, and.
Oh, cause we, cause we changed our, the vision statement.
And that's what we said, uh, at the meeting, they thought, uh, the previous one, which is in the land use plan, kind of applied more to the land use plan, and the newer one, um, was like, I think, too short to provide a vision. Something like that, um. But, uh, the another, another revision that they had questions on was that, uh, in the like services section, they thought it would be useful actually to provide, uh, a list or table of services, that, you know, you have to get if you live here, but who offers them, as opposed to just removing it because we don't offer them. Um, so, like, uh, we get ways, you have to hire a private person, you know, power, you get it from union power, like, just like a, like, uh, if you're a new resident, this is a one pager on how to get all your services started.
Do you really think new residents are going to look at our land use plan to find out where they're getting their services from? No, they're not, they're asking the real estate agent, where do I get my services from?
Or looking it up on their phone, Google.
Right, but it might also be like, uh, like a one page, it's part of the land use plan, but then it also might be like, uh, you take that one page and then actually have it as a separately available document for people, you know, so. Um, that's all I recall.
It's in the land use plan, but that's.
Well, I mean, I'll bring it back, and, and, and it doesn't have to be like the survey where it went back and forth for like a year.
Oh yeah, no, it's not that.
Uh, that's kind, the, the idea this time is kind of like, bringing it back to the planning board is a courtesy to them, and so that they can provide comments on your comments, but they're, they're saying that it's okay if you come, if they bring it back to you and you don't agree with their comments, and you adopt whatever you want.
Oh, that's nice, and that's okay.
Yeah. No, I mean, it, that, that's just how it is, that's just how it is.
I'm no kidding, like, I know that.
And, and I think we're just kind of reeling from how this, how long the survey took, and if they're not interested in having that for the land use plan.
I don't disagree with them at all. Survey, the survey being that slow was not my doing, or Joe's.
Um, okay, um, then they also discussed the public input meetings and thought, um, you know, that the town hall, uh, meeting, or public input meeting specifically for the land use plan would not be necessary, because one, they're, uh, they have a lot of time, in fact, this has been on the table for al- almost four years. Uh, so residents have had time to come to the board meetings and provide input, and also that if you're gonna have that town hall, uh, sometime between the time that, that, you know, before the land use plan is adopted, you could also just have it as one.
I don't know, I kind of feel like having a public input meeting would be a good idea, only because, just cause it's been on the books for four years, it doesn't mean that we've had it completed, and once it's completed and, or not completed but not approved, I think at that point, they can actually see what it looks like compared to what it, you know, what it started out as, is 800 pages or whatever it was, to what it is now. I still think a public input meeting would be helpful, I don't think we need to have multiples, but I think we should at least have one. Again, if you want transparency, because people aren't gonna sit there, and I don't wanna take the entire town hall to go over the land use plan. Like, I think having it there and, and having the highlights from it would be great, but I think specifically having a public input meeting for it is advantageous for everybody.
If there's anything that the public is going to comment on, it would be that.
Right.
And I think that, that, you're 100% right, one meeting is all that's needed, because it has been a long time.
Yep.
But just to kind of give a synopsis and, and.
And, and be like, okay, it's completed, here it is, it hasn't been approved, but here you go.
Yeah, and if you guys have any input before we approve it, then let us know now, and we can.
Or forever hold your peace.
And we can, we can always, you know, update it according to what the public is looking for, or if, that everybody's fine with, then we can move forward.
Okay, so, do you wanna start scheduling that, or do you want me to take it back to the planning board?
I mean, I think they need to schedule it, I thought we had some dates that we had picked that we could use.
But since they didn't, they didn't really talk about the dates, because they thought it wasn't necessary, um, and their next meeting is on August 18th, which is past one of the dates, one of the two dates, so.
I've got it on my calendar, it's the 20th, but that doesn't mean anything.
Oh, well, there was the 13th and the 20th, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
I think we took off the 13th for some reason, but, but, but the 18th isn't gonna give them enough, from the 18th to the 20th, that's not gonna give them enough time either, I would, um, I mean, it's, it's, it's gotta, it's sometime, sometime before the, um, town hall, so I would say either the 3rd of September, the 10th, or the 17th.
Does that run that meeting? Planning board running that meeting?
Yeah, planning board, yeah, but we can be there, we'll just say if form may be possible, I would, I mean, I'd like to be there to hear what people have to say.
Yeah, me too, absolutely, if I have the opportunity, I'm glad to be there and hear what the board has to say.
So I would.
So evening, all of them?
Yeah.
Okay.
One, one meeting, one evening, speaking now forever hold your peace.
Okay, I'll bring that back to the planning board then. Um, anything else from anyone else?
Not, not on that. Nope.
Uh, yeah, when the laptop was back there, you could see the whole table, but now that I've got the computer here, we're cut off.
That's great, I'm gonna start saving what Christina does. All right, keep on, conditional use permit.
So, both, uh, conditional, uh, uh, CUP applications were recommended for approval, along with conditions. I really can't talk too much about them, because it's a quasi judicial, uh, process, so, that means, um, for you, I guess, uh, you, you don't know too much about it, but, uh, that means only evidence collected during the hearing can be used to make your decision, that and the application itself that you will receive in advance. Um, there will be people testifying for both cases, um, and, uh, you guys have called for a public hearing earlier, uh, today, but the one thing that is, uh, a different now for, for everyone is that, uh, because of, uh, COVID, they have, uh, the state has allowed 24 hours after the public hearing for people to provide written comments, which means that you can't vote on the, uh, application at the meeting that the public hea- hearing is being held on. So I've, uh, kind of put out two, or really three options, um, for what you can do. Um, you could recess after discussing, recess the hearings to, say, the Au- August 13th, to assess if any publics were, comments were received and then vote, or you could take a vote on August 11th contingent on no publics being, public comments being received, and then if any are received, then we retake, uh, the vote at the August 27th work session.
I vote for number two.
Uh, me too, yeah, cause then that way, once the 24 hour period is up.
If, if there's no comments, then it stands, if there are comments, we'll review it on the 27th and vote.
Yeah.
If, if we wanna change our vote, so I say option number two.
That's, that's what I figured you would say, I just wanted to put the options on the table.
You guys good with option number two, Bob and Joe? Okay, good job, thumbs up, Bob, no talking.
I'm good, I'm good with it, I'm good with it.
No talking, Bob, thumbs up or thumbs down?
Okay. Joking, joking.
Joe, Joe already gave me the thumbs up.
Um, so then last, um, certainly not least, um, our planning intern, Matthew Blazin, he, uh, completed his summer semester with us, um, 10 weeks flew by real fast, um, but it was a pleasure to have him, and, uh, he did contribute a whole lot towards, um, a lot of the plans that, you know, just, we kind of got, uh, put on our plate at the same time. Um, we had the land use plan, the future land use map, the comprehensive plan, which is no longer required by the state, but the planning board is gonna include part of it in the land use plan.
Wait, the 2050 one's not required by the state anymore?
Yeah, they changed that in June, so that was kind of a big, kind of slap in the face, uh, well, but mostly because a lot of small towns complained, apparently, that, uh, that's a huge requirement, and a lot of small towns can't handle that load, so they did, um, remove that requirement, um, from 160D.
So we're gonna keep working on it?
Uh, no, we're not, uh, we're gonna include a very small portion, not a very small portion, but, uh, kind of whatever is a little bit, uh, more detailed in the land use plan, we're just gonna include it as a chapter six in the land use plan.
Okay.
And, uh, and a few paragraphs, and that's about it. Um, but, uh, it's, it's, it's really okay, um, Matthew got a little ways into it, um, but we did mostly borrow from Indian Trail, and, uh, we are gonna use a lot of the original material that he, uh, created for that, so.
Cool.
And he also helped with the ETJ, he helped create the maps for those, the annexation plan, and the work that was needed on our end for, for the Parks and Greenways master plan, so he was very helpful, um, he learned a lot, also is very valuable, um, to have him, so, um, I just wanted to leave that, leave it at that, and say that I would recommend making a summer internship a, uh, yearly, um, experience for us and the students.
I've been saying since I got on council that we need interns, so I am fully on board with this, and I think we should do it every semester.
I recommend it highly.
I bet you do, I bet you do, every semester.
We've been very lucky.
I think, I think you, I mean, I know Christina does, Christina's, she's like, somebody's gotta watch these people. I, it is fabulous. I love the idea of having an intern, I think they can learn a bunch, I think they can bring new ideas of new stuff that is going on that they're learning about, so I'm, I am way in favor of having interns.
That's great, um, I mean, we would definitely find you for an intern every semester, um, and, uh, just a, just a one more thing is that, you know, he had to work remotely for pretty much the vast majority of his internship, it didn't really, we didn't really lose a beat, we had him on remote PC, and, uh, he's, he had his laptop at home, he was doing fine, so.
Awesome.
And we called up, we called each other three months ago.
Good, I love that.
Yeah, it worked out, and, uh, every semester.
Yep.
Let's do it.
You're welcome, Christina. You're welcome, Austin, you're welcome, cause I know, I know, I know, we gotta move on.
I didn't drive you too, I didn't drive you too crazy, man.
Okay, all right.
Uh, that's.
Anything else from you, Rohit?
Um, I think that's all I have, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Uh, review of action items and ongoing action item spreadsheet, uh, Austin, you wanna do action items?
Sure.
And we have changed this up a little bit, as y'all look through this and you see the green areas, those are the areas that we've done this past cycle, and we're gonna move those out to the completed section, you'll no longer see them anymore if they're completed.
Perfect.
Okay, action items, let's see.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was talking about the list, but.
Oh, you're good, no worries. Stepping on my toes. Uh, Christina, well, uh, let's see, ask NCDOT for a no left turn sign for 30 to 7:30, from something, from, coming from South Carolina, will ask for, will ask about private traffic control and money to offset off-duty officers. I will put, I, let's see, roundabout discussion. I'll put discussion on the roundabout on the August 11th, yeah, on the, on, on the August 11th, um, agenda, and put action, put action for that on the work session.
Think you got it backwards.
I got it backwards?
Yeah, it, it, it'll be at the August work session.
Just the whole thing is the August work session?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, put, let's see, I will put consideration of formation of strategic design committee on next agenda. Let's see, Christina and/or Rohit, I'm not sure which one of y'all was supposed to do this, will contact, uh, neighbor, uh, adjacent property owners at the corner lot to discuss.
Rohit and Jamie.
Rohit and Jamie, okay.
And Joe.
And Joe.
And Joe. And that was to, that was to discuss a potential land swap?
Uh, yeah, or, or just.
No, just, just.
Possibly a land swap with, uh, our parcel in the back, or partially just, possibly just, uh, having a village all be in the back.
Development strategy.
Do, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we could. Yeah, yeah, we could generalize that action item.
Development, develop, we'll say developmental vision then, or something like that. Okay, um, I will send letters to our new planning, planning and board of adjustment members. Uh, Rohit will continue to follow up with NCDOT on streetlights.
The naming process.
Uh, union power, that one, but NCDOT too, yeah.
Union power? Okay, union power too. Okay, let's see, I will place streetlights again on the work session, okay? I will advertise, uh, the Stowe documentary after checking with Chaplin, see if that's okay. Let's see, I will put, uh, coffee with council dates, uh, on the September work session. I will get group photos of some sort from the planning board and PRG for blurbs, and then I have a whole list of blurbs that I'm supposed to put out, including, um, information on the new planning, planning board.
They don't have to read them.
Okay, don't have to read them? Okay, good. I got my list of blurbs, and I will issue a notice of potential quorum for, for a public input meeting.
Yeah.
Date yet to be determined.
Yep.
Christina will update council on HOA signed responses as we get them, and Christina will, Christina will contact alternative locations for the town hall meeting. And Rohit will write a zoning and rezoning FAQ. I think that's most of it.
Disclaimer response for, um, anything that goes out without council. Yeah. Collaborate at work session.
Wait, what? What was that one?
Um, just put disclaimer response at work session.
Disclaimer response at work session, okay.
And then cell phones. Assessing the cellphone plans.
Uh, which meeting? Work session?
No, 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 just assessing the plans to make sure. Yeah, you could say update at work session. Cell phone return.
Hey, Joe, do you approve of that?
We're gonna put, hey, Joe, we're gonna put you on this, uh, new committee reforming, and you're gonna have to mow the grass at town hall in my house. And Andy's.
All, all those, all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
So, I'm at my house, and I'm hearing leaky upstairs, and it's like, okay, I hope the same doesn't, I'm finding good problems all the time, so I have to excuse myself. What am I gonna put it for?
We put you on a new committee, Joe, and you gotta mow lawns. You're on the lawn mowing committee. Alright, sorry, Austin.
You're nervous, weren't you? I was gonna get mowing out here.
Anything else, Austin?
I, I think that's about it unless I missed something.
Okay. Um, okay, so the action item list, uh, the first one, we need to go ahead and, I guess, complete that one, because that's the banks, church. Um.
Which one now?
The first one, Village Hall. Schedule the meeting. Um. The, uh, next, the last one on that first page, the corner property on Martin School Road, that's just, that just needs to be completed and moved.
Which one?
The next, the last one, corner property on MRS, MSR.
So we needed, what, we checked it?
Move it, yeah.
Done, okay.
Just complete it, just move it.
Okay.
Do we have pictures of the rental signs that Derek put up at the park picnic shelter?
We'll get it.
Yeah, I'd like to see.
Is the actual sign still in the office in there? Because it came in the mail the other day.
Oh, no, not that sign. We're talking about, you know, on the pic, I, I was there like yesterday, I should have taken a picture, but, um, they have signs on the picnic shelter that says, picnic shelter for rent, call.
Okay, I'd just like to see what it looks like, because.
Yeah.
We'll get some.
Yeah.
We can check off the board of adjustments that's been done.
Hey, Rohit, what's going on with the roundabout landing?
Um, I already did that update. Uh, they did make, they did.
I'm just kidding, I'm kidding.
Okay.
Uh, uh, next, the last one on there, Village Hall and Church, followed by banks, you can just go ahead and complete that one.
And I think that one right below it's already been completed. I just forgot to put it in green.
Okay.
So, move those. Check that off.
First one on page three.
Uh, that's, that's me. I checked it off. We're still processing.
Uh, yeah, that's an ongoing, if you have any correction.
Did we execute the Weddington Chase repair?
We have.
Okay, that's completed.
Should we check off the one below it, since, uh, circular plans?
Well, you're gonna look into like when we can turn them in and all that stuff.
Yeah.
But the planning board applicant, that's me, that's complete. Yep, that's it. Okay, good deal. Alright, uh, next up, council comments. Uh, Mr. Mayor, we'll start with you.
Thanks, yourself.
He doesn't have anything.
No comments.
Sweet. Bob.
Well, first off, I'd like to, uh, welcome Austin. Uh, you know, you do a great job, and it's been seamless. Uh, you got big shoes to follow, but I, but it's actually been seamless, Austin, so thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Um, the other thing I'm, I'm really overjoyed about, which I've heard from the community, a lot of citizens, is the level of communication that's come out. I remember all of us, uh, sitting down and talking in December, um, and November about, you know, how do we, how do we get the word out? How do we get our voice out? And, uh, it's amazing. I'm getting people that are saying, oh, my gosh, please stop. I mean, it's, stuff is coming out all the time now. So, um, it's like, that's, that's just a great compliment to us. Uh, the third thing, uh, I was pleased to see yesterday at around twelve twenty, um, there was a radar gun being pointed from where the Boy Scout trailer was taken, uh, you know, across Methodist, you know, you know, the, the church, that, that cul-de-sac or whatever that, not cul-de-sac, that that round area there where it's, where he was parked, and, uh, he was nailing people coming from, uh, South Carolina going down, uh, the town road. So, uh, it was kind of neat to see that that's being enforced. So, uh, and once again, uh, thank you for all the good work, uh, the staff is doing overall, and, uh, that's where my comments are.
Thank you, Bob. Jamie?
Uh, the first one is, I like to, I, I'm really excited about the prospect of being able to take this over, the, the prospect of that. Um, I think that would be a huge development for Austin, and squelching and calming down some of the traffic there. Austin, welcome and, and glad, uh, you're aboard and you, you have made it seamless. This, I, I'm so excited about this, I can't tell you. Just because of, of the, the way we, the way we are just continuously opening ourselves up for transparency and, and eliminating the, the the outside noise that, that's going on, I think we're just, kudos to everyone. But, uh, also, we, we never do this probably enough. Thanks for the PRG and the planning board for all that they do to, because I, I just don't think they get recognized enough, and thank, thank you to them for all that they do. Um, staff, as always, thanks for, for all that you do. I'm excited about getting this sign out there for coffee with council because, again, I drive home the transparency piece and the accountability piece. Transparency, transparency, accountability, integrity. Live by those, so.
Good. Thanks, Andy.
Again, Austin, welcome. Um, doing a great job so far, so we're pleased to have you on board. So, I'll tell you a little short story. About a week, or a week and a half or so, or so, for like, I don't know, a week time, so they drove off the road, took out money in the mailbox, ended up in the bushes across the road, or the trees across the road, I should say. Um, had a great response from Union County Sheriff's Department. They, um, actually had a task force that, uh, they were working around this area. They work together with other municipality dedicated deputies, and, uh, they did a really good job hitting Waxall Marvin Road really hard. I heard sirens all night, pulling people over for speeding and such. Mason was great. I spoke with him on the phone that evening. He happened to be in Little Beach. But, uh, they're, they're doing a great job at being very aggressive with trying to get the traffic under control out here, so I just wanted to report that they're doing a really, really good task force.
Good. Love that. Anything else? Alright, thank you. Um, yes, Austin, welcome. We're excited to have you. Glad to hear. Staff, as always, very tough. We appreciate everything you do. That was being a little long, said two and a half hours ago. Um, but we did receive a letter, uh, Christina did, um, in regards to Rohit that we wanted to read, um.
Nice knowing you, Rohit.
It's a nice letter. This is a letter in support of Rohit and the services provided. His superior should know what an excellent job he has done during our inspection process for our new home build. While ready to complete our project, Rohit was instrumental in helping us deliver the proper documentation for certificate of occupancy. He was informed professional and a great help knowing, and a great help knowing protocol, et cetera. He then took it a step further and expediated the process with Union County in a seamless manner. Our family thanks him immensely. We wanted to let his superior know what an asset he is with Marvin and Union County Business Groups. We've worked with a lot of inspection departments, employees and professionals over the years, and he is outstanding. We look forward to being part of such a fine community with caring and knowledgeable people. Sincerely, William F. A. Fitzgerald. Was very nice. So, good job, Rohit, with six eight, all the hard work. Um, good meeting. I know it was long. We'll keep moving on. I'm done. Closed session. So I need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS one four three three one eight dot one one A one for review and approval of closed session minutes from two seven twenty, two twenty seven twenty-three, ten twenty, six twenty-five twenty, and seven fourteen twenty. Alls in favor? Aye. Motion passes, so we are in closed session. Good. Okay, I need a motion to go back into open session.
So.
Hold on a second. Wasn't there something to be discussed with finance?
Yeah, we haven't gotten there yet, Joe. We're gonna, we're gonna go into open session. We, we were, but we're only, we were only in closed session to do the, um, closed session meeting minutes. We're going into open session to approve those, and then we'll go back into closed session.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So I need a motion to go back into open session?
So moved.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, so now I need a motion to approve the closed session minutes as amended from two seven twenty, two twenty seven twenty, three ten twenty, six twenty-five twenty, and seven fourteen twenty.
So moved.
Alls in favor? I mean, further discussion? Sorry. Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I need a motion to move into closed session pursuant to NCGS one four three three one eight dot one one A six to discuss personnel.
So moved.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to move back into open session?
So moved.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. So I'd like, I need a motion to allow the administrator to extend an offer to applicant number two as discussed in closed session with salary range not to exceed annual budget with full-time benefits.
So moved.
Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Alls, alls in favor?
Aye.
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 And that would be at two fifty-six PM.
Just in time for lunch.
Just in time for lunch. Uh, two fifty-six.
Did you stop the recording?
Just in time for lunch.